Good morning. The September twenty first, twenty twenty three Town Council Budget Meeting, it is nine AM. President and Council Chambers are Dan Enright, Adrian Christie, Jesse Gris, Jesse Way, or ways, Manny and Lars Carlson, Geneva, Jeanette is participating remotely. We will begin with our work session, a discussion of the general fund and twenty twenty four fees. You'll be ranting and so now I'm here to protect this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. We at staff level have been working for a couple of months now, basically, to to get to this draft budget in front of you. As usual, we really focus at the department head level on both councils' goals and objectives and some of the key initiatives that we know are important to the the community. So we really look for this budget to reflect those those goals and objectives. In particular, we have continued to put out there a goal of continuing to increase our general fund reserves if possible. As council knows, there's a thirty percent requirement within our adopted financial planning policies, but we'd we'd love for us to get, as we did last year, much closer to fifty percent. Again, there's there's nothing particularly driving a a specific number higher than that, but we know that looking at our peers and making our own finance director feel feel good as well around our future. Fifty percent is a great goal to strive for. We think we're close within this particular budget this year, and I won't I won't go much deeper than that, but we do have certainly a handful of new FTE requests for twenty twenty four again that reflect, I think, some of our current priorities that we've heard from council and the public, whether it be more code enforcement around a range of land use issues to some additional bandwidth when it comes to our short term rental regulations and administration. So we'll walk you through those later in this budget. But I'll hand it to to Keely, we had to to really kind of start us from the the top here, and then I'll dive in with some description around some some key areas. Or Keely?
Okay, I'll do a quick high level overview of our twenty twenty three projected and twenty twenty four budget requests. Um, the original twenty twenty three budgeted fund balance reserve was forty four point eight percent, and we are projecting that to be sixty one point one percent at the end of this year. That is due to revenues being one point two million dollars higher and expenses being about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars lower. And then our requested twenty twenty four budget has a deficit change in fund balance of one point four million dollars or forty five percent fund balance reserve. The main goal of the budget process is to have a balanced budget, which is where revenues equal or exceed expenditures. And a true structurally balanced budget is one that supports financial sustainability for multiple years into the future. As Scott just said, our adopted goal is thirty percent. We'd like to get that closer to fifty percent. And what we're really looking at here is wanting reoccurring revenues to equal or exceed our recurring expenditures for our budget to be financially sustainable for years, multiple years into the future. And last year, the budget we presented to you had a deficit of about one and a half million also, but we could account for those with a lot of one time expenditures where this budget we have today is mainly reoccurring expenditures. And here's that graph we saw at the last meeting showing our actual ending fund balance, audit ending fund balance versus what we budgeted. And most of that is due to budgeting revenues fairly conservatively in the past. And the general fund is the primary operating fund for the town, so the activities being paid for through the general fund constitute the core administrative and operational tasks of the town. Since the bulk of all resources flow through the general fund, it's critical to maintain control over the expenses. And our main revenues funding the general fund are taxes, and the largest one, of course, is our sales tax going into that. Property tax is the next largest, but it's a fairly small number for all this fund. And here's that breakdown. Um, all of our different sales and excise tax revenues. So today, we're really just looking at that four and a half percent sales tax, which four percent of that is allocated directly to the general fund. Do you want to talk about sales tax, Scott?
Sure, be glad to. You know, this is often one of the more discussed and and debated numbers within our our general fund each year. Obviously, it's it's a big driver of a number of our initiatives and and just generally how staff, staff is paid and all the all the work gets done within our our general fund. Uh, we we've been pleased this year in in regards to where our sales tax has been. We've we've generally shown slight increases year over year throughout twenty twenty three. And again, through July, our sales tax is up one point three year over year or about a hundred and fifty thousand. So it's 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 relatively flat, but I think we're happy to be in that in that spot with some of the projections where we were at last year. I think we budgeted well. We were, I think, appropriately conservative conservative on this front last year. And again, we 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 do spend a lot of time looking back at actuals and five and ten year histories, not just what's what's ahead of us in the next few months here. From from twenty twenty two, staff is recommending a one percent increase from our twenty two actuals over sales tax. And for twenty twenty three, our projected sales tax is roughly eleven million.
And that's the full four and a half percent. So you don't see the four percent going into the general fund?
That's right, yeah.
And this just shows uh, January or December through July is actual numbers. And then for August through November, we just went two percent down from twenty twenty two actuals, which I think is conservative, considering we've seen growth most months this year.
So I think when it comes to just working on our sales tax revenue assumptions as as we do each year, we we, as in a finance department, myself, deputy manager, um, and the number number of contacts and partners throughout the community really work on, again, a range of data points that we look at when we're trying to do our best to project out what sales tax collections might be for next year. I've certainly had the opportunity to be with several different towns and counties in in my career, and there really is not one municipality that has one kind of adopted approach to budgeting sales tax revenues. It's it is very local at the end of the day, but there's certainly regional and national trends that we look hard at. Um, looking at over really the last ten years and kind of what's ahead of us in twenty twenty four and talking with our peers at this draft budget, we are recommending uh, basically a five percent increase to sales tax revenues from our twenty twenty three projected year end. And again, we we look at some factors that might trend lower, some that might trend higher. Um, but five percent feels to us like a pragmatic number to start the conversation with, at least certainly. This council historically, I think, has been hedged on the conservative side of budgeting, and I think that's that's a great thing. We want to certainly be more conservative than aggressive in in these years right now. Uh, but we also have talked a lot about just trying to budget more accurately based on data, based on insights from some of our partners. And I I think being wildly conservative can get us into a place where it's just challenging to work through that budget through the course of the year. So um, kind of goes without saying that going back to actuals and looking at, you know, our best analysis and not try to be overly conservative or aggressive is is just our general philosophy internally. So right now, we're coming to you with a five percent projected sales tax increase over twenty twenty three in this budget. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kaylee, even even if you look back fifteen years or so, there is rarely, if ever, been a year that Telluride has not experienced, I I believe, a six percent year over year sales tax increase. I think the oh eight, oh nine years were were exceptions to that. Um, but we have had a a good, long history of modest sales tax growth. But again, this is something we can dive into and and I think it goes without saying that our next conversation later this afternoon related to our TTB contract, which is our marketing spend each year will be an important one as we kind of look to the future and and as a council, try to determine which direction you want to take marketing efforts. That does have obviously a trickle down effect to our sales tax. So um, that's just a little bit of background there. And again, from a property tax revenue standpoint, um, the charter limits, the increase on general mill levy property tax revenues to a maximum of seven percent increase annually. Uh, so we have budgeted eight hundred thousand for twenty twenty four. Um, that's a bit of a unique nuance that the town of Telluride has to cap our cap our increase at seven percent annually, but that's what we work within. And so Kaylee has a budget appropriately. So we can keep moving on and then maybe just have questions rolled up here at the end. That's all right.
And here's the same graph we've seen showing our sales tax revenue, history of sales tax revenue. Okay, so we went over the tax revenue as far as the fees go. We're not there's not a whole lot to talk about there for licenses on the business licenses for twenty twenty four. We have split out the short term rental business licenses from the other business licenses in the detail in your packet. And then we've also added a line item for two hundred thousand dollars for the administrative fee, which we'll be talking about this afternoon.
Yeah, I'll just note that one. It goes without saying, we're deep in the midst of short term rental policy discussions. Council has certainly not adopted any new administrative fees or increased administrative fees yet related to STRs. But we've we've heard a lot around the conversation, and I think you have thus far heard pretty solid general support for increasing STR administrative fees to make sure that we're covering our short term tracking software and staffing that is focused on short term rental administration. So we've plugged in uh, an estimated two hundred thousand into this budget, anticipating there might be a uh, an increase in that realm. But again, I just wanted to highlight for everybody that council has not adopted new fees related to the STRs yet, but we we try to do our best to to do some planning in this realm, and we think two hundred thousand is in the ballpark of of what it's truly taking to administer uh, STRs next year.
Sorry, I asked a good question. When do you want us to talk about raising fees? Is that later in the presentation? Or are you just doing an overview right now?
You're talking specifically STR fees or just business license fees?
Other fees, just general things.
Later.
Later, cool. Then I will say what I want to say later.
Yeah. Do you have a slide? I can't recall on a fee slide on this one particularly.
On fees?
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay, let's um, let's do make sure we touch base on on fees at the end of this particular conversation, but.
If we want to talk about this one now, it's probably a good time to do it.
Is it? Okay.
Well, it just seemed like there were some things in the packet that you there's in the line by line general fund, they're highlighted, and it seemed like maybe those are things you plan to talk to us about. Which seem to be tied to fees, but generally, we've heard from people in the STR discussion, but also otherwise, that other business license fees should be increased in order to contribute to, excuse me, any sort of like housing additional fund or additional funds into our housing fund. But I just want to make sure that we at least address something that many people from the public have requested that we talk about. Um, and then it seems like we're going to talk about parks and rec fees and at a different time? Question mark, because it's a separate part of their packet?
Yeah, maybe we can talk about them when each department.
Okay.
Well, there.
I mean, I just don't want to breeze over all business license fees without at least
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We in in this draft to you, again, kind of knowing there's been some back and forth on on that particular element, have not projected any significant increases in business licenses across the board. Again, this is a point of conversation for for council. But we know, talking with our our clerk's office and and some of their peers, that in various categories, depending on you on how you calculate it, we are already on the higher end of business license fees. Again, in some categories, doesn't mean we can't make some adjustments as appropriate, but we haven't proactively added a significant business license fee increase in this budget. Is that accurate, Kaylee, from your standpoint?
Yeah, the business license fees aren't actually part of our fee schedule that's adopted.
It's its own. Yeah. Okay.
I will say for the listening audience, I mean, you all already know this. Again, my why I would be more in favor of raising short term rental license fees and not other business license fees is the difference between the commercial property tax rate and the presidential property tax rate that a short term rental pays.
That's certainly, yeah, that's certainly a common. Yeah, I I think that's been become a common perspective in in a lot of communities over the last few years. Go ahead, Kay.
Okay. Um, under the permits category, that includes building permits, mechanical permits, miscellaneous, which is mainly the road obstruction permits, and outdoor dining, and that's being budgeted pretty flat to twenty twenty three. Inner governmental revenue includes cigarette tax, Marshall's grant, which was um, fully reimbursed first quarter of this year. So that's going away in retail marijuana sales. So that's a little bit lower without that grant in there. Purchase for services include Hark fees, plan check fees, resource recovery fees and uh, planning and zoning fees. And last year, staff implemented a ten percent increase on Hark and P and Z application fees to increase ten percent every two years. So that happened this year, and then it will happen again in twenty twenty five. And then the resource recovery contract expires in twenty twenty four. Um, so just looking back historically, we've been committed a five percent increase in the revenue for that. Fines and forfeitures or traffic fines, municipal code violations and sales tax late fees, and that's also pretty flat from twenty twenty three budget. Under miscellaneous revenue, the biggest item that in there is the interest revenue and um, Colorado Trust has told us to expect that to decrease from four point two, from five point four five percent to four point two percent in twenty twenty four. And then parks and recreation fees include campground, recreation pool revenues, showers and field rentals. And there will be an eight and a half percent increase on campground fees for twenty twenty four and a twenty percent increase on shower fees as well as an increase in fees for field and stage rentals. And then there's the contributions and transfers. There are a few changes to that this year. Moving some salaries to the Affordable Housing and Open Space Fund out of the general fund and then getting rid of the administrative transfer from those funds back into the general fund. Other than that, it was budgeted the same as normal. And this pie chart just shows the breakdown of our all of our revenues going into the general fund with taxes being the largest seventy one percent and then contributions and transfers at nine percent. Others are fairly small licenses and permits at seven percent. And then our expenditures, our largest expense in the general fund is our labor cost, which is normally around fifty five percent of the total expenses in the general fund, and we're right there this year at fifty five point two two percent of the total costs. And this shows that labor cost being fifty five percent purchased services at sixteen percent. The transfer is out fourteen percent, and that's mainly that twenty percent transfer to open space and the new capital reserve fund. Okay, I'll just kind of go over some items that affect the budget in general, and then we can let departments.
Can you go back a couple slides there? Yes, right there. Um, purchase services. Again, I think there are a couple bullets here worth spending just a moment on that I could summarize. Um, in our case, uh, requests annually here. In last year, if we recall, there was seven and a half percent increase approved for community services element of of case and no increase to the I'm sorry, the special events category. Yes, thank you. Um, this year, case did meet and requested an increase of seven and a half percent in in both of those two two buckets. Based on what we think we're going to be able to budget for, for it, if you will, in our own merit increase, for example, uh, within the town of Telluride and some other markers. We are suggesting a four percent increase in both buckets this year. If you average last year's increase to case out between zero and seven point five, they had a total of a four point four increase uh, between both buckets, if you were again to roll those two up. So this year, uh, overarching, we're we're suggesting a very similar increase, but four percent rather than the seven point five. Again, this is a really important fund. It does come out of general fund, however. So it's something certainly I'm I'm sure council might want to discuss coming up here. Um, we also just wanted to uh, make sure we highlighted again for the community that transfers are made mainly up of that twenty percent and transferred to the open space fund and now as well to the Reserve Capital Improvement Fund. Um, much of that Reserve Capital Improvement Fund has been contemplated this year to go towards wastewater treatment plant, I believe. Um, and then again, a new one here is that we are budgeting for a subsidy to go towards what we're calling a child development fund estimated at a hundred and forty five, but we know that.
Eighty five.
Yeah, thank you. That uh, we recalculated that number, and it's closer to eighty five thousand in this budget that would go towards uh, getting our early childhood going under the the town's purview, particularly through Elaine's Place out at Shandoka. So that's what that number is. So one forty five in this slide is not correct. It's closer to eighty five thousand.
One forty five is what's in the packet.
Yeah, that is in your packet. So that's a will be a good adjustment in the other direction. So I just want to touch base on those two are a few important talking points on this slide. Thanks, Kay.
Okay, so a few things that affect the overall budget, and then maybe departments can speak to their individual budget requests. One large thing is the health accrual, which we've had to increase significantly again to build our reserves back up and budgeting for the maximum liability. Um, our property and casualty insurance quote increased by fifty percent. We did look at what it would be with a higher deductible and the lower cost didn't seem worth it to us for the average number of claims we normally have in a year. And then we've included the normal four percent merit increase on employee's anniversary date, which is included in the respective departments.
In last year, um, council was um, I I think very, what's the right word, generous in in uh, allowing for, I believe, what was a seven and a half percent merit increase this year. I think that was very impactful and meaningful to staff. Uh, this year, again, at least in draft form, we continue to have a, you know, relatively tight budget here. So we have started with a four percent merit increase this year as we typically have.
Do you want me to start with the finance?
That would be great. That'd be great.
Just pop around. There we go. Okay. There I go.
Okay, for finance, um, we have had to go out and find new auditors. So there's a slight increase in the cost of our annual financial audit. And we're also budgeting for a single audit for twenty twenty three, which will happen in twenty twenty four. Expecting to get more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants this year. We're also budgeting for full implementation of the ClearGov budgeting software. This year, we're using the personnel part, and then the final budget document will also be in there, final budget book. A code compliant short term rental FTE shared with the clerks fifty fifty. And then also with our new goals that we're doing for each department, one of our goals is to try to get more utility customers on ACH and paperless billing. So in our fees, we're just requesting a ten dollar new fee for per bill for people who are getting paper bills.
Really quick on that. I support that, but can we make sure that our town starts notifying people now that that might happen as well as providing just an easy resource to get on paperless?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Good suggestion.
So those are the requests from finance.
I have a quick question. What is sales and excise tax outsourcing? As a, as an expenditure in finance? It's not very much money. I was just curious what it is.
Sales and excise tax outs.
Sorry.
Under our line items?
Yeah, I don't mean it to be like a pop quiz. I just.
That's our our Muni revs.
Oh, okay.
Annual fee.
Oh. Okay. Well, thanks. You want to go?
Sorry, on that last slide, really quick. Another additional employee besides Ally Slayton for the town attorney's office for another FTE, or is that is Ally not considered a current FTE?
Yeah, let me a- address that because Kevin's not actually asking for a new FTE here. We and I don't, I don't think Dan probably an additional assistant town attorney FTE is probably going to work within this budget. And again, it's not a, it's not a current request out of town attorney's office. As we were going through just general department needs and and requests, we we wanted to see if we could provide even more bandwidth within the attorney's office if 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 possible, just knowing the volume of work that they have coming at them. But I want to reiterate Kevin's not actually putting in any kind of hard push for this. And I think if if, you know, we look to tighten this budget, that's probably an FTE that we might not add this year, but we know they've just got a huge huge amount of work with compliance to various litigation, and we appreciate what the small team does, but that's kind of a little bit of the history there. And let's just stay on this slide here and go to the town clerk's office if we could.
There am I. So this has already been addressed a little bit, the request for a split position with finance for that full time short term rental compliance and tax collection employee. And we'll dive deeper into that during the short term rental discussion this afternoon. And then budgeting for a possible special election for twenty twenty four. There's a few items that have been kind of floated around for gondola or an additional excise tax. or an additional excise tax. So normally we wouldn't budget for an election in even a number of years. But I think I put in twelve or fifteen for that for next year. And then the software for the compliance for short-term rentals, moving short-term rentals completely out of Muni revs into the new software so that we can have better data collection going forward. That was a very important piece that came about during the whole short-term rental discussion this year was our data collection that we don't really have great reports. So that will help improve everything.
I'm going to go back.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Because I can take the first stab for the manager's office. I know we've talked about it throughout the course of the last several months, the sustainability and grants coordinator. That's something that we are currently in the hiring process for and have some really great candidates. And what that is really going to concentrate on the next couple of years is being very competitive in the grant realm. There's a lot of data on that position that they definitely pay for themselves, but there's a better way to say that with the amount of funds that we're able to be more strategic in going after. We've moved the community engagement and events from the town council budget as we now have a communications manager that helps oversee community engagement and some events. It felt more appropriate to be in the manager's office. We've also, media support was kind of more general. So we've moved that to be more cohesive again in the manager's office to really show what a communications budget looks like. We are also Oh, that's right. Okay, so another department that we are developing more is the IT department. And that is going again under the manager's office to show more of what a, the true costs of the IT function is. We've already talked about how affordable housing and open space have been moved out of of the manager's office or some of those employee costs and associated costs into the respective housing fund. We are, as it has been shown as a priority for town council, we now have a new line item of translation and interpretation services. And we're looking at twenty thousand for next year as we are going to make that a priority in how we communicate to the public. And then we are developing an employee appreciation line item as well as a uniform line item to have a more standardized acceptance for each department. Some departments had such things, some departments didn't. We think it's really important that if a staff member does do some employee appreciation, I mean, encourage them to do so to kind of maintain the morale of each department, that they're not doing it out of their own pockets, which some of them were. So really supporting that behavior. And also, as we want to have a more cohesive organization, team, brand, having uniforms even in departments that don't functionally have a uniform budget like Parks and Rec or Public Works. But again, so people can have some sort of town of Telluride uniform to be part of the organization. Do you have anything to add there, Scott?
I think that's a great, a great summary. Again, just trying to I, I think it's important in any organization to allocate costs to the funds most appropriate. Again, we were able to do that by, you know, really looking at the time expenditure of certain staff that are, how much time are they spending on affordable housing that has its own fund? How much are they spending on open space related efforts that has its own fund and allocating some of their costs to those departments? That's a, it's a little bit of a change, but thanks for the summary.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's great, Zoe.
John, do you want to do planning building? Preservation? Then Julia, you're on deck.
Well, we've talked about the last couple of years engaging perhaps a new full-time employee to help with code. While the code enforcement officers of Marshall's department help us when we absolutely need them. They just don't have the capacity to help with with building mitigation issues or construction mitigation issues or other land use compliance issues like signage and lighting and neighbor disputes and things like that. So we have asked, talked about this for the last couple of years. So that is one of our products. Which would be for planning and historic preservation and perhaps public ones as well. And then for preservation, we are planning a revision to the design guidelines. The update to the to the online version and then just a few, a couple dozen printed versions will be a bit costly but worth the update. And then I mentioned already the initial help with code enforcement. So that's standing in reservation. Any questions?
Good question. Um, I'm confused about the comp plan and when that's happening. Because there's no budget in twenty twenty-four.
The budget is a, is a capital.
Yeah. Okay. And there is some in, maybe it got moved last year from the general fund into capital?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually Ron right now is working on the RFP for consults for the master plan. So we'll, we'll give an update to PNC next week about that, but we intend to smooth forward with that at the
Okay.
And I just did want to add, so for the code compliance FTE, we did, when discussing with staff, originally have two compliance officers. And we, just looking at this next year's budget, did bump it down to one, just for your knowledge.
Yeah, 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 this, we, we, we certainly think there's enough work there for a code compliance on the public work side, looking at bog, fats, oils, greases, things like that. Meter issues, things along those lines with public works as well. But again, trying to be as conservative as we can on the FTE front. Thought we would put our toes in the water on a new type of code compliance that would serve multiple departments here. And see how that's working before we ask for two in that realm. But certainly as you, as you look at kind of those land use related code enforcement issues, those are just historically one of the more common complaints that we hear from the general public. Certainly, it's, it's what you as council hear a lot about on the ground. And we know we just need more bandwidth on the code enforcement. They do. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's, it's not like just writing a parking ticket and walking away. They're, they're quite involved cases often.
Planning and Zoe's been pushing for this for quite some time and we'll be happy to hear there we're pursuing this.
All right, thanks, Jonah.
Thank you.
Hey, we have human resources up. Julie Brazer, HR Director.
Okay, we are going to be gearing up for our tri-annual compensation study next year. It happens once every three years. Last one was in twenty twenty-one. Really great exercise. We engage an outside consultant to make sure that we are remaining competitive in the changing landscape of the labor market. So we define our market, we go have this person do a bunch of research and we make any needed adjustments to our compensation structure per position. What we haven't historically done is a full implementation of the result. So now that means taking a look at each existing staff member and really diving into the details and making adjustments to compensation for those people as, you know, it, it's appropriate based on what's changed. And yeah, just bringing people up to a pay rate that is competitive. Something I think is really needed in this organization for us to continue to retain staff and be competitive. And again, working towards that employer of choice branding. So hoping to reengage with our consultant and get that going right in January so we can be ready to push out any changes mid-year.
Do you have any early sense of how we compare?
That's a hard question. It's been three years, so I anticipate, you know, there's, there's going to be some meaningful changes. A lot's, lots changed since then. I mean, we've seen what inflation has done, right? So it's, it probably will be a large shift. I can't give you a number. If I had to get out my crystal ball and guess, I think around ten or fifteen percent. Not for individual increases, but just maybe movement in our compensation structure.
All right, looking forward to seeing what we find.
Yeah.
Quickly, the compensation study is going to take into account not just position to position from government to government, but will also take into account like regional positions that are similar in scale, case scale as well.
Yes. So what we, what the consultant does is we first we meet and we define our market. So who are we comparing against? You know, who, who do we feel we, we are competing with? Who do we need to look at? So we're not looking at all of Colorado. You have to, you have to narrow it down, right? It's not apples, apples to apples, right? So that's the first part of the exercise. Once we define our market as we do every year, that's when the consultant goes out and finds data and, you know, looks at position by position, like positions within the market at those other organizations that we want to be competing against. That's how the study is based. Yeah, this year I'm hoping to bring the consultant to present to council, which you know, just a little bit more transparency, a little bit more education on how this process flows for everybody. It hasn't been done. So I think that would be a valuable exercise to go through.
So I have a question. It, when you say expected cost a hundred and fifty thousand in salary reserve, so is that? And then there's two professional services line items that don't equal a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget.
Salary reserves at the very end of the line item?
Okay, so.
Professional services, the cost that we're going to pay to engage the consultant, some other consulting work for revamping how we do performance evaluation, we can see them search, and then taking a look at implementing a new retirement plan administrator. Because we've been with now Mission Square, previously ICMA for a very, very long time and their services are very, very lacking. So we're just looking to get something better for our staff.
Those are the two different professional services.
So one of them was mislabeled.
Okay.
Computer, IT.
Okay.
Yeah, IT's been.
Yeah, one of them has been.
Moved out of the.
Yeah, kept in the department.
Kept in the department, okay.
But there are two professional services line items in there. One should have.
In their software?
So one should have been software, the seventeen thousand dollar one should have been software.
We're developing more consistency among departments to have better ease of grouping such as IT software costs. So one of those professional services.
Okay.
And then holding town rental unit for recruitment. I'll speak to it, but I think it's kind of, it's a bit of a wash, right? So we're, we're making ourselves whole on rent. So if there's a vacant unit in one of our, in our rental portfolio, we have a position that we know we're staffing. We're going to likely be pulling somebody from outside the community. We hold that and we make sure that we're paying rent on that unit while, you know, it's vacant and we recruit that position. So again, it's, it's a line item that we're implementing specifically in the budget. And I already stroked to the third bullet a little bit. Those are the major, major costs and human resources for next year.
Julie, just to put a point on the, on the comp study. Again, a hundred and fifty thousand is budgeting roughly six months of what the anticipated increase would be. Knowing that we start the study in January, takes time to implement basically.
Come to work through, finalize, adopt and then implement. And yeah, that would, that's, you know, assuming half a year of implementation costs. So in the following year's budget, we would have to budget the rest of that. I'm basing that off of the estimated full implementation costs that came out of the twenty twenty-one study, which, you know, we didn't move forward with because it was completed late in the year. And we had some other challenges.
Yeah, thanks for that, Julia. Just wanted to point that.
Thanks, Julia.
Yeah, we'll touch base specifically on case in this particular budget. Yep.
I'd encourage board members to participate, but we have, we have busy lives. So let's, yeah, let's start with Parks and Rec and then let our chair know we're starting. Okay, no staffing requests for Parks and Rec. We're very happy with our current level of fifteen year-round staff and a lot of seasonals. One thing that's not included is just a general five percent increase for all of our operating budgets. Because we're seeing increased costs for contractors, materials, supplies and so forth. So we applied a five percent to the majority of our operating budget accounts. We'll always save money if we can. Another thing not on this list is a ten thousand dollar savings in pet waste bags. And that's something I give kudos to staff for researching a better product. And so we've blown people away how much we spend on that product in the budget. So significant savings to help us cover our maintenance expenses. And then the tree mitigation is a account that we can continue to increase with the amount of aging trees that we have on town park property. We've, we're doing an inventory of all trees. We've already done town park. We've started the river trail. And this river tree, river trail tree mitigation work is following up on that inventory to deal with pruning, removal as needed and what's recommended by the experts. So that's a, a line item that continues to increase. Utility costs, as I think you all are aware, continue to increase as well. And then holding a town rental unit, this is for recruitment, but also to have a spot in town for staff to be able to stay in when they live far away and especially in the winter, have to work very late shifts at the ice rink, at open gym programming. We just have more and more staff who do not live in town and concerned with the commute. In the summertime, it would very much help us hopefully bring in more qualified school staff to serve in the managerial role. So an intern from Western State or sorry, Colorado Mesa University or other regional colleges, if we could provide some housing for them, that would really help get them here and be a great experience for them and also help us. So it would be shared between parks in the winter with some recreation use as well. But then majority would be recreation in the summer. We could also use it for contractors to provide housing when we have people come from afar to start up the ice rink and other factors. So this is something that we put in both the recreation and the parks budget at what is the rental cost for a two-bedroom unit, believe we use Shandok as an example. Those are the highlights for Parks and Rec.
Really quick, high level for Scott. Across all departments, how many units would you like to see held for recruitment?
Oh goodness. Well, let's start with what we have budgeted. Kaylee, I'm going to have to lean on you for that. I think total of three?
There is one in the Marshall's Department.
Yeah. Yeah.
One in HR and then one in Parks and Rec.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think there's, so right now, three is what's being held again, just for relatively let's call it shorter term recruitment purposes, probably not these units we're holding, if you will. Again, just making sure we're paying our own rent while we've got someone in recruitment process. Are probably not long-term units for these individuals most, most likely, but they're really important to have a landing spot. So right now, I think we feel pretty comfortable with, with three or would be ideal, but I, I think we're, we feel we're, we're in a pretty good spot right here on that front. It's a, if it's, it's a different conversation when we talk about longer-term units for staff that would be town, town-owned or, you know, town rented units that staff would have availability to either purchase or buy down the road. We, we, within our goals and objectives, we'll be talking to you more around somewhere in the ballpark of a thirty percent goal for our overall staff to be able to live in town. That's a, that's becoming more of a mountain town standard to some degree, if you will. We're about halfway there with our staff, about fifteen percent of our staff, I believe, are within town dedicated units. So, but that's a little different conversation than these on-call Uh, uh, rental units, if you will, that we're trying to hold for recruitment.
And so for these on call units, it's less critical, the quality of, for lack of a better word, of the unit. And it's more just, like you said, a landing pad.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good way to put it. Uh, again, relatively short term landing spots for people to get to town. Um, yeah, you know, engage in their new position and really uh, learn the housing landscape to uh. Hopefully find something longer term, but um, yeah, I hope that's a good description to our staff and seeing some head nods out there generally.
Why do you ask about quality?
For certain higher end positions, I don't think. It will be as incentivizing to say live in Shandoka for, you know, if we were. When we were recruiting a town manager, if we were to off, have offered Scott a Shandoka apartment instead of the apartment. He has, that would be less of an incentive for those types of positions at that high end.
Yeah, I, I think it's more, it's almost more size than, size than quality that we're talking about here. Uh, again, if you're, if you're recruiting a family of. That, you know, afford a town, um, they might be able for a short time to, to land in a, a place that we're holding within one of our rental units. But probably wouldn't work for them for multiple years, if you will. And that's when we, we do try to ca- carve out a little larger size.
Okay.
Um, so hopefully that's a good description.
And I think the Parks and Rec request is more comparable to existing on call units that have been held for public works. Or marshals where it's used on their shift. There's a big lizard and it's not safe for them to drive home to Norwood at one AM after they close the ice rink down, something like that.
Yeah.
So that's, and recruitment, it might help us too, but we're more focused on the on call type situation.
Thank you.
So is that something to look up to the warming hut? Putting potentially a, one or two bedroom upstairs. Rather than a youth center. Ma'am, just throwing it out there.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I think it's, I think there's a good time, you know, just generally for us to be throwing out every idea that, that. Makes sense from a housing standpoint. Um, my, my sense is that we're, we're gonna find. Uh, things seem to be trending. Again, we're moving into now capital discussion, but I think the voodoo um. Uh, shed, if we can, that's the best name I have for it, is, is got really good uh, potential for uh, future. Uh, youth hangout, um, a simplified warming hut and uh, and kind of wash station in, in town park. Seems to be um, you know, an efficient and much needed route to go, but I think there, um, Lars, I think there are. Uh, a number of opportunities, even, you know, uh, on our own properties, again, to, to look at those. One, two uh, units here, we, we, we've kind of stepped back from putting a second story on that. Warming hut because of, you know, just various construction costs and, and challenges. I think it could be a challenging spot for a residential location, but I like the idea just to, you know, to kind of brainstorming here.
Right after I mentioned it, I thought, well, from what we, from the last budget, it'd almost be easier to buy. By three tiny homes, put them somewhere in the park versus doing a second level. I'll leave that to Stephanie.
Like in the camps.
We've got a big park there, we could find maybe a space for one or two tiny homes. But I think it's just something we could look at because. What?
That's really good to say.
Oh, absolutely, but it just, rather than, from what the budget had for the youth center, that was a lot of money. A couple of tiny homes, I don't know what they cost now, but if we could find spots for them, but they're relatively small. Hence the name.
Well, one more aside on this, um, I would, I think it would be my preference to prioritize. Holding another unit for our current assistant town attorney, since she is commu- commuting from Euray. Over hiring a second assistant town attorney, and I think I'd prefer to prioritize retention over new. That to me is a factor that I could see affecting her in the long term, and I think we have a high quality employee and we should prioritize retaining her.
I agree too.
I have another Parks and Rec question, um, sorry, side tangent, that's okay. Uh, I know the philosophy of Parks and Rec is to not break even on any of the things that you're doing theoretically. But I'm hoping to understand from a festival perspective, is the town, like, is the town breaking even? When bluegrass and blues and brews and jazz fest and bigger events come to town and use our facilities. Are we breaking even?
Are we gonna, we, we want to talk about that under fees. We want to transition to fees. Can we do case?
Sure, I want to make sure we talk about it and there's been a couple of things that seems like we might talk about, then we're just cruising.
Ryan, Ryan is here, ready to talk, I'm ready to talk, um, just want to wait for the best time, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, a good idea.
Okay, so case. Um, so this is always an awkward timeframe of your budget and the case grant process. We've got uh, grant applications are out right now. They're due on Monday at midnight. For applicants who might be listening, Monday at midnight, um, so we do not know what the requests are going to be. We're not anticipating any major changes of applicants going away with the exception of one of the larger childcare facilities and community support. And that's a more recent discussion, Mountain Munchkins is not going to be applying to case now that the town is more actively. Uh, managing childcare in our own town. Um, so that is a, a pretty significant change in the community's support front. That being said, there's probably going to be new applicants that we're not expecting or aware of. Um, so this graph just shows how uh, the case budget has changed over the years. As Scott said earlier, there was a seven and a half percent increase to community support last year and no change to arts and special events. I do want to note that arts and special events was missing one of their major, in terms of size, one of the largest applicant requests. Telluride Arts did not submit last year and we definitely are expecting them to submit this year. Um, so that's a, a change that we are expecting to arts and special events. And you can see that we've had years where we've been stable with no changes, um, and then a gradual increase, increase for community support especially. And then the next slide, I believe, there's another, no, that all we got?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, um, so looking at the number of applicants and the request amount, they fluctuate every year. Once again, I don't know what to expect for twenty twenty four until Tuesday, which will be here soon. Um, but case is really good at operating within the budget that you give them, um, with their decision making. There has been one year where they didn't even allocate all the funds because we had less applicants in a category than we anticipated. Um, so the request was seven and a half percent, as uh, Scott said, uh, four percent is what is currently in the proposed budget. For each of those categories and I did invite case members to join the meeting if you want to hear from any of them. Since that was a, a request at one of their meetings with an official action. So we've got Sasha, our chair, we've got Courtney, Mick, Mickellany. Maybe some others, but those are the two I see.
I think from a philosophical standpoint, you know, as we start to take more control. Or develop the community services department for the support childcare and other initiatives. Has Case talked at all about what aspects of the community support granting process should be made more. Permanent or a more structured part of the, the regular budget versus the discretionary granting?
So right now, we specifically looked at the childcare support, um, the town has done so. For several years, obviously, I think we showed the graph when I first did my presentation. Um, so because of the timing and where we are, we, the childcare providers. Have not been able to make any operational budget changes, should we want to change how we have been granting the money. Um, we do feel like this year we should keep it as it is, with the exceptions of Mountain Munchkins, we've had those discussions. And looking into future years, a more um, collaborative, structured um, support system. Out of case, specifically for childcare, and we are working with Bright Futures and Strong Start and the Town of Mountain Village of what. We as all these entities are strategically going to do for the community in that realm.
Uh, again, just to highlight uh, what Stephanie mentioned earlier, uh, Mountain Munchkins. Um, will not be applying in this particular uh, budget round. I think they were twenty.
They were traditionally ten thousand and twenty thousand last year.
Twenty thousand last year to Mountain Munchkins. Again, that's a municipality tapping into this fund last year, which again, as, as we as a. Our own municipality move into funding that realm, just didn't seem appropriate any longer for one local government to fund another local government. In, in a realm that we now are budgeting for, so.
No, Sasha wants to talk, but I just quickly want to advocate that we go for the full seven point five percent that case is asking for. I mean, I'm on case, I also work in nonprofit industry, so I have a little bit of bias towards that, but in a way that the town of Telluride Government is the backbone of our community. The coexisting backbone is our nonprofits and I feel like, um, in any way that we can support. Whatever work they're doing, which is social service support, but also um, economic support with their events. And having things to do for people and I just, I, I, I don't know, to me, I would rather cut other places in our budget, which I know. I don't know where that is yet, but um, I just feel like we have to be supporting those organizations as much as we possibly can.
And I think that's sort of where, that was sort of the purpose of that question of mine is that I, I agree with you philosophically completely, and I think. It being discretionary is one of the things that is always sort of a little concerning to me because of the important work that they do. And so that was. You know, Zoe and I have had those conversations about making sure that those entities know that they can continue to work without necessarily waiting to the. Circle eleventh hour to know what they can't do in, in the next year.
I think Sasha would like to.
Hi, everyone, um, I am Sasha Cuccinello, the case board chair. And just to echo um, what everyone just said, we, you know, we really want to pull for the seven point five percent increase. You know, overall, the inflation that's been going on statewide, countrywide, um, operation for nonprofits. Um, housing for their employees, employee retention, everything has gone up upwards of ten percent for people's budgets. Over the last two years each year, though, you know, word on the street, I'm, I'm in nonprofit. I speak to nonprofits every day, I'm in all of these meetings, everyone's struggling, both arts and special events and community support. It's trying to keep our programming intact and great work that everyone is doing for this town. But you know, with the people power leaving, with um, operating costs going up, it's just, I think this year is one of those years where. Some years it's like, okay, we don't really need this, but this year I think we do. So that's my pitch.
Thanks Sasha.
Thanks Sasha.
Thank you, everyone.
Anything else for me, I've promised to talk about fees. Sometimes right, I've been doing a lot of work.
Thanks, Stephanie. Yeah, that's great.
We want to talk about this right now.
Yeah, let's keep going through departments until we go back to fees. Was that your question?
Okay.
Um, yep, I'll speak for Josh as he is currently at a source of training. Um, we've already discussed kind of the general theme around this potential recruitment on call unit. Marshals, as well as every department, um, this, you know, we're having trouble with recruitment and it's a very needed service. So um, this definitely will hopefully help in that matter. Um, looking at um, office furniture for about ten thousand. They are redoing some of the insides, as we've all seen a lot of our municipal buildings. This is just a small piece to kind of help with the efficiency of the office space, um, and hopefully will be something, well. Which will be something that is used in future municipal infrastructure spaces, whatever that looks like. Um, they're going to decrease the festival reserve salary, um, due to recruitment challenges, just having um. Trouble getting more officers and outside help for that piece. How what that is going to look like is, um, the festivals will have to provide their own security and rely less on town staff. Um, so we'll kind of just shift that responsibility and we're going to be moving the parking and permitting system over to the parking fund for twenty twenty four. As Scott mentioned, it's just more appropriate to start moving line items in funds that they have that impact on. Um, I'll move on to information technology, if anyone has any questions on commercials. Great, so we talked about um, the IT department. Um, it has been a help desk department for quite some time, that is just not the future of IT. Um, so we have the addition, um, we have currently hired an IT division manager. Carrie is also, after thirty seven years with the town, is retiring next August. Um, so thank you, Carrie, for, if you're listening, but um, this person will kind of help have more technology strategy. Um, also cybersecurity and some of the foundational elements of IT, but we're really hoping to work more strategically organizational wide. Less siloed, um, which will be more efficient for the community and for our um, internal operations as well.
All right, I have some questions about this.
Let's.
Um, because that department now has a bigger budget than our finance department, than our town attorney.
And I will.
Areas, so I, can you explain?
Yes.
How other money is being pulled from those other departments a little bit to, for that.
So there has never been an IT budget, a lot of it has just been moved around so that we can actually see now, oh, this is what that budget looks like. Um, you are. Move around, yeah.
All the departments.
Yes, well, yeah, and there, they kind of were, I think there was some in general. There was some, yeah, so we're just being more um, strategic in how you can actually visualize that. Um, with the staff, um, we will look after the first year and we kind of get the staff under the belt. We do contract out to Michelin and Co. I do see that tapering off as we get the foundation and functionality of that department as well. So there should be a balance to it, um, and the, the software costs is not part of it.
No.
Okay, so hopefully that answers your question. We are expanding the department, though. Um, it has, it was a one person show for a long time and we ended at a tech support. Um, this will hopefully be a three person team moving forward, um, with much more advanced services and um, impact on town.
Okay, cool.
So yeah, a lot of big items were moved from the general department, like our leasing program for our computers, our phones. All of our equipment.
I'm not questioning its need, I just feel like that's, it's an important thing to get a little more detail on.
Definitely, yep.
It's a great question.
Public Works is last, it's kind of.
I don't think we have, I don't think we have Kyle this morning, uh, our public works director right now. Um, we uh, again, uh, touched on before, we have a. Partial FTE for code compliance specific to municipal uh, code in public works. Um, and that again is right now look to be a shared position with Hark and our building department. And then we have uh, an additional uh, new FTE uh, to ultimately replace retiring uh, FTE. In our engineering realm within public work, so um, we always do our best to get um. Uh, that succession planning built into the budget, if you will, and hopefully have someone in place before longtime uh, employee retires in public work. So we can do a little cross training and get to know the system be- before we lose a, a lot of institutional knowledge on that front. So that's the technical engineering front, really much of uh, public works, uh, or the vast majority of public works expenditures. Are, are more on that capital side that we talk about when we're talking to infrastructure and projects, but uh, so not a whole lot of change. On the uh, from a general fund standpoint for public works this year.
Okay, and the contract services, that's that seventy four percent of the business and building license revenue that. Um, is paid to TTV per the municipal code, which is four hundred and one thousand dollars for twenty twenty four. And then under the miscellaneous operations and maintenance category, uh, small increase in the building and restroom maintenance contracts. Hard to see with the breakdown of all the expenses by each department. And then this next slide shows our twenty twenty two midyear budget personnel additions. And then the twenty twenty four proposed budget personnel additions, so for the midyear, the total cost, including all benefits. For the twenty twenty four budget is two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars for adding these two positions, the IT division manager. The IT division manager and the sustainability and grants coordinator this year. And then for the four proposed new positions for twenty twenty four, the total cost is four hundred and forty four thousand dollars.
Can I ask a, sorry, just to go back to Public Works really quickly and in the last budget discussion. We talked about some challenges that they have in staffing um in regards to pay commensurate with other regional. Um, competitors. Did we increase that salary line item for them?
I I think they're, you know, right now we're. They're standardized at the four percent merit increase. Much like every other department. Um, we know that on a, you know, on a. Position by position standpoint, um, that uh again, we we talked about snowplow drivers, equipment operators in particular last go around. Um, we've got flexibility in each of those hires and um. See, our HR directors stepped up here, Julia. Um, but there's not a specific bump for one department versus another department. Um, but Julie, maybe you can kind of again address philosophy around hiring on. Um, particularly on on some of our most challenging positions right now.
Yep, so um we have higher salary ranges for each of our positions, mid, mid, max. We have some flexibility where we can hire there based on experience. Things that we've done in Public Works um is we created more levels. Within the equipment operator jobs to remove that CDL requirement in hopes to get some folks in. Um, that resulted in a reclassification of the CDL holders to slightly higher pay grade. So there's already been some adjustment made and that those assumptions are being budgeted. Um, I will say that. While there are challenges hiring these positions, they're not unique to us. Um, we don't can't and don't compete with the private sector. It's, you know, we're government. This has historically been a challenge and it's a nationwide problem right now when it comes to. Cloud drivers, so it's a problem that I think is um needs to be solved on more of a macro level. And I don't know what that solution is, but it's certainly something we will look at in our compensation study. If that helps paint the picture. I know it it'd be easy to say, let's pay these guys a hundred thousand dollars a year. But that blows our entire compensation system. It's just, it's not how we can approach.
Right, and I think taking taking a step back to that macro level, I'm concerned about. Our streets not being plowed and people's safety and welfare while they're crossing the streets. And I think that that was. A significant concern of the community last year, and I think that we would be remiss not to address it. And try and make that better this year because of national challenges or, you know, trying to keep to policy. To be honest, I think that the safety of the the community at large is something we need to address first and foremost.
And I will just add, um, Kyle did account for that in, I think, with professional services or something along those lines for contract work. So, you know, our goal is not to not be able to do the service, it is just. How we're able to to um do that right now.
Also, I mean, I think a big uh challenge with specifically snow removal is where do we put it when we have a record-breaking year like we did last year for snow? Like, we simply don't have the storage capacity that we should, that that we need for years like that. So I think we should also be having those conversations too.
Right, I think that that's definitely an additional element to it, but I think, you know, as you know, from a business perspective as well. We are hiring, you know, for-profit companies to provide those services. I think we just have to look at that cost analysis because I certainly know what we, you know, you do end up paying more ultimately for less services when we do that.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that's definitely part of the compensation analysis point, you know, we do have to be competitive within municipalities. But equally important within who we're competing with here.
Right.
So that's definitely considered and looked at organizational wide, which will impact um those, but.
I mean, I think it's it's also important to note that C dot is having the same struggles here and they've closed the station locally. So it's, you know, it's really, it's really hard to hire those positions. Um, and yeah, we will look for compensation to do everything we can. And we might have to contract, you know, we'll try to solve it, but. To to your point, there there's a reason the policy exists and we can stay with that to a degree.
I I do, I I've mentioned this in in past council meetings, but I think the. Some of the strategy of going smaller equipment and not um being forced to hire. Uh, staff with a CDL or commercial driver's license helps widen that pool of who we can tap into. And um so that that's one of some strategies this year, but again, we we uh we suspect we'll have to lean some on that contracted services side. But the point is well taken. At the end of the day, regardless of how we get it done, um, not. Not having our streets plowed adequately is a safety concern and a community concern, so um. You know, it's up to, it's up to us operationally to figure out how to make that happen and pulling some different levers.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just for clarity, when you say contract services, that's really in like the street bridge and alley fund, not in this fund.
Some of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And um I'll mention again here on this particular slide showing um new FTEs. That uh four hundred and forty four thousand um does include that. New position within legal, which um again, we're suggesting uh probably doesn't fit uh in this year's budget too well. And to Dan's point, let's let's make sure we've got some better housing flexibility or options for our current staff.
I double down on what Dan said.
Great. She had her hand up, but she just floated.
That was, that was just my question was, uh, are these numbers reflective of the assistant town attorney position being included or not? So, thanks.
All right, here's a overall view of our general fund. Expenditures by category showing that ending fund balance of seven and a half million dollars for our twenty twenty four budget. And that change in fund balance of the, with the deficit of one million four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Leaving us with reserves of forty five percent. And then um here's the same thing, but with expenditures by department. And then at the very bottom there, you can see that we've just kind of added in a line for an average vacancy savings. Which we calculated over the last two years that we've seen to see what that looked like. We didn't actually want to include it up top in the budget. But thought it would be good to see this. Which brings us to eight point two million dollar fund balance and right there at our fifteen percent. And then um staff has some suggestions to try to get that deficit down.
Yeah, I think this is the uh kind of the uh. Well, the cruxes of our our week here at the staff level is always just prepare the. Prepare a draft for council to react to and give input to, but also um give some, give some ideas and options on where we can continue to. Tighten the budget up here and uh be pragmatic as well. Um, certainly, again, as we look at. Marketing. Taking uh, we well, we would need some changes in the municipal code to make to make that change. And maybe you can, I don't know if you want to describe that more, Kaylee.
So um right now, portion of the marketing comes out of the lodgers tax fund and portion comes out of the general fund. We feel like it'd be more appropriate and in line with many other communities to have it entirely out of the lodgers tax fund. Um, and not impacting our general fund in that way. Um, like Scott mentioned, this would mean a current change to our municipal code. Um, and, sorry, go on. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I don't know. Kevin, are you, are you tracking, tracking that one?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, the the authority is already there to have it allocated in that way, but it's not dedicated necessarily that it has to go there. And I don't know. If you want to do that, I mean, that was, it was intended to be broadly worded so that you would have that flexibility to allocate it. Council would have that flexibility to allocate it as they saw fit, but.
Okay, so possibly not a a change to municipal code might not be necessary to make that shift.
The seventy four percent from business and building licenses right now that has to go to marketing.
Yeah, the restriction is only that it has to go to marketing, doesn't say it has to go to TTB.
Or what?
Right.
Yeah. But are we talking about the separate? We're talking about something else, was the the intro to this, not the seventy four percent, or is it the seventy four percent?
Yeah, the seventy four percent that's now coming out of the general fund. And have marketing all paid out of town lodgers tax.
Yeah, that's what I was, but, okay. Town lodgers, okay. It's backup, because I think we're, I don't think we're talking about the same thing. Town lodgers tax is very broadly worded, and it can include variety of governmental purposes such as support of housing. Waste water treatment upgrades, water upgrades, and then it has the broad, any public purpose that the town council sees fit to allocate the money to. The business licensing provisions say that it has to go seventy four percent to marketing of the one half now that's coming in, if you will. Minus the six percent and then the twenty percent that gets allocated through the five and the fifteen percent. This gets really detailed, folks. So what, are we talking about the seventy four percent in the business licensing provision?
Yes.
And amending those code provisions? To require it to go to what? I mean, it already says it goes to marketing, so that's broad enough to cover TTB.
Yes, we're hoping that it doesn't have to go to marketing.
Okay. Okay, well, that is a municipal code change.
We've clearly got some work to do on this one still.
Yeah, it's the first I've heard of it, so I'm kind of.
Yes, um, so let's, let's, let's work on that one, because there could be a significant swing there in the in the general fund. Different changes are made there, but we've got, we've got more work clearly with our our attorney's office to kind of think through that one. Um, as I'd mentioned earlier, um, there is a a savings already, I think we can build into this based on. Uh, but better calculation of our, what's necessary to subsidize our child development fund. Um, that would be more of an eighty five thousand dollar cost most likely rather than one forty five thousand shown in your packet. And uh, again, a- as we've talked about even just uh this year at council and regional level. Uh, there's always seems to be a annual discussion around extension of uh the gondola hours in into the fall. That happens pretty regularly, but um that is something that we could move that one hundred and thirty five thousand. Budget last year into the capital fund. Um, and and again, try to free up some some general fund uh savings there. And then again, um, just with the kind of growing philosophy of putting um staff time into the right. Uh, into the right bucket, if you will, um allocating some of the town managers' time, for example. To affordable housing fund um based on kind of accurate calculations of where my office spends time on on housing. Um, could be appropriate. And then again, we want to continue to get council's input and in review of uh this new staffing requests for twenty twenty four. So those are just a few of the the lower hanging fruits where we can um shave a little bit off of this general fund expenditure.
I've got some thoughts on that. Um, I hear what you're saying about the. Business license fees or some of that percentage, but in my mind, that's a justification for the fee that we're charging is that we're spending that money on marketing. So I think I'll I'll be curious to hear what staff says about that. Um, I think businesses. Are happy to pay a fee that's broadly supports the economic activity of our community. Even if it's just sort of like moving numbers from funds, understanding that that's what they're doing, I think is important from my perspective. But I'm curious to hear more about that. In terms of allocating the town manager's time, I I can't, I don't like that necessarily. I feel like the affordable housing fund in my mind is about building affordable housing, not staff time. And affordable housing is an inherent reality that will always be discussed in the town of Telluride, and therefore the town manager's time. Will always be spent on it to a certain extent. I I don't know, I would rather see that money, those dollars be spent towards. Investment in building or purchasing land and units. That's my my personal feeling. And then the gondola, I feel like that's a whole other broader conversation of just knowing. In the future, if there's going to be a gondola line item that's part of the general fund to fund the gondola. Which is a way bigger discussion that I don't think we should get into right now. I just, I think it's kind of good to have a placeholder in our minds of like, there's going to be some dollars here. But maybe that's a silly reason to keep that in the general fund, so.
But the fall extension, it seems like we do that every year, right?
It's not every year, but I think, I think we need, it's something that we need to budget for appropriately and plan for appropriately. Instead of having the last minute additions where there's a little bit more cohesion around. Marketing to that specific time period, keeping, you know, making sure the businesses are aware and set up for success during that time and staying open. So that we're supporting the allocation of those funds, you know, to the economic success of of the community.
And I just just wanted to add for um capital improvement fund, there is the gondola design line item for twenty twenty four. So we definitely are inserting that aspect, just not in the general fund. But thank you for your point, Mia.
Um, and I I actually just want to kind of just jump in on the, I'm a little concerned about any sort of code revisions that would take. Marketing funds out of the business license fees whatsoever. I just want to kind of go on on record for that. There would have to be some pretty big justifications. Those are fees paid by our businesses for us to support our businesses. And the main way we do that is in in marketing, so. I think that would need a lot more explanation for me to to even get close to being okay with changing it.
Geneva has her hand up.
Um, yeah, I just, I remember we discussed this fees going to marketing last year and we were. Going to change it and then we switched it back and I was just wondering if someone could remind me what. Happened. Last year. With that conversation.
That's what I remember, we were going to change it and then it just didn't happen.
And then I feel like we like realized something that we couldn't or. I don't know, anyway. Um, I, maybe it doesn't matter, uh, because it doesn't sound like people have an appetite for it. Um, I agree with what Adrian said about the town manager's salary going to affordable housing. I really like keeping affordable housing funds as being a very clear um. Sort of hard costs as opposed to staff costs. Um, the gondola fall extension, also, I feel like that's like an operating thing. And I think it does belong in the general fund. Uh, and that's all I have for feedback right now. Thanks.
Um, I agree with what Geneva just said. Um, I do think that affordable housing should remain affordable housing, um, and that staff time should not be put in there. I'm in support of guaranteeing that there's a fall extension for the gondola every year. Um, but I do not think it should go to the capital fund. Um, the marketing thing seems like it's just a much bigger conversation. Um, so I think we should wait to address that when we have more time to talk about that specifically. And I'm fine with the child development fund subsidy.
Okay. I think that is the last slide of of this uh particular deck. Um, we want to circle back to a a fees conversation now. Probably now is the appropriate time.
Okay, we're no longer need the presentations, but thank you, Tiffany. And instead be looking at the packet.
Yeah, all the fees are in the packet. We can start with parks and rec fees.
Okay. Let's talk parks and rec. And I will, before these two start, we've got Ryan McGovern and and Stephanie J K uh here in front of us. I think I heard this statement that Parks and Rec doesn't try to cover their costs on on anything. Again, we we more than cover our costs in certain areas and we highly subsidize other areas. And it's it was really that pyramid and a philosophy of of cost recovery. That uh that fluctuates significantly based on. Community need and demographics and things along those lines that we're trying to serve. So um I just want to kind of restate that, that it's, it uh is quite a variation between uh cost recovery percentages. Based on programming and so on, so.
So I'm going to kick it off just introducing uh special event fees, which we know is a focus.
a focus likely of, of your discussion for this budget process. Um, and let you know kind of how we're recommending using existing structures, but then continuing to progress into a more of a cost recovery model for event, which is what we currently do for programs and facilities. So to start, there's the admission fee and that is currently, uh, tiered between uh, minor, medium, major events. The code does include a revision of that fee based on inflationary increases every five years. This is not the fifth year, this is the fourth year. My proposed budget did show a five percent increase for that. I talked with Kevin offline on, on how we would implement that, um, since it is off schedule of the five years. Um, but that is being proposed as a five percent increase to the admission fee of a total revenue of a little over two hundred and thirty six thousand. So the admission fee has traditionally been seen as all inclusive. We've gotten a lot of feedback from council and others over the years that that's maybe not the best approach. So we started a phased approach of starting to bill events directly for costs of services and direct costs that we can identify easily. So in the past few years, they've been paying a septic disposal fee. That's gonna go up, I'm sure it's already included in the fee. But fee scheduled to go up, um, they've been paying directly for the goose to operate after hours. So that's a model that we have started and the events are on board with that. It's mostly the major events that that affects. We have ideas on how we can continue that process with kind of low hanging fruit of direct expenses, utilities, for example, over the base amount that we would be paying already and some other items. Uh, we also can start, um, assessing rental revenue or rental fees for use of facilities that have traditionally been included in the admission fee that we could more easily identify and bill to events. So uh, what I'm recommending is the admission fee still be in place for the purpose of getting money for per person, per day impacts, uh, that will fund the O and M account for fast or for parks and rec in its entirety. The marshals are looking to use less of that revenue with their new model on reserve officers. And then there would be a surplus fund which would help us get some projects done, which we haven't had a surplus in a while. Um, so that's admission fees. I'd like to try and keep that separate, um, from are we breaking even with events? Uh, because what I would recommend is, and Ryan has done some preliminary work on this and discussions with the Parks and Rec Commission, is the fee philosophy that Scott introduced of a pyramid approach that works for our facilities and our programs, that we could put a lot more work into that to finalize um, a fee, a fee structure slash cost recovery model specific and special events. And we're not just talking major events, we're talking about nonprofits doing a free event. Uh, we're talking about a street closure, all these different venues that get used. Um, we've had initial discussions on how that might look, but very much need to continue those discussions. I would recommend that Parks and Rec Commission be tasked with that. I think they're ready and willing to help and that'd be a collaborative discussion with special events as well, because we want events to continue. Um, and then I think the peak that doesn't always get looked at is the benefits of events and the costs that events are having to um, spend because we're not a turnkey venue. None of our property is moving and hosting events. So when we say cover our expenses, yes, but then there's the event expenses, which I'm not going to speak to, but I'd like, I think that there needs to be an opportunity for that discussion as well. Uh, and, and making sure that events, if we want events to continue for the economic benefit to our town, small, medium, large, that we're looking at at big picture. Um, so with that being said, uh, Ryan can describe our cost recovery model to you. Uh, Ryan's done a lot of work on expense analysis for various facilities. Uh, we also have increased fees. Parks and Rec fees, which are almost at five hundred thousand dollars. So when, when it gets said that Parks and Rec doesn't bring in money or we don't cover our expenses, twenty twenty four, we're at about four hundred and ninety one thousand dollars in fees and we usually come back. We usually come ahead of budget or above budget, I should say. Um, so Ryan can highlight some of the new, new fees that we've implemented, the increases and what's to come. So I guess I'd like to switch from special events to Parks and Rec because I think our model will help us get further with events in the future. That sounds like an okay. And I don't, I, I know we don't have tons of time, so we'll keep it.
Just real quick, Stephanie is a.
Yeah.
You guys bring in total five hundred thousand dollars through fees.
That does not include the festival admission fee. That's strictly Parks and Rec department fees for rentals, programs.
And then your total overhead for the department per year is what, including salaries?
Including salaries? I'll have a look at one of Kaylee's, because I don't have salaries on my, on mine, but. And Parks and Rec is traditionally a subsidized department. I also, I can't think of any department that would break even on their fees and operations.
Oh, I just want it for comparison purposes.
Yeah, just.
I'm seeing about eight hundred and forty thousand is the request for twenty twenty four.
Between parks and maintenance?
For salaries, not maintenance.
Yeah, I want the whole, the whole, the big number.
So that's, uh, one point oh eight seven plus
two and a half.
And that was not including benefits as well for the.
Yeah, so about two and a half. All right.
Okay, thanks.
And I know you've all heard this before, but it's worth hearing again about our model.
So on the programming front, um, our adult programs break even for all expenses and our youth programs are given a ten percent subsidy. That's probably in the value of maybe ten thousand dollars, uh, that we're helping to make youth programs a little more affordable. Um, our programs probably range in the cost from forty dollars to five hundred dollars when you're looking at swim team, uh, on the higher end. And our facilities, uh, we have kind of a five tier model, uh, where we start with nonprofit organizations, regional, private individuals, out of town, private individuals, and then we have two commercial categories, uh, one that has kind of a restricted rate to it, uh, that's given a little bit more of an affordable, uh, rate. And then a full commercial for profit, doesn't matter how much they charge their participants to come to whatever event they're hosting. Uh, the nonprofit category is break even for us, so we are not subsidizing that at all. And our commercial for profit group at the upper end is making one hundred percent over, uh, expenses. And then it ranges in between break even to a hundred percent profit.
And our, and a facility that that is currently in play is the Pavilion. Uh, facility that needs to be updated to more align with this model is stage and catering, for example. Now that we have data on expenses, um, more, more to work on.
When, when will we start utilizing them? Catering building a little bit more in town park, like I know people need a commercial kitchens to be able to do certain things with it. Town, are we gonna start offering that as a rental space?
So it is offered as a rental space, but for special events only, not for commercial, not associated with an event in the park, the the access to that location and the limited parking is a concern, so we're not set up to accommodate a lot more use back there right now with our limitations, safety concerns during recreation.
Yeah, I knew it was that, but I just was wondering, but there was discussion a couple of years ago about offering it to a wider range of community members.
Well, I, I think we'll be updating the management plan of that facility so that we can, um, update fees to more align with with the model and the data that Ryan has, so we can look at all that, that the Parks and Rec Commission level with council's input when that, when that time comes.
And then to, uh, the Nordic Center, that giant chunk of space, the Pavilion. Are they still utilizing that square footage for, for free?
That is our current plan still, uh, because they're providing a service that we very much appreciate not, not providing ourselves with rentals and, and lessons on our facility.
Which I understand, but we didn't get that built for free, so I feel like there needs to be some sort of like offset a little bit, um. Am I the only one that thinks that this is, there should be some sort of, they're not paying for heat, they're not paying for anything.
Currently, no.
No, I agree with you. I mean, I, I agree that it's something that we need to take a look at anyway. I think, um, you know, that organization, I mean, at the end of the day, like, we want these activities going on in this community. We want there to be low cost options for people to be able to participate in athletics. And I think that well, that structure, that particular service fits into that, but I do agree that we do maybe take a look and just more of an understanding as to like what their profitability is versus like what we're subsidizing, but I think that's the same with everything. So I think we could take a look at that again.
Just raise there, uh, is there a, just a general? Yeah, wha- what's your general sense of what would be fair to to charge? Are you thinking utilities or a percentage or just as a kind of.
I mean, I guess it would be nice to like know exactly like the square footage or that they're utilizing what they bring in annually, you know, through, because they're, they're making money for sure. Um, and then what the utilities are, and if there's any additional maintenance to the building before or after they get out of there. So just like really a in-depth look on that space being utilized.
Okay, that's something that staff can follow through. It doesn't align with our with our fee structure, which is looking at other sections of the building, but that's something that we can definitely work on. And we are at the point of starting contracts with them for the upcoming year, so time is appropriate, if we're gonna make a change.
I feel like that, I like knowing that information is helpful, but also thinking about, say, for example, the youth hangout and the shed and how we're going to manage that space and theoretically be letting a nonprofit use it for free, question mark? Because they're willing to do the programming and we're not willing to do the programming, it's essentially the same thing. Um, and so I, I just think if we're gonna go down that road on one facility, we should be going down it on all, on all fronts.
I think the big difference would be like if there's a youth hangout and if are they selling, you know, food or drinks or utilizing a kitchen, are they making money versus are there things there that they're just, you know, video games or they're just hanging out, you know, so like, is there an opportunity to generate revenue or, or not, you know, is a, a big difference for me.
Yeah, I mean, I, for example, would rather ask that if nonprofits want to utilize the Nordic Center's benefits that they offer, that that's available to for free to other nonprofits, like there's, instead of making them pay, we encourage a broader
Utilization.
utilization or a lesser fee for certain people or certain entities or something like that, which they kind of do already, but anyway.
Ryan, I'm, I'm curious, as we've had a lot of conversations this year around our commercial um, use fees of, of town park land or facilities, whether it's skate park or field, are there, are there parallels in this conversation as we kind of look at the Nordic rental space in the future that are worth looking at based on some, some new commercial use policy?
Yeah, so we did give exemptions, uh, for all youth serving organizations from our new commercial use policy in the park. And then we also have some exemptions for people who only use the park a handful of times. At least in terms from the fee, they self to provide, provide us the insurance and all that. Um, what we're look, gonna be looking towards in twenty twenty four is an actual use fee. In twenty twenty three, we only, uh, instituted a permit fee. Um, and we're collecting data to see how, what kind of uses we have, how much they're using the park, that sort of thing, so.
We can look at it.
Yeah, you can, we can definitely look at it.
Yeah, I just thought it might be a starting place for part of this conversation to parallel up with new policy. Um, I'm hearing from council that you want us to look at that Nordic Center space in, in particular, and we're, we're happy to put some thought for the next go around here on what might be pragmatic and fair. And again, as, as Stephanie mentioned, there's a, there's a big balance of making sure we've got a, 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 a third party who can provide a necessary service out there that we wouldn't necessarily do. So, um, but we're, you know, we, we've heard it for a couple of years now at least, so we're we're happy, uh, with your direction, put a little more thought on this, the next general, general fund to go around here.
And if maybe Ryan can highlight, the commercial use policy is one of the new areas that we're collecting a permit fee growing into a usage fee, um, but you want to highlight some of the other increase in new fees over the past year and upcoming.
Yeah, so in twenty twenty three, we updated our campground fees, uh, that's a market rate B that we set. Um, and we're currently making about eighty percent over, uh, direct expenses on that facility, so that is profitable. Uh, we also increased our private pool rental rates, uh, to a break even rate. Um, we increased our private field rental rates in twenty twenty three. Uh, that, those same rates will be crossing over to all of Parks and Rec programs and club programs in twenty twenty four. Uh, it's just something we did in the spring of this year and it was hard to here's the increases the last minute, uh, to our, all of our local nonprofits. Uh, we increase our handly rink, I, hourly ice rate every year. Uh, and we will be looking at our summer rates again, which we haven't done in a few years, and that will be updated in twenty twenty four. Uh, we did the commercial use permit fee and we're looking at a use fee for next year. Uh, we have pretty much wrapped up our stage and catering, uh, expenses and kind of finalizing what those rates are gonna look like for next year. And that also includes washstand and kind of those ancillary areas as well.
And then rest or court reservation.
Oh, yeah. Uh, also this year, we implemented a court reservation fee for the tennis and pickleball courts. Uh, and today we made about five thousand dollars in revenue on that, so that's helping us just kind of better manage facilities and equipment, uh, offset expenses and that's what I think.
So for everything Ryan just described, we're four percent over, um, with year end over twenty twenty three budget and looking at a seven percent increase, um, budget, budget of this year compared to budget of next year. But we are actively increasing fees, finding new ways to assess fees, um, and I'm, I'm proud of the work that, that we're doing on it now that we have Ryan dedicated to tracking our expenses, finding opportunities to to make more money, but also to keep facilities and programs accessible to our public, which is the goal of Parks and Recreation and something that is important to me to maintain.
Has there been any feedback from the Parks and Rec Commission or from staff internally on areas where fees need to be lowered to maintain that access or held steady, at least is a that you feel like you have the the power and, uh, we feel, in your opinion, are we striking the right balance?
Yeah, so annually, the Parks and Rec Commission reviews the, the pyramid, the funding philosophy for programs and facilities. They gave us their nod of approval again of July, I think. Um, and so that's just what we operate under and we set pricing based on that. That's why you don't see our program fees and our rental fees in your annual resolution, because that is always changing, depends on number of participants, depends on program format, everything else. So if we have the approval of the philosophy, then we can then apply it. Uh, the one thing that the Parks and Rec Commission, as I said before, wants to talk more about is special event fees. So far, they've weighed in that events that are free and open to the public, they would like to not charge for, charge use of our property for. Um, we can look into a permit fee as opposed to a use fee, kind of in line with what we've described with some of our other recent work. Um, but yeah, I mean, I do, the first rec chairman is in the room and he's disagreed.
You haven't gotten any, I just, you haven't gotten any feedback from any participants that, you know, the specific services, like that anything is feeling out of reach for any community members.
Not, not that I'm aware of, we, we try and keep it, um, regular yet, um, attainable in terms of incre- increases. I mean, that's why we look at it every year.
Right.
Because I think that's really difficult for families and locals to have a huge jump from year to year. So yeah, I think we, we try and do it gradually and we don't change it every year for program. Stay flat on program fees for year after year unless we have increased in expenses or less participants.
Okay, perfect. So, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm fully understanding what you're saying. The question of are we breaking even on festivals? The answer is we're still figuring that out right now. And we'll get back to you after working with the Parks and Rec Commission in more detail.
Well, I, I'm gonna let Ryan answer this with a question.
Okay.
I think it really depends. Again, I think we need to look we need to develop a, a model, but we need to look at what we want to be recovering. So, I mean, from the perspective that the admission fees pays for parks O and M, you know, and all of our expenses are paid out of parks O and M from a supply maintenance, that sort of standpoint, like yes, we're breaking even, but we pay utilities on a different account, some other stuff, so I would say mostly, but I we really need the feedback from the commission, you guys to tell us what expenses we want to be recovering. And then I can more accurately answer that question.
And how does that differ by the event type, for profit versus nonprofit? How does that differ if the event is free to the public or really expensive or somewhere in between? So the community benefit versus the individual benefit, that's what this tiered system looks at. And so what are we trying to recover might change percentage wise, so identifying what items we want to recover, but then the percentage of recovery. I, I would recommend differs by size of event, type of event, um, impact of the event. And that's what we need time to full, to more flush out with some direction and, and further participation.
I, I feel like it would be really nice to just have like a thorough idea of like what these events are costing the town of Telluride. Whether it is a big event or a small event, like we, not, not an average, but whether it is for-profit or non-for-profit, it shouldn't matter, we should be able to look at any given event and be like, be able to tell what the hard cost is to the town of Telluride and the taxpayers, not to say that we want to recover all of it, but like having a a in-depth understanding of what it, it costs even to do repair on the fields if it's really rainy festival, you know, like we need to be able to to understand all of it.
And I think if we are gonna go down that path, which I, again, you know, I think we all are of the more information is better sort of philosophy here on this council. We also do need to take a look at the economic impact that these festivals bring in, so we need to look at the tax revenue generation that they create. The, the economic stability for the restaurants, for the retail operations for our lodgers. What they, what the actual good that they also bring in, cause I think sometimes when we have this Parks and Rec conversation about festivals, we're talking in regards to like, sort of what they're taking without really completing that thought process, which is like what they're actually bringing to the community and I, and what that balance is gonna look like and we're philosophically, we want to be as a community when it comes to using these events for the economic you know, generation that they can bring depending on our support.
I'm not questioning what Parks and Rec offers, not just the local community, but the visiting community, what I'm simply asking for is a detailed budget and exclamation of what, what costs are going now, what costs are coming in.
Per event or?
For, for, for events, yeah.
So the question you asked from my perspective is for major events where more than, or at least fifty percent of our park is not accessible to the general public. I believe individually as Adrian, that we should be at the minimum breaking even on every possible cost, because our park has very limited access to the public. When we start getting into like all these other special events, I, I sometimes I'm not sure that like the nuance of work between them is, is worth it, but when to Stephanie's point, that we're all about creating a opportunity for the public to engage in a, at a low cost. The public can't engage at a low cost when there's major festival or major events in the park, because it's mostly locked off. So that's where I land on your question, as far as drilling down to other levels, I don't think that it's as important to break even. Um, because so much more of the park is still available, even when they are utilizing one corner or the catering building or whatever that may be.
Um, and, and I think it's important not to just think about town park, it's street, it's pocket parks. Parking areas, uh, so an idea on street the model that Berkeley's have utilized of loss of parking revenue, there being an actual usage fee of town streets for an event, so I mean, town park is, is one piece of it, but there's a lot of other venues that the town manages. Um, that I think needs to be looked at, and it could be a phased approach, we can focus on the major events and town park specific is, is a phased approach, I think is more realistic for staff, but also for events to plan for and to adjust their pricing structures for and everything else.
I, I feel like there's a big difference between the pocket parks, I mean, we're not selling tickets and there's not being utilities utilized. Um, and locals can still go on in the pocket park, pocket parks, I guess it would be just really nice for us up here to like know, like on average, what does it cost for a person to be in town park from eight AM to eleven PM during Bluegrass, like utility, I mean, like, what is it costing Parks and Rec, you know, I'm, I, I feel like we've been, I've been asking for this for six years, so it would just be nice to have more information about the costs of these bigger events, and then also eventually be able to know like what is a jazz fest compared to a blues and bruise, but we should have, be able to have this information, just, and it should not be this difficult.
A lot of progress, uh, and there is exclusive use of pocket parks for events. Where they do sell tickets, there's exclusive use of streets for events, so non-exclusive versus exclusive is another point, and if we're looking at town parks specifically, set up days of an event. Things are still accessible, event days themselves, not acceptable, but these are all the caveats that we would like time to to work on more, and the data is being compiled, and we're happy to share it with you, whether it's gonna get exactly to where you're trying to get. Uh, we might need a little more time, but it's, it is growing by the minute.
That was the point of this summer season as well with festivals, was to allow Parks and Rec to be able to collect that data, so it is accurate, so that we can make really good informed decisions and I, you know, we're almost there, right? We're almost through the summer season, so giving, letting them get through this process and then compiling the data, so it is sort of I think Stephanie has heard sort of loud and clear what we're looking for, and so when they can bring the data to us, that's whole and accurate, and then we can, if there is still some more information that we're looking for, we can continue to look at it. You know, and refine that process, but I think they've, this is the, this is the time period we gave them to complete this work.
And the other thing we've heard loud and clear is simplicity. So I think moving away from the admission fee as an all-inclusive accept and trying to work on where we have a, a mechanism to bill for actual costs. Um, for, through facility rentals or through utility usage, that type of thing is not gonna get simpler in terms of the billing, but it's gonna get simpler in terms of the understanding of events and others. And that's something that we are prepared to start rolling out.
It's, it sounds like, uh, certainly the focus is on the major events in regards to maybe the more detailed um, you know, cost recovery discussion. Um, but I think this kind of philosophic conversation is really key at the end of the day, both between council and the Park and Rec Commission, uh, because here's yet another area where the philosophy um uh, has pretty significant uh, swings between different communities, some communities look at special events as economic development and are actually subsidizing them and are not coming anywhere close to covering costs. Here in Telluride, we've had much more of a philosophy of, of cover cover the operational costs, and I think that's a, that's just a, a great conversation to continue to, to have. I, I agree with all the points that it's both, um, it's a matter of looking uh, at and again, Stephanie's team's, I think, doing a good job on refining costs, and also, uh, I think there, we, we could add that layer from a finance standpoint of um, kind of economic development side or, or sales tax generation, things along those lines as well for each. Uh, so, thanks for that, thanks for that discussion, I think it's, this is always an important one here.
I do want to add my voice to drill down on one subtle but important distinction in my mind, and it's not necessarily about the size of the festival, it's the impact to the community resource uh, of the park or the streets, the parklets. Because I would consider Film Fest a major festival, but lower impact to that resource, since they utilize the ice rink and not much else of the town park and the rest of the park would remains open and available. Um, and then Jazz Fest, which is about a similar sized festival in attendance, is much more impactful as it removes much more of the park, and so that's, that's how I'd like to look at it, not, not just the size of the festival, but the impact.
But Film Fest uses Elks Park and street closures for a long period of time and catering facility. So yeah, it's dispersed in a different way.
But Elks Park is free and open to the public as well.
Yeah, so I think this is why this is a complicated process. And I think, you know, continuing collecting that data, obviously, we're all gonna have some like weigh-ins as how we wanna kind of structure that, I think probably from like people spacing, space usage. You know, whatever it ends up being, but what you're doing right now, and I think we're all really excited to get to this point where we feel like we can make educated and informed decisions, thanks to the work that you've done.
Okay, well, um, I think you're gonna do a debrief for festival season on October twenty fourth. Um, as part of our gathering of data and, and sharing it with you all, you'll see a very busy spreadsheet, um, that talks about every event that uses town property, what type of town property they use. Whether it's exclusive use, non-exclusive, whether they charge a fee, what, whether they don't, and then the fees that we currently collect for each of those, so um, we will have that ready to go for that meeting, and then I will hope that Parks and Rec Commission can start talking more about the philosophy for Parks and Rec or for special events um, at their October meeting, and I will include you all in that, is there support for the five percent increase to admissions fee? And Kevin, do you, you see any major hurdles there with the current municipal code?
Well, the current municipal code on that provision, I was just looking at it, because the question might come up. Um, does specifically call out law enforcement as one of the areas of um, the use of the revenue, so if that's changing, if that model's changing.
It's just decreasing, it's not going away, but I'm more concerned with a six dash three dash thirty B about the fee schedules will be modified every five years. For the resolution, can we do that sooner?
Uh, I'd want to talk to you about that probably offline.
Okay.
Uh, just to wrap a bow around the other provision. There is some pretty broad language at the end of the fee section that talks about such other town park administrative operation and improvement expenses as town council may designate, so it's quite broad in terms of what that fee revenue could be used for in the town park.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks Stephanie and Ryan, appreciate all that.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna jump in and ask for it, I'm checking, it is eleven o'clock, but I know we are going to discuss the childcare fee and some of the other fees. Um, I just wanted to get your kind of direction on how deep.
How much time do you think that that's going to take?
I can, depends on how quickly you want to do it, we can do it quickly, but if there's a lot of feedback, more time.
We feel like ten minutes is I think we could do to everybody in the room, and if y'all are here for it, it's eleven. Or for the, so, yeah, okay.
Um, so I won't go into too, into detail about the um, childcare um, fee structure. Um, just to say that we, we do have our operating deficit that has been mentioned at the eighty-five thousand. Um, and that has built out kind of your potentials to look at how we charge um, for childcare services. Um, staff suggestion is to maintain the sixty-five dollars that was just increase from their historic fifty-eight dollars and is in line with the rest of the um, community. Um, we will come to next year with much more detail on those operating costs, and we kind of have a year under our belt. But just to remind council and the community that we are operating not at an operational deficit. Um, meaning or that is based off of capacity, paying teachers, the appropriate salaries. Um, having the facility open five days a week with appropriate hours or the necessary hours. And that is what it comes to, unlike the rest of um, those out there that have had to make operational deficits. So I'll make that very quick and see if there's any feedback on that, that staff suggestion.
So you gave us three different choices.
Yep, and our recommendation was the sixty-five dollars, so the three different choices was the at-cost rate. Um, a tiered structure and then um, in line with what our, say, competitors are charging.
I guess, so my, um, I know that there's not town staff children in there now.
Right.
Um, but I would, I would be open to the town staff rate being a part of that, I don't know which option that is.
It could be part of all options and that's um, figure four.
I think if we're subsidizing the organization in its entirety, then we should also be providing that benefit to our staff. And we should also be holding spaces as they open up for our town staff, I'm sure you are already on board with that, but um yeah, I also think it's important, and I don't know if this is like sort of a patronizing thing and that, I just the understanding of how expensive childcare is needs to be more broadly understood. And I think the parents get it, so maybe this, what I'm about to say is not important, but knowing that the actual cost is ninety-three dollars and they're paying sixty-five dollars. Um, maybe that's more of a community education component and less an individual family component, but I think we talk about the subsidy that the town pays for housing units and how we're making that affordable, this is a similar thing where I think it's gonna be a trend in a lot of things where the town is having to step in and a lot of places to subsidize what it is to live here, and I just, I don't know, I feel like the community, the nation, the world needs to understand how expensive it all is.
No, I think that's great, and again, you know, that's us, that part of that data strategy, we're gonna hope to have and bring to council next year with Strong Start, Bright Futures and whatnot. Um, and aligning with the childcare um, operators of our destination of what that looks like and where subsidies which are going to be needed look like in the future, and if it is, everyone should charge how much it costs. And then we subsidize tuition or, you know, figuring out what that strategy looks like for ourselves and potentially the region, hopefully.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Yep.
So then with this rate, is that meaning that pa- families will still theoretically have to be applying to Bright Futures to reduce the amount that they pay based on their income?
Yep.
So that we're subsidizing on one end, the Bright Futures and our tax will still be subsidizing from a broader community sense.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Your initial point, Adrian, with something like when you get a healthcare bill, you have the overall cost, and then what your insurance pays, something like here's the real cost, here's the town subsidy, here's what you actually owe, is that something like what's?
I mean, the families know that, I think that's the hard part of what I'm saying, like, we don't need to tell the parents that this is really expensive, we need to tell everybody else this.
But to that point, we are, I mean, while we are not saying like, you know, to parents, which we could on their bills potentially. I talked to Kaylee, um, but like this, you know, this is what your rate is. Here's the town of Telluride, you know, financial assistance, and then what does actually happen on all childcare bills is here's your Strong Start assistance here, so you do get to see you know, what that number is and how much you are getting subsidized as, you know, um, getting someone that gets childcare bills. Um, but we could, if that's something that you think would be beneficial, add in that piece for that understanding, maybe give us a year to not add another line item um, on the bill. Um, and we can look at that in the future.
Like a systematic issue, so like telling people that they're getting more help than others, I don't know if that's really that's really helpful to everyone.
But no, I appreciate that input, and it is a complicated subsidy strategy that we're working through. Um, so direction is I think everyone is okay with the sixty-five dollars for next year and looking at a fifty percent staff subsidy included in that. Be perfect. Um, do you want to quickly go through any of the other fees that are in the packet, I think most of them are self-explanatory, but I can highlight a few.
I didn't have, personally have questions about that, did anyone on council have any of those?
Nope.
All right, then the only thing then to wrap the discussion, um, as we appreciate all the feedback on the um, reduction strategies or suggestions, it seems like most of them don't seem like an appetite to move forward, which is totally understandable, so how does council feel with the budget as presented? Um, knowing that we still have the, when looking at the vacancy savings of fifty percent, um um, hitting that fifty cent mark goal, or do you want staff to look more internally at bringing that um, budget more to?
About fifty percent?
No, we're at fifty percent, we're still at the fifty percent reserves, even running at that one point four seven deficit. Or do you want us to look deeper into suggestions for that balance? How do you feel?
I think I'd feel pretty good about it right now.
I'm happy with where we stand.
We still have a lot to discuss moving forward, so I think that might, that question to be later.
Okay.
Yeah. Refined.
Your general plan, Adrian?
I don't really want to respond until I see what it looks like without the town attorney.
Yeah, I mean, we will have a presented budget, but it will, if you would like staff to take more time to the line by line. It, it's just asking for what that next iteration looks like and how um, drastic you want it to look.
This was presented well.
Okay, yeah, thanks guys.
Yeah, we appreciate this, there's plenty of refining. The next, the next uh, go around, but yeah, thanks for our department heads who were able to participate and all of them certainly had a lot of uh time spent with Kaylee, myself, Zoe to, to get to where we're at today. Again, we uh, we feel good about a pragmatic first draft here and uh, continue refining and come back to you.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, everyone. We're gonna move on to item one D, budget discussion with the Tourism Board, we have Curious here.
Good morning, everyone, thanks for having us.
So I'll start the conversation off as um, we had our town council retreat. Yikes, like, remember July? Wow, woo, okay, July, um, where council gave direction to hear more of the business community's um, voice and how they are feeling about um how marketing is impacting the town of Telluride and their businesses, so here is the quick overview of that feedback. Oh, yeah. So we sent this out to our business license list, um, specifically targeting in-town business license holders to about um, eight hundred and ninety-five contacts. um eight hundred and ninety-five contacts. Um, we also sent this directly to um some associations being the Telluride Restaurant Association, the Lodgers Association, Realtors and so on. Um, and with that, we did get forty-three respondents. Our goal was fifty, so we didn't quite get um to that point. But we did hear from fourteen different industries, so we have a lot of diverse voices. As we go through this presentation, um I did break out or show kind of that um response per industry, so you'll get to see kind of those trends. Um, so majority of you can tell, um, we had twenty-five point six percent from property management, eleven point six from um real estate. Eleven point six from restaurants, fourteen retail, and then the rest is pretty evenly distributed among the other industry market segments. Okay, so the first question was, how many years have you been in business? So we're just gonna quickly overview kind of the response, um, the respondents. So we did have a lot of great tenure. Um, most of them have been in business for over ten years. Um, the next was five to ten and only one respondent was um new. So you can see we have a, a lot of good people that have seen um, the longevity of marketing in the region. So we asked the businesses, um, now we're gonna look at business trends. The question was, um, do, how it, my business is doing well. Zero was strongly degree, strongly disagree, and ten was strongly agree. Um, the average score was six point six five, so most businesses agree that their business is doing well. Again, you can kind of see that breakout per market segment on the answer trends. So we then asked businesses to provide or to um indicate, when considering their business profits, what years would they consider normal or median? And then ask a similar question of um, what was their best year? Majority said their normal year looked like um two thousand nineteen and that their best year was twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. Again, broken out by industry segment. So we then asked them to provide us the details of their gross profit margin percentage. Um, when doing scatter plots for each of the three um time segments. Again, normal year while varying for everybody and best year while varying for everyone. That was what they indicated as their normal best years. Um, so you can look at those trends. I'm not gonna kind of get deep, but the dotted line is that fifty percent mark. So you can kind of see where they uh skew comparatively. So when deeping it, diving in a little bit deeper, I took the um people provided their gross margin uh percentage. So I took the average percentage difference. Um, when looking at the normal year compared to the best year, you can see the normal year is down. Um, and that's broken up by industry, but um at a max eighteen percent. Um, but as you can see, it's definitely trended down. The only one that seems not as much was um hotel, but we um, I think only had one respondent from hotel. Um, we also did that from normal year compared to year to date, which is a little bit, some people um felt like year to date is trending. Um, that their gross Marvin percentage, the difference, um, uh it, they are behind compared to the uh normal year and some feel like they're trending above. So a little less of a obvious um trend there. Same thing, so we'll go um transaction count. So people did take the time to provide their actual transaction counts, their gross margins percentage, all of these data points. So we were really able to see kind of these trends when looking at the average percentage difference. So again, looking normal year to best year. Have that significant trend down and then normal year to year to date, more um of the transactions you can kind of see are trending down for majority of industries. And then finally, the check sales invoice amount. So that percentage difference, you can kind of see there. Building and construction is the anomaly of year to date. So with those business perceptions, we asked, um, how do they feel that their businesses were pacing relative to previous years? So again, we had the opportunity to get a lot of the raw data to look at these trends and then we are also getting their perceptions. So you can see majority feel that it's either slightly down or um significantly down. Um, that's, you know, forty percent and thirty percent. So that takes up a huge chunk of that pie. Again, you can look at that at the industry breakdown over there. Um, no one said that they were significantly up. Um. Or excuse me, yeah, significantly up. So you don't see that data point um presented here, because it would be zero. So how has your business model changed in the last five years? This is kind of the trend. Um, many said that their um model had remained the same. Many said that they had to reduce staffing, that they've moved to more higher value products. They've had to reduce their inventory. A few said that they've increased staffing or had new products. Um, and you can kind of see that trickle down, but those are the main trends. Then we asked, do you believe your business is impacted by the number of visitors in town? Almost all said yes, ninety-three percent. And then we asked if the town of Telluride's marketing spend impacts their business. And seventy-seven percent felt that it did. So when looking at themes for the open-ended question of what challenges does your company currently face? Um, a lot of them said lack of staffing. A lot of them felt like lack of marketing or um visitors not knowing where they are or um fewer people coming into town. Um, also higher operating cost. A few felt like wayfinding was an issue. Um, some said the uncertain regulatory environment. Um, this mainly focused around um STR regulations and things along those lines, seasonality, and then the lack of critical infrastructure. So here's some of the open-ended um pieces here on how you see the town's marketing spend impacting their businesses. I won't go through all of them. And I think you have them in the packet. Um, building and construction was again an anomaly here on how they felt, but um, majority just made the sentiment that marketing increases tourism, tourism increases business and, or visitors, and that would increase um their business. So a lot of them were in support of um increasing the town's marketing efforts to maintain downtown vibrancy. So within the packet, we kind of go over a lot of what these industries said um for you to look at. So with that, do we have any questions or any slides we want to go back to before I turn this over to Kira?
So Geneva?
Yeah, could you, oh, sorry, I'm getting weird feedback in my ear. Can you talk about the um purple marketing and PR category and what businesses that are, that refers to?
I don't have it in front of me who that is, um, but it could be um freelance marketers. Um, again, this went to all business license holders and if you do have marketing within the town, um, it could any, any industry that sees themselves as marketing or advertising as their industry. Oh, you know what? It also included the newspaper. Telluride News.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have questions?
Actually, one quick question. Do you, in regards to respondents to actuals? Do you have any breakdown of percentage of respondents to the percentage of actual business licenses as a total in town?
Small, it's a small percentage, so.
No, excuse, I'm not, I'm not asking it well. So say for example, property management was over twenty-five percent of the respondents.
I didn't do that breakdown.
I am skeptical that that is an actual representative sample of the number of businesses in town that operate.
Right.
That, so that, that is a data point I'd like to see to compare.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you guys and we'll turn it over to Kira and her team.
Thank you, Zoe.
Oh, hey, you need.
Wonderful. Do you want to say a few words, Dan?
Thank you for the opportunity. It's that time of year to start the budget process. Um, we put a few options on the table at the uh retreat. Uh, we're gonna revisit those and we would appreciate your input on the direction to go forward. So with that, here's the boss.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks again for having us. And as Zoe mentioned, you have seen us um quite often the past few months. We were here in July and presented our TTV updates. And then a week later, um, we spent time with you at your town council retreat and reviewed some options um as we look ahead to twenty twenty-four and we look forward to continuing that discussion today. But before we start, I just wanted to say how much we value your partnership on a really, I've enjoyed working with you over the past few years. So we look forward to a continued relationship moving forward. Um, today we're going to touch upon a recap of the twenty twenty-three budget and funding sources, um trends and metrics. A really quick recap of TTV twenty twenty-three initiatives, because I know you've all seen them a few times, and then moving forward into twenty twenty-four. And we'll jump into the twenty twenty-three budget and funding sources. Um, so I know we talked about this during the retreat, but we do get some questions from the public as well, so wanted to cover this today. Um, where does that lodging tax and where does the funding originate from? So our funding originates from the visitor. And when the visitor stays in a lodging property, that could be a hotel, any STR managed or unmanaged. Um, they are charged two percent lodging tax um on their stay. So originally, the TTV was under an intergovernmental agreement, um where we received all of those two percent lodging taxes to be used for marketing purposes. Um, in twenty twenty-one, that intergovernmental agreement was terminated. And we established separate, separate agreements with each municipality and each of those agreements has very specific initiatives and goals, um as well as revenue, um funding tied to it. So um, we started our agreement with the town of Telluride um in June of twenty twenty-two. And that agreement um provided nine hundred ninety thousand dollars in funding to the Telluride person board. In twenty twenty-three, um, that budget amount went down by twelve percent and um we are currently funded by the town of Telluride and the amount of eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And here's a look at our funding pie chart. Um, and you have all seen this before, but um it has changed a bit since our last meeting. Um, Mountain Village did add an additional two hundred fifteen thousand dollars to their funding for winter marketing. Um, so we went from one point five million dollar um funding from town of Mountain Village to over one point seven million dollars. Um, or fifty-six percent of our total funding. Um, town of Telluride makes up twenty-five, twenty-nine percent of that funding. And again, our expenses look a little different now as well. Um, Mountain Village Marketing um moved from eight hundred fifty thousand to over one million dollars and makes up thirty-five percent of our total expense budget. Does anybody have any questions before I move on to trends and metrics? Great. So travel trends, we're still seeing mixed travel sentiment out there. Um, people are still very excited to travel with over eighty-three percent of Americans having existing travel plans within the next twelve months. Um, however, over the summer, we saw a shift where an estimated fifty-five percent of high house, so how high household income Americans went to Europe. So a lot of our previous guests that came to Telluride and other destinations decided to go to Europe with the world opening up. Um, and the American travelers who stayed in the country were experiencing sticker shock. So forty-six percent agreed that high prices have kept them from traveling and travel budgets are declining. So they've declined by twenty-five percent since January, um, which is the lowest average since October of twenty twenty-one.
One, one thing I'd also add is exacerbating this trend is the strength of the US dollar. Needs to be most currencies, but specifically vis a vis the euro and the British pound. And so Europe's on sale.
Exactly. Good point. All right, so now we'll cover some of our lodging metrics. So summer actuals. Um, the destination was flat for summer, so total occupancy, that's paid and owner occupancy closed at fifty-two percent and paid occupancy was flat as well at forty-five percent. ADR, which is average daily rate decreased by six percent for the destination for summer at five hundred thirty-seven dollars. Um, which affected RevPAR, um, RevPAR decreased by six percent and Rev, RevPAR is revenue per available room. Um, and RevPAR is determined by calculating ADR times occupancy. So that decreased by six percent. Now, when we dive a little deeper and go into town of Telluride metrics, um, total occupancy decreased by sixteen percent for the town of Telluride, um, at fifty-one percent occupancy. And paid occupancy decreased by eighteen percent at forty-five percent occupancy. Average daily rate increased by five percent at five hundred forty-eight dollars, um, creating a fourteen percent decrease in RevPAR at two hundred forty-five dollars. Mountain Village, on the other hand, saw an increase in occupancy. Um, where total occupancy increased by eleven percent at almost fifty-three percent occupancy. Um, and paid occupancy increased by fifteen percent at forty-five percent. Um, ADR decreased by thirteen percent, five thirty-two, and RevPAR was flat. So we're seeing a bit of a shift, you know, historically, um, in the summertime. Telluride had higher occupancies, generally speaking, really because of the festivals and that shifted, you know, in the winter. Mountain Village is usually higher occupancy, because that's really the base of the ski area. But now we're seeing things change a little bit and people are starting, starting to gravitate up to Mountain Village rather than maybe choosing to stay in Telluride during the summer.
Here is, this is the past couple of years, or I guess maybe the past year now, is, has this been the maybe biggest marketing push that Mountain Village has done in quite a long time?
Absolutely.
Related to the increase of visitor numbers up there?
Yes, we think that that marketing is absolutely contributing to that increase.
I mean, it's definitely the first time they have individually marketed Mountain Village.
Yeah.
It's not always been Telluride as a destination, never Mountain Village as a, a destination on its own.
If you see the, the, the winter pacing data, you're gonna see this trend accelerating. They're uh they're investing significantly, specifically marketing Mountain Village as part of the broader destination.
And we're doing the opposite and seeing.
We would love for you to do more marketing, but it's uh your decision.
On that, Jesse Ray, Mountain Village's sales tax revenue for the year through July is down point seven percent. And the town of Tellurides is up one point three percent.
But I think if you speak to business owners, even though our sales taxes up, that has a lot to do with inflation and actually foot traffic and individual businesses is down.
Inflation cuts also for Mountain Village. We're talking in raw numbers. We are up, they are down. And so the idea that so, that these people aren't coming to the town of Telluride over from Mountain Village, I think is not the vision I have. I think Mountain Village was always meant to be some of the lodger base for our, our region. And the, the fact that we're seeing more tourists stay there doesn't mean that we aren't also benefiting from that.
Yeah, and I think you also have, it's a complex economic equation. You have to factor in the, the pricing points. We're finally seeing we think we've hit peak ADR and ADR is coming down. And to your point, Dan, Mountain Village has a higher percentage of the lodging. What we've seen in restaurants specifically is prices are generally going up. So the old maximum of you sleep up there and you come down and eat and maybe do a little shopping down here could be reflected in the relative sales tax numbers that you referenced. I had a very specific question. I can't see it exactly on this graph, so I'm trying to look at my one online. If I'm reading this right, and maybe you can confirm this, occupancy numbers at Mountain Village went up. Occupancy numbers in the town of Telluride went down, but they're actually about equal right now. Is that correct?
They're.
At forty-five percent?
Yeah, right, exactly. So yes, when you look at total occupancy, they are similar.
Yeah.
Um, but historically, town of Mountain Village occupancy was a lot lower than town of Telluride.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was reading that right. We're, we're basically about equal at forty-five total between both jurisdictions.
Yes, yeah, for paid occupancy.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Right, so now we'll look at a spaghetti graph here. Um, that shows us just not only year over year, but a comparison of twenty twenty-one, twenty nineteen um to twenty twenty-three. And on the left, we have town of Telluride and you see twenty twenty-three um as the blue line. Um, and the blue line in Mountain Village as well on the right. We can see that on the left, um, you know, the occupancy has definitely declined in Telluride, whereas in Mountain Village, it has increased. Um, so yes, even though those occupancies are at the same rate right now, Telluride is experiencing a decline compared to previous years. Um, and now let's look at winter pace. Um, so far, winter is pacing very strong for the destination. Um, total occupancy has increased by, this is pace, twenty-four percent. And I like to caveat this as well. Um, the numbers are still small, which makes the percentages larger. And um, these number, numbers change frequently. Um, winter tends to have larger booking windows, but we're still monitoring this daily because they do change. Um, also, people tend to book larger properties earlier, which is why we see that ADR higher. Um, they booked during the holidays and, you know, for large families typically. Um, so we will continue to monitor these numbers and. So we will continue to monitor these numbers and we do report these peakly and our weekly in our P G, excuse me. So paid occupancy for the destination has increased by twenty-nine percent. It's currently pacing at almost twenty percent occupancy. It looks like ADR is pacing one percent down from last year. So now let's look at Town of Telluride, where total occupancy is three percent down from last year in pace. And paid occupancy has decreased by eighteen percent. Average daily rate has increased by thirteen percent with a seven percent decrease in RevPAR pace. Mountain Village, we're seeing a forty percent increase in total occupancy. Fifty-two percent, fifty-three percent increase in paid occupancy. And six, ADR, six percent down in pace year over year. And that's bringing our revenue per available room up by forty-four percent. Um, and I just put this in here to segue into some ROI metrics that I'm going to share with you. And I believe you've seen them before. But this is a sneak peek of our Mountain Village winter marketing campaign. And this is on schedule to launch on October seventh. And last year, and, and we'll also be able to do the same this, in the summer. We were able to calculate ROI generated from the winter campaign. And we'll be doing the same this year for the, the Mountain Village winter campaign as well. But we worked with a company called Viant. And they, it was a media buy that we placed that was about eight, represented about eighty percent of our media for that winter campaign. And Viant works with a company called Adara. And Adara uses technology to track conversions made that are connected with this campaign. So they're all lodging based conversions. And Adara got back to us and reported that estimated revenue generated from the Mountain Village marketing brought over two point five million dollars through lodging. The only issue with this was that it was for the whole destination. Because Mountain Village and Telluride shares that code. It was for the entire destination. They couldn't segment Mountain Village from Telluride. So what we did was we took Mountain Village law, Mountain Village's lodging revenue share based on tax revenues and determined that their revenue share was sixty-eight percent. We calculated that into the total amount and estimated that Mountain Village's lodging revenue came out at a little over one point seven million. And then we applied the spend with Viant, which was three hundred ten thousand and determined that our ROI on the campaign was five dollars and sixty cents per dollar spent. And I just want to note, this is just for lodging only, not all of the other revenue that the visitor is bringing into the destination. And, you know, just, I, I wanted to bring this up also to demonstrate that when we run a marketing campaign, we can track conversions. And I think that's very important. I know it's important for Mountain Village and that it would, it would be important to the town of Telluride as well. And now we'll quickly, any questions before I move on to initiatives? All right. And like I said, I'll quickly run through these because I know you've seen them before. But in twenty twenty-three, we continued with our standard initiatives, the visitor guide, telluride.com, Senrez, lodging metrics, consumer analytics, communications, visitor guide and public relations. And as I've mentioned before, we do weave destination stewardship into all of our programs and initiatives. And I feel fortunate to sit on the Colorado Tourism Office's Destination Stewardship Council right now. And last week was at a regional meeting in Montrose that Zoe attended and JD from Mountain Village attended. And we were able to be a part of the planning process for the Colorado Tourism Office's Destination Stewardship Plan. So really looking forward to, to working on that with them and rolling that out. And I feel like we can also use elements of that plan within our agreements. We also added some new, new initiatives into our twenty twenty-three program. I'm going to have successfully executed them. Our business and event support campaign, our grant program, which was rolled into that, international promotions and our economic dashboard. All right, now moving forward to twenty twenty-four. There's just a few things to consider here. Tourism fuels seventy to eighty percent of Telluride's economy. So that was reiterated through RRC and EPS's recent STR study. And just something to think about, you know, it's, it's all cyclical, right? If there's a decline in tourism, there will be a reduction in our tax revenues. Economic uncertainty and potential recession may impact tourism. The world has opened up to post-COVID travelers. As I mentioned, this summer, we saw people traveling to Europe, and I think that will continue. Town of Telluride lodging occupancies are experiencing a downward trend. Mountain Village occupancies are growing. Comp destinations, our competitive destinations are actively marketing, so we could potentially be losing that market share. And then potential economical challenges with upcoming infrastructure changes. So the gondola, Lot L and Carhenge. So as we think about this, it's important to consider that long-term marketing can ensure economic resiliency as we move forward. And I just wanted to share this case study by Longwoods International, the rise and fall of Colorado tourism. And I know this has been alluded to many times. But just to quickly revisit, in nineteen ninety-three, Colorado's twelve million dollar marketing budget was cut to zero. It led to losses of two point four billion dollars annually. In two thousand and six, their budget was back to twelve, to nineteen million, and they immediately started marketing again. And it took them nine years to regain that lost market share. So when we look at that locally, the TTV has not run a destination marketing program since twenty nineteen. So it's been four years since we've marketed the destination. We started marketing Mountain Village in twenty twenty-two, and we are starting to see those positive economic results. So, and I think that's pretty quick, actually, considering. So just as we make plans for the future, something to think about. And then I just wanted to share the classic marketing funnel just to illustrate the benefits of long-term marketing and also to illustrate just the time it takes to implement a successful marketing campaign. From awareness down to really the ultimate goal of brand loyalty. And brand loyalty is what is going to get us through the tough times and the economic challenges. And I also just wanted to point out that, you know, marketing gives us the power, and I say us, not just the TTV, but the town to strategically target our audience and speak to who we would like to come visit. We also can control the messaging and create expectations for our guests. So, you know, say if destination stewardship is a priority, that's something that we convey in our messaging and ensure that they are properly educated before they arrive and that expectations are met. And then just wanted to take a look at that two percent lodgers tax. So we can really use these figures for our budgeting and our, our budget discussion, really. So in twenty twenty-two, the two percent lodgers tax came in at over one point two million. Then the Telluride Tourism Board did receive three hundred ninety-five thousand of that. This is a little confusing, but basically the twenty twenty-two will show you that, you know, if we were under that intergovernmental agreement, the TTV would have received the amount of one million six hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. And in twenty-two, we received nine hundred ninety thousand of that. For the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four forecast, we decreased that two percent lodgers tax based on the Town of Telluride budget, which shows a five percent decrease each year. So that's represented in these calculations. In twenty twenty-three, we're looking at a total of one, over one point six million dollars coming in. And the TTV is receiving eight hundred seventy-five thousand of that. And then in twenty twenty-four, for the forecast, we're looking at over one point five million dollars generated from the two percent lodging tax and the business license fees. Again, this isn't the whole business, all of the business license fees. This is what comes to the tourism board. Anybody have any questions? All right. So let's talk budget options. And I know you've all seen these before. We talked about them during our retreat. But budget option one would be to remain where we're at. Continue forward with the same objectives and discuss and make any changes or refinements to the plan. Option number two comes in at a little over one point two million dollars. And we would market the lower compression period. So, you know, we see our economy as very, you know, peaks and valleys are visitation. So it would be really filling in those valleys. So marketing in, you know, for January visitation or early summer, so late May, early June, fall and possibly early winter. Option three would be mount, matching Mountain Village's contribution at one point five million dollars and marketing summer and winter and potentially collaborating with Mountain Village on a destination marketing plan where we could create sub campaigns for both Town of Telluride and Town of Mountain Village. So, you know, we would have that one brand identity for the destination. And then we would make sure that both towns were taken care of with smaller marketing campaigns. And something that Adrian brought up during our retreat, which I agree with. If we were to move forward with option number two or option number three, we could pull funds out of that business event and event support. I think it was about a hundred thousand dollars and apply that to the marketing as well. Because I don't think that we would need that as much if we were doing destination marketing. So, you know, our recommendation is to, you know, just with all the data that Zoe presented and all the information that we presented today is for the Town of Telluride to start marketing again. So we'd love to have that discussion with you. Here is an example of what the marketing timeline would look like. Because this contract would be executed in twenty twenty-four, we would start planning in January. We would, we would run through creative concepts in February, finalize creative and media buy in March. And then we would launch the summer campaign in April. Another topic we want to discuss as well is a multi-year agreement. And this was on the table in twenty twenty-two when we signed our initial agreement with the Town of Telluride. It was discussed that after a few cycles, we could move into more of a multi-year agreement. And I think this would be really helpful for everyone in terms of planning and budgeting, creating more efficiencies between the TTV and the Town of Telluride and really fostering collaboration and growth as we move forward. So thank you for considering and look forward to discussing this with all of you.
Okay. Thanks, Kira.
Yeah, yeah.
Adrian just raised her hand before I even finished saying thank you. So go ahead.
I'm just hoping you could explain a little bit from your perspective structurally, why you focus so much on lodging as a comparison and not also include the sales tax for Mountain Village and like the, uh, the rest of the picture of the destination. And I know it's because you sort of manage to a certain extent lodging and reservations and you have that, that data.
Yeah.
Could you just say a little bit more? Because from the perspective of the town, it feels like, you know, our sales tax numbers are published in our town council meetings. You could easily get that information from us at any point. I would imagine Mountain Village is similar.
Yeah.
Can you just say a little more about that?
Yeah. And, you know, we did look into taxes for our board meeting and we presented that. And I think the issue is, um, Mountain Village's, I think, tax reports go up through July now. And the last time I looked for Telluride, it was through May, so it just wasn't apples to apples. It's tough when they don't match each other necessarily. So back from May, which we presented at our board meeting a couple of weeks ago, Town of Telluride was flat and Mountain Village was up by one percent. So they were, they were pretty similar. The lodging, I think, because, you know, we are funded by those lodging taxes is what we're really used to reporting in terms of, you know, just economic, you know, what's happening economically in town. But yes, I agree, the lot, you know, the other taxes are also indicators that we need to look at.
Well, lodging tax too, that directly correlates to visitors. I mean, it's a tourist destination. That's the, the best way we can understand.
Right.
Who's spending, what, what percentage of people are spending what based off of lodging numbers?
Yeah.
I mean, sales tax also directly correlates to tourists. I mean, you can't say that it doesn't.
But locals also contribute to sales tax.
Sure, but we haven't.
We don't really, we don't really do staycation.
And we're, we're happy to include it in future reports. Historically, we've been accused of, not accused, somewhat noted that we tend to throw maybe too much data on the table. So we're trying to manage the amount we put in these reports, but happy to include it and point taken.
I think, yeah, it's, right now, I think we have reasonably comparable numbers and opportunities for people to stay. But Mountain Village is looking to increase the number of hotels and lot, like the quantity of rooms in Mountain Village is going to go up therefore. And I know it's percentages, so you can start to compare percentages. But I just think we, the Town of Telluride brings a whole different thing to the table. And if you're just looking at lodging, you're not painting a full picture. And so, um, anyway, I just think that that's going to be an important thing. And even if it's, sorry, you're making a face. Am I not making sense?
Oh, no, no. No, I just, I'm focused.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, but I'll stop for now.
Yeah, and, and we agree and we're happy to show it. And to your point, you know, with Mountain Village, the second hotel project just got approved yesterday. So also showing the sales tax, those two projects are going to bring four or five high-end restaurants to Mountain Village. They're going to bring multiple high-end retail establishments. And so we're going to want to, uh, track all of that.
Well, since you said it, that was my other comment, which is understanding the, the base economics of each of the core areas. Town of Telluride currently has a restaurant availability and types of restaurants that Mountain Village doesn't exactly have compared by numbers. And understanding sort of like the retail, I don't want it to be like us versus them. But I think understanding our economic reality for each destination, if we're going to refer to ourselves as that in this context, is an important component. And maybe that's not the role of the TTV, but in terms of us as decision makers, we need to be able to see what, what they have that we don't and vice versa in terms of economics.
And, and we have a significant distortion coming up because it's the current plan, as you probably know better than us, is to close the gondola for over a year to build hopefully a new, better gondola. And so we've got some distortions coming up. The more information we can get on the table, the better.
Well, thanks. Thank you, Adrian. And point taken. And I understand that you'd like to see more holistic approach to it.
And I will just add, I think, you, you know, we're talking, you want to have that data to make marketing decisions. But I think we just want that economic data in general. And that's the purpose of us working with TTV for that economic dashboard so that we can get a more quicker pulse on our economic health comparatively and as a region.
On a slightly larger, but in my mind, related topic, Zoe, perhaps you might be best able to answer this. Can you remind me what the employee mitigation calculation compares for Mountain Village to Telluride?
When it, employee mitigation calculated?
Like new construction, for example, these new hotels. I did look at it earlier this summer, but I don't have the data in.
So theirs is a little bit different than the Town of Telluride. I can't remember the exact amount. I have to look at the worksheet. I have to look at the worksheet, Dan. I don't know off the top of my head, but it doesn't. Anyway, keep going with your question and where you're going.
And, and how this ties to me in my mind, Phil is going big picture on this. It's not that marketing doesn't work. I of course agree, marketing works. I think that Telluride has historically stepped up in larger capacity providing public services, most notably affordable housing. And that's, that is the current best use of our limited tax dollars is to continue to provide those, that infrastructure, that resource for our community. And that's where, as I've said in the short-term rental conversation, increases of tourism also correlate to an increase in the required number of workers in our community. So it's not a simple calculation in my mind of the ROI. I think that also ignores the component of how much does the Town of Telluride then have to invest to provide the workforce as long with the wastewater treatment plant i- in the future. And so I think, I don't think it's just so simple of how much money do tourists then come and spend in our town when we bring in more tourism through marketing? And that's, that's where I do lean towards budget option one, holding with the status quo. I also find it pretty notable and not said that the marketing campaign by Mountain Village, the first word on each one of those posters was Telluride. And, and so we, we have, that is where we have strength in our bargaining position because our brand is the brand, is the strength.
Can I just add, good point, and you're correct, but that will be going away. So we. Can I just add, good point, and you're correct, but that will be going away. So we wrapped Telluride. You know, Telluride has brand recognition as we all know. So, and Mountain Village is aware of that. So when we started this marketing campaign, we rolled Telluride into it to establish that brand recognition. But now that this campaign for Mountain Village is going very well, we are going to start dropping Telluride eventually and making Mountain Village its own destination. Just, so just something to be aware of, um, moving forward.
And okay, that's, that's okay with me. Uh, I agree with Adrian that I don't, I don't view Mountain Village as a competitor. I view them as our collaborator, as a partner in our broader tourism economy for our region. And I, like I said previously, part of their role in that collaboration is is the larger percentage of our bed base for our visitors for it on that. So the idea that's some of these tourists will choose to stay up in Mountain Village is generally okay with me. I look at, I look holistically at our economy. I don't think. Um, I, I don't think we can disentangle ourselves from Mountain Village, nor do I want to in, in any way. Uh, but I also want to look of what does each bring to the table. Historically, again, Telluride has provided the greater support for affordable housing and other programs that support the working people of Telluride, which as you all know, and I have stated numerously publicly. Uh, that's, that's my priority in supporting is, is the working people of our community. I think that there is a unintended, unintended consequence of always bringing in more tourism without acknowledging that it's, it certainly takes many years to build up the housing needed to support that. And with, and also acknowledging that we're continually still in a housing shortfall.
So I just did want to add, um, it's between forty and sixty percent depending on the type of, um, unit being mitigated for. To answer your question.
Sounds good. And for, that is pretty close for commercial construction off the top of my head. Perhaps Kevin or Scott remembers it. And then residential construction, we mitigate at ninety percent.
Forty for commercial. Is that your estimate, the, the generation?
Yeah.
Yeah. The formula forty for commercial, ninety for. That's right.
So that, that's my broad philosophy with this conversation. Not that I don't value a lot of the work that the tourism board does. I think we have better, more pressing needs that are for our tax dollars. Lastly, before I hand over the mic, um, on the topic of when the gondola closes, I think that will also be a double-edged sword. I think the winter, yes, might be hard. But I think it's pretty clear that during the summer with the festival season, the, the majority of those events happen in the Town of Telluride. And that a large part of the visitor base that want to come to Telluride during that year will stay in the Town of Telluride, not in the village.
I just answered that really quickly though. Our businesses cannot survive an entire season. And we just saw a slide that showed that they don't necessarily feel like they're doing great. So yes, we may benefit in the summer, but truthfully, we're not going to benefit any more so than we would generally. And the festivals themselves will suffer as well. When that gondola closes and we don't have the ability to bring people in from that bed base up in Mountain Village. And to the winter conversation. If you ask any business on Main Street, if they can withstand even, let's call it twenty-five percent reduction in sales numbers and make it to the next season where the gondola is open, they're not going to say that they can.
Two things on that. First of all, first and foremost, I think that the slide Zoe showed that there's a big difference between perception and the actual economic standing of most of the businesses in town. I don't, I, I know some businesses feel like they're struggling. I know some probably are. But people's opinions, I think, and this is, happens at a broad national context as well. People overestimate the, some impacts. We, we are seeing level, if not slight growth. And people are responding that this is some of the worst years ever here in Telluride. And that is a disconnect. We are not. When people saying we are the worst years ever, the data, the actual data that we are collecting doesn't reflect that.
It does when you consider that prices have gone up dramatically and costs for employees have gone up. Costs for goods have gone up, their profit level has gone down. That's what you're not reading in to this data. I mean.
Go try and fi- find a burger for less than twenty-seven dollars. Possible.
I, I don't, we don't have Telluride location-specific data for how much inflation has directly cut into some of those profits. Nobody can say for sure. So I am basing this just like everyone else should on federal data for the whole nation. So of course there should be some fluctuation within that. But the Fed inflation year, year over year at the last meeting was three point seven percent. So if you want to compare that to our year-over-year growth of one point three percent, so two point four percent difference.
Dan, go talk to the business owners.
I do every day, Lars. That's my job.
And I'm telling you, they're not making what they were making the last couple of years.
And I don't think.
Their business is down.
I think there is a, a clear disconnect between sentiment and data. And I, I put more weight with data. I did not saying I discount sentiment entirely, not saying I discounted entirely. But there is a difference between what people think and feel and what it's, what the data shows.
Okay. I'm going to bring this back to marketing. I just wanted to ask if you could clarify, I'll just simply say I'm in favor of increasing the budget some amount. I'm, I would like to understand the more detail and the difference between the two options. Because it seems like option three is saying you're going to create a destination-wide campaign. And I'm just, I'm struggling to see the benefit of, of the difference between the two. Um, and if you could just talk about that a little bit more.
Sure. Yeah. Thanks for asking, Adrian. So the first option or option number two, um, I should say, would be to market during the low compression period. So we would have a campaign and it would be more Town of Telluride specific that we would turn off and on. Um, based on the season and when we wanted to attract visitors to the destination. Um, option number two at the one point five million would be more of a comprehensive destination-based campaign that we would run similar to, well, we would like to work with Mountain Village because really, you know, ultimately the consumer looks at us as one destination, right? And it could get really confusing if we have Mountain Village ads running and how, and Telluride ads running. Because the consumer does not know the difference. And I think we want to simplify, right? And I think that would also allow us to collaborate with Mountain Village on these efforts. And it would make it more efficient for us as well and really put our dollars to the best use. So it would be really smart of us, I think, to collaborate with the village, create one destination campaign. Um, and then under that, you know, we can retarget people. So, um, if we are putting some digital marketing out there, that's going to generate, you know, twenty million impressions. Um, and people click on that, we can retarget them with, you know, Telluride specific ads. Um, so it would be very strategic. Um, but I think that we satisfy both the Town of Telluride and Town of Mountain Village with that campaign. Um, and again, that it would create the most inefficiencies for everybody.
Collaboration component of working as a destination, has Mountain Village's council said that until they equal us, we will not operate as a destination? Is that the vibe?
No, no, they, they've never said that. They are open to collaboration as well. Um, I think that if they continue to, you know, do the lifting in terms of the marketing, yes, they may want to go off on their own and, um, market, you know, continue to just market Mountain Village. Um, but in speaking with their team, they're very open to collaboration.
I've talked enough. I just wanted to clarify those things.
Appreciate it.
And, and I would just point out, you know, I, to, to Dan's point, like over the summer, Mountain Village up fifteen percent. Uh, Town of Telluride down to eighteen percent. Maybe that's exactly what some people want because Main Street maybe felt a little less busy. Yet we had a similar number of people in the destination. And when we talk about rates, forty-five percent, forty-five percent. Remember, there's a lot more beds up there, uh, and that will be changing in terms of the amount of restaurants and retail they have up there. Where I get a little bit concerned is, is the winter pacing. And it's been to the office, small numbers. But Mountain Village up over fifty percent and good for them. And to be honest, Telluride, Town of Telluride will benefit too. Cause some of those fifty percent are going to come down and eat and shop. I get a little worried when I see the Town of Telluride down eighteen percent over the summer. When I see them down, uh, our town down or fif- fifteen percent over the summer, down eighteen percent over the winter. And that's why we're recommending, um, a little more marketing, just to make sure we nip that in the bud. Um, and to your point, Dan, maybe that's exactly what some people want. But the Main Street business owners I talk to, including my wife, feel that there are a little bit less people in traffic-sensitive businesses like retail. Maybe feel it a little bit more than, uh, the hotels or even the restaurants that can sell ours' twenty-seven dollar hamburger. Yep, sorry.
Let's go to Jesse and then Geneva. I'd love to hear some thoughts from you if you have any.
I'm in favor of increasing our budget for more Murphy and Telluride. I have, I'm also for the working, uh, population of Telluride, but, uh, there won't be a housing need if there are no jobs. Um, also I'm worried about rates going up because we are not filling beds. So we're seeing average daily rates go up because they still have the same overhead, whether there are people in every room or not. Um, so to also bring that number back down, I think we need to start getting some more bodies in here. We've seen through historical examples of when communities pull back on their marketing campaigns. And sometimes it takes years to recover and losses in the millions, if not billions. Um, we're at a pretty important point right now to ensure not just a healthy, social, vibrant local community, but a very sustainable economic community too. And I feel like I have friends that have had to ask for their rents to be deferred because they're not getting the same amount of tip money. I've had business owners approach me in grocery stores saying, what's going on? Is this a result of not marketing? So the, the, it's, maybe it was a little less busier on Main Street. But the sentiment that I'm hearing overwhelmingly is that people are hurting for the first time in a very, since COVID. But there was bail money during COVID. So businesses are struggling, employees are struggling. Um, and right now we need to step up and do what we can to get some more revenue generated in the Town of Telluride.
Geneva.
Um, thanks, everybody, for the great conversation. So I'm going to start by saying that I am open to increasing some spending for marketing. Um, I am a little, and I know that this can't be answered right now, but we've been talking a lot about apples and oranges and things that we can and can't compare. And when we're looking at Mountain Village lodging occupancy versus Town of Telluride occupancy, I do feel like we're comparing apples and oranges. Cause as we know, we have ma- many more short-term rentals that are not available every single night. Um, versus Mountain Village that has hotels that would love to be occupied every single night of the year. So hopefully this is more of just like a moving forward thing. Maybe we can work with the new tracking software to better drill down on occupancy per available night in a way that's easier to understand. Maybe you're already doing that and I just have a hard time, um, getting there. But, um, yeah, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, and I'm, I'm feeling better about spending some money on marketing. Um, I think initially, when we first started talking about the marketing discussion a few years ago, I was really perturbed that we were spending more money on marketing than affordable housing annually. And we have since really increased our revenues into the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, and also we're not seeing explosive growth annually. So I'm, to wrap it up, I'm interested in, um, hearing more what the rest of council thinks about which options to go on. But I'm generally open to spending some money on marketing and see how it rocks the boat, even though I, this is a really complex issue. And I have a hard time believing that one, one change is affecting everything, but I don't want to get caught flat-footed on, um, on these changing markets. So that's my input.
What if we were to take us, I mean, Jesse just stepped away for a second, but a straw poll as to which of these proposed budgets we felt.
Can I wait? One more statement because I, I did want to, I did want to say it because I think it is core to my stance on this. Uh, in that, uh, same as last year's discussion, it's, I, I feel that we're ignoring one major element of our community that in my mind should carry a list of a larger burden of this responsibility of marketing. And that's namely the ski company and the other major festivals. That if we step in and fill this gap, there will be no incentive for them to fulfill that need because we're doing it for them. We are subsidizing those businesses by increasing our marketing budget when that for a for-profit company in my mind should be their responsibility.
So I just want to speak really specifically to the incentivization argument. We, if we are trying to pull down our marketing spend in order to incentivize certain entities to market, we are doing so at the expense of our community and our businesses. Whether that's the intention or not, that is, we are playing, we are gambling with their ability to be sustainable and to have viable jobs and careers and businesses here. If we want to address the ski resort and their lack of marketing, we're not going to do that through incentivizing them. To be honest, we are going to have to have that very direct conversation. And we may have to go in other directions in order to obtain the funds that I think you're trying to get to. But it is not going to be, we are not going to pull back our marketing. And all of a sudden, the ski resort is going to step into that role. It just won't happen. And I, I just want to be able to say like, we have just to take that off of the table as an option because it's not, it's, it's not going to happen. I've, I've worked with the ski resort. I've worked in marketing and destination sales here for over two decades. That's not a risk that I'm willing to take. But if we want to pursue more equity in the spend, there are other avenues we can discuss. It's just not in terms of like what we're spending on marketing. That's all. Just in response.
Can I just comment? I mean, we, we would love all of our businesses to spend more on marketing. But to be fair to them, we don't want to overstate our importance. I can hardly think of a business that doesn't spend money on marketing, including the ski company. I mean, you look at what the lodgers spend, um, you flip through a daily planet, you see businesses marketing and promoting their businesses on a, on a daily basis. Um, our role is to kind of cover the whole community and to do it year-round. The festivals market and promote their weekend, um, but then are relatively silent the bulk of the year. So, uh, I, I don't want people to think we're the only ones marketing here. We coordinate with the ski company. We'd love for them to spend more. Um, but we do see a lot of our local businesses promoting their business as, as they should.
Absolutely. Not saying they didn't, but, uh, I'm, yeah, mostly I want to speak to the ski company that I feel like, again, referring to my point with affordable housing, they are shirking their responsibility a lot of the time. And this is another instance where we are picking up their slack.
Well, to Mian's point about the straw poll, I would say I am leaning towards option two, but can live with option three. I think trying to think back to twenty nineteen, when or before, when we started really wanting to pull dollars away from marketing or actually to just understand your finances and to change the structure, like all of the goals of that have been achieved in my mind in terms of understanding where money's going, more transparency, all of that, working more closely together. We have a dedicated funding stream for tourism that we have also restructured. And so I feel like we've met all of our goals. And so with that in mind, we should be now utilizing the dollars that we already have allocated into the industry that we have chosen. Granted, they are, there's opportunity for them to be spent in other places. Um, so I don't know. Initially I was option two, but I think now maybe you've convinced me of leaning into option three. Um, but I'd be curious to hear from others on where they're at with dollars.
Uh, I'm, um, in support of option three and can live and agree a hundred percent with what Adrian just said. We've met the mile markers. Um, we've improved our working relationship with Telluride Tourism Board. Thank you guys so much for um, meeting our list of demands and, and criticisms, uh, in a, in a productive way and maintaining a really good working relationship at the same time. We appreciate it. Um, so I'm all for option three and could live with option two.
From all the businesses I've talked to, I think we need to do something proactively to get more business here. To get our average daily rate lower. I believe we should go to option three. I can live with option two, but option three.
Lars, can I just get clarification from you on that one? How more tourists would lower the average daily rate?
More higher occupancy.
But more demand doesn't equate lower prices.
Supply and demand. So we have more supply, supply, which once our cap goes away, Dan, average daily rates should go down. But I think at the same time, we need to fund tourism to get people.
But I think at the same time, we need to fund tourism to get people here. And I think that's what you're unable to see.
At the expense of workers.
Geneva, can I get your opinion?
Let's go option three and see what happens.
Okay, and I. I, I think that we need to move forward with option three as well. Um, and then I look forward to kind of seeing how you feel like you're gonna allocate those funds. I mean, I'd still like to obviously see. The plan to address those low season occupancy points and then a. A sort of a five year plan, so how we are gonna kind of. Here that marketing to address gondola closures and the effects on the economy for that. Um, as far as a multi-year agreement. Is there anyone that does not feel that we should be moving forward in that sort of actual direction?
I think I, two feels right to me and I could live with three. I feel like tying the hands. Of future leadership more than that feels inappropriate. As me as an individual who has a specific term limit.
I'm, I'm okay with kinda doing like an MOU for a multi-year contract, but with the, you know, the stipulations that. You know, we have the right to pull back, you know, when we do our half year and full year recaps, you know, that. It still comes back to our discretion on whether or not we think, we think these tax dollars are being utilized to the best of their ability.
And I think staff work with Kevin to develop a contract that gives flexibility in a multi-year fashion.
Yeah, and we, as a recovering elected official, I, we appreciate that uh, our, our. Budget is subject to annual appropriation processes, but if we could have some kind of MOU in place. That goes to the spirit of a multi-year agreement, it would help us with our planning and that's one reason Kira put that calendar up of. A summer campaign starts well in advance of it. Um, but I don't mean to interrupt your discussion, but I just wanna make sure, you know, we understand. That that flexibility is, is mandated by the fact that you have this fiduciary duty and an annual appropriation process.
Perfect.
Thanks. Lars, do you have any thoughts?
I mean. I think it makes sense from a business standpoint to. To look at a couple of years down the road, because we're not gonna be able to see results. Granted, Adrian and I won't be able to see results at all, but. We don't be able to see results from what they've done for at least two years.
And that is, and that's my thought on it as well. I think three years. Is something I could live with, but. The effects of market, this isn't a faucet. We don't turn it on, we don't turn it off. It takes time to grow and build and for us to really have a good strategy. That's going to be effective for the community. We have to know that we can build that strategy. You know, truthfully. It's over, it's a ten year period. We need, I mean, I don't think anybody on council and myself included feel. Given the past, you know, the past relationship that that makes sense, but I'd like to see at least a three year. Commitment so that that way we can really adequately evaluate the work that's been done and the progress that's been made.
And I also think we, you know, we've, we've talked about the gondola being redone and the fact that it's gonna be closed, minimum eight months per lobe, up to a year. I've got clients that are like, we ju- I'm just not gonna come. When the gondola is closed, it's just too much of a headache and I think you're gonna see a dip in. People coming to this town. I think we have to be proactive in, in seeing that coming up. And try and mitigate the damage that will do to our, our economic base and our, our clients.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's sort of, you and Lars and I sit on the committee, so we get to have these conversations on a regular basis, but. If there's one thing that I think is the most looming challenge this town, this destination is going to have, it's going to be that very necessary closure. And how we are gonna make sure that the people that live here and work here are able to survive that. And the only way we can do that is as a government. Putting the processes in place to be able to ensure that we can kind of float as best we can through that difficult time. Geneva, do you have any? Thoughts? As far as the, the length of the contract?
I feel like it's a tricky one. Um. I like the idea of just having a more flexible, um. The whole point of, of changing the structure was so that we could uh, evaluate this on a rolling basis. And so I'm a little hesitant to wanna commit to. You know, a higher national marketing strategy spend for three years or something like that, which I'm sure would make. Um, everybody on Kira's team more comfortable that they knew they could count on the cash, but I think that um. Putting some flexibility in the contract, like what was mentioned earlier, I would be comfortable with that and some sort of like ongoing MOU. I feel really good about the communication that we've had with the tourism board. I do feel like. It's a little tough to understand, you know, Mountain Village has been very excited about marketing themselves. Independently, and now we're talking about destination marketing together again, but we're not speaking with them about it. We're just. Talking to the tourism board about it, so it's, it's a complex issue um, with. How we relate with marketing to them. Um, and. Well, I think that shouldn't just. That conversation shouldn't just go offline. I think that that still needs to be a central part of our negotiations about what the plan is. Um, moving forward. Um, and again, just voicing my request to. As we move forward and with um, the possibility of this, large possibility of this cap going away. Uh, that on STRs in Telluride that we. Have some sort of metric that measures how many room nights are available for the year for our municipality versus Mountain Village. So that we can kind of compare those um, occupancy levels in a more even way.
I think we can get there with, and I think that that's probably gonna be very important over the next few years. Obviously, as hotels come online. These percentages are not gonna reflect adequately, so I think if we can get a little bit more granularity when we start talking about. Occupancy as to unit type and quantities versus percentage of the whole, because it has actually been real. One of the benefits of this, the short term rental cap is that we have had a static number of units, so we are comparing percentage to percentage. All the way along. Um, that's not gonna be the case moving forward next year. That's not gonna be the case moving forward in years to come. Because of the hotel builds that are going up at Mountain Village, so I think if we can get a little more gran- more granular for anybody. That wants that information as far as like unit numbers, I think that, and I think that's an easy. That's just keeping the numbers a little bit more raw if requested.
Sure. And I, I just, I'm concerned that, you know, we released the cap, we get. A bunch of new licenses in that are available for one week a year and all of a sudden our occupancy percentage looks like it went down. But it's not really affecting us in that uh, negative way. And so that's just my, my main thing is, you know, we're, we're comparing occupancy to Mountain Village and we wanna make sure that. What we're looking at is more relatable. Sorry if I'm repeating myself. I'm just trying to make sure that I get my point across. Thanks.
I understand. I think Zoe, Zoe.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you. I, I think from, oh, Kevin. I'm sorry.
Alright, oh, sorry, can you unmute Greg?
Yes, would you like three minutes?
Yes, please.
Hi, Council, thanks. I'll be super brief here. Um, I strongly. Support um, the marketing option that you are leaning towards of option three, just in terms of council person and writes comments about sentiment. Versus actual data. You know, I have an STR, it's a pretty nice unit, right smack in the middle of town and um. Hard numbers. I am personally down thirty percent this year, so that's thirty percent less people that are dining in the restaurants around me. So that's some hard data. I think also, like in the context of the entire budget and the marketing. Um, discussion, we have to keep in mind, we've been really lucky despite interest rates by the Federal Reserve. Um, going way, way up. Um, and other things that there are, there are potential economic headwinds. Um, so I think it's basically the rule is invest into the downturn somewhat um. On marketing because more than just our local impacts, the gondola and everything else, um. We could really see some economic headwinds. I wanted to speak also to. Councilperson Jeanette some other concerns about occupancy numbers, having. Kara will verify this, learned with intimate detail how occupancy calculations work. They are um, calculations of a percentage of available nights. So if I take my unit out of the rental pool for. Four weeks because, you know, I'm gonna be using it or it's gonna be repaired or something like that, that comes out of the available nights. So occupancy is a pretty accurate reflection of um. A percentage of the available nights. Um, and I would also note in terms of ADRs, if you look other than. By week by week during twenty twenty-three, other than the big weeks, Film Fest, Christmas, New Years. Um, and one or two other weeks, ADRs are generally headed in a downward direction and some weeks uh. Quite a bit down. So that's my comment. I hope you'll support um, marketing and support over a few years. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. Kevin, may you add a comment?
Yeah, I just, I, I needed a little more direction on what we're looking at in terms of the term of a contract, and I'm not opposed to having it directly in the contract. As has been mentioned, it's not just a prerogative that it would be subject to annual appropriations, a requirement to car a law. So that provision will be in the contract no matter what. Uh, the question is, I, I just don't know right now whether you wanna have it two years or three years. I didn't hear a clear direction on that.
Jesse says three, Lars says three, Geneva? Three? Adrian?
I can live with it.
I vote for one year. Thank you.
A three and three, what? Opting three for three years, got it. Uh, we'll be coming back with something for your consideration before the end of the calendar year.
I think from staff standpoint, in the finance realm, obviously, we've got better direction now of uh. What to plug in the twenty-four budget, uh, based on this conversation. I think it goes without saying, working with TTB staff that. Wanna revisit how things went in the current campaign, what we might wanna uh, tweak even in that. Kind of uh, well, the eight seventy, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand we spent this year. Um, what do we wanna uh, modify for next year? And again, looking at, how's the international campaign going versus uh. Flex towards more domestic advertising. I mean, there, there's a lot of conversation to have there to, to refine what that program looks like, I'm sure.
Yeah, staff work.
And also, I don't mean to reopen any discussion, but for example, in that budget, you, um, the town of Tyra is very innovative in our view. Initiated at this grant program. Uh, do you wanna continue that? Do you wanna discontinue it? Do you wanna scale it up? Uh, we look for your direction and would support wherever you go, obviously.
So I think we've got great direction from the conversation. Thank you, Council.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Uh, we are. We will be. We will be back at twelve forty for uh, work session two A. Welcome back to the Thursday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, um, Council Budget Meeting. It is twelve forty-one. We will now move on to work session two A, short term rental policy discussion with Tiffany Kavanaugh. Carson Bryant and Brian Daphne from EPS.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. So this is your fourth work session, uh, discussing short term rentals. And your last work session before we anticipate a red line and first reading of an ordinance to be brought to you at the next council meeting on October third. The packet for that council meeting will go out next Wednesday, September twenty-seventh. With the red line for the community to view before that meeting. Um, just a little background, there were several community meetings held, several surveys that went out and the staff memo included in the packet includes. Some references to the survey data on uh, kind of where we got where we are today. I'm not gonna go over the brief history that I included in the staff memo as far as policy goes for short term rentals, but that was included in your packet. Just for reference, because we really hadn't discussed uh, past policy from the nineteen eighties to, to current, so I didn't wanna provide a little background on that. Um, from. The last work session, we did receive some great direction from Council on where to move forward and kind of the direction that we're going with those red lines. Um, different categories that we'll go over and things like that. Um, the one thing I did wanna cover before we get into the chart, which is where I'm gonna spend most of my time. Reviewing um, is just to go over the, the pricing structure in the past. So in the packet, you'll see that really from the year two thousand to two thousand ten. There weren't really a lot of changes to the pricing structure for short term rental licenses. There were from two thousand ten to two thousand ten, or two thousand from two thousand ten, a separate category of fee structure. For those accommodations in the residential zone at fifty percent of the cost of the other licenses. And then in twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-one, it pretty much stayed the same, whereas in twenty-ten, there were some significant changes brought forward. That removed that separate fifty percent fee for those units in the residential zone. And then just made the, the units um, the same price across the board. Um, Council did say in the last work session that one of the categories that you'd like to see is those owner occupied licenses. So you'll see in the suggestions from staff that we kind of structured that pricing similar to what it was back in. Two thousand for those units in the residential zone, just suggesting that those be at fifty percent. I'm just going off of the, the history there. And then in twenty-twenty-one, we all know that pretty significant changes were made. And again, that history is in the staff memo. I wanna make sure to leave plenty of time for EPS to review the regulatory fee, so I'm, I'm gonna jump just right into. The council direction from the last meeting. Um, Ashley, if you could pull up that chart for me, that would be great. So this is also in the packet, but um, we're gonna share it for everyone on Zoom. Thank you. So from the last council meeting, the direction that we received was um, for basically data collection purposes moving forward. Council would like to see several different categories of licenses, so we broke it down. And into those categories suggesting that we're calling the full STR license, the classic license. So we would essentially have a classic license in the residential zone, a classic license not in the residential zone. And then those owner occupied licenses in the residential zone and not in the residential zone. Cause again, owner occupied can occur in any zone district. And then those midterm, long term, and then just a lodging license. The lodging license. Um, as a reminder, is defined as any hotel, motel, boarding house, rooming house or lodge owned by a single entity. So we're not talking condo hotels and having an onsite lobby. So right now we have seven licenses that are considered lodging establishments. Those midterm licenses would be strictly for data collection and we would need to establish a new definition and I'm gonna code for that. But it would essentially be any rentals over twenty-nine days but under six months. And then the long term would be rentals over six months or more. So those are the categories that staff established for those license types based on the direction. And then the definitions we would still need to work on for those new categories uh, be- before we bring you that red line at the next council meeting. But one thing that I'd like to point out is for lodging, there was um, discussion before about how we capture those fractional ownership licenses. Right now, those are sometimes counted twice in our licensing data. Um, if the fractional owner wants to rent out their portion, we require that they get a separate license. So sometimes those are double counted. So staff is suggesting that we just add those fractional ownership units to the definition of lodging. And then that would only require the one license and not the double licensing. So that is one thing that we're suggesting there. Moving on to rental night limitations. Of course, the residential zone district would still have those um, current restrictions that we have right now, which is. No more than three short term, no more than three long term for cumulative of the short term of twenty-nine days. So that would um, hold true for both owner occupied as well as the classic. And then not in the residential zone. Oh, we had discussed what's appropriate for limiting the, the nights. I think Geneva had mentioned trying to. Structure that similar to the um, de-restricted guidelines at a hundred and twenty days, and so that's where we got the hundred and twenty days. So staff would need to monitor the occupancy and bookings for that, if that's something that council wants to keep it at a hundred and twenty nights. Per year. And then if someone were to go over the hundred and twenty nights, having that owner occupied license. It wouldn't be a penalty as far as a fine. It would just be, okay, now you need to pay the difference and get a full classic license. it wouldn't be a penalty as far as a fine. It would just be, okay, now you need to pay the difference and get a full classic license if you're going to be renting more than the hundred and twenty days per year. The fee structure, we're suggesting keeping pretty much the same, except Council was in favor of adding an admin fee to the business licensing fees to cover admin costs as well as the new software. And so I'd like to talk about a little bit how I calculated the admin fee came to two hundred and eighty-eight dollars a license, which would cover staff time and clerks, legal, marshals, as well as finance departments. I asked all of the employees to just give me an estimate of the percentage of their time that they have allocated specifically towards short-term rentals in the past year or so, and it ranged from five to ten percent of their total time. So I took that percentage of their total annual salary, including benefits, and that's where that calculation came in. Then we add sixty thousand dollars for software that will actually allow us to have these separate categories, track occupancy, which we can't do right now through Muni Revs. It's much more enhanced and has greater auditing capabilities. And then adding a full-time employee as well to that's specifically dedicated to short-term rental compliance monitoring, licensing, tax. So that's where that calculation total came in. And then we took the total number of licenses we have now, and then those that we know are on the waitlist that do want a short-term rental license, and then just divided that by the total. So it's two hundred and forty thousand divided by the eight thirty-five. That's where I got the two eighty-eight. And we know that there are people that are not on the waitlist that will apply for a license. We've talked to several people that are like, what's the point of applying for the waitlist? I know I'm not going to get a license. So I think that number will go up, but because that's the hard data that I have, that's what I used. So any questions on that two eighty-eight fee? Okay, so then for the the structure going forward for business licensing fees, the only category that we're not suggesting adding that admin fee to is to lodging. I don't feel that the standard hotels have the same impact on staff time and Marshals Department that the other just regular classic and owner-occupied would have. So the suggestion is to not add that to the lodging category and only have the current fee structure, which for lodging, that is one hundred and thirty dollars per sleeping room. The other categories currently are three hundred and thirty dollars plus forty-four dollars per sleeping room. So we've been using the two-bedroom example through EPS's presentation. So that would be four hundred and eighteen dollars for a two-bedroom, plus the two eighty-eight is what we're suggesting moving forward. And then you'll see a column where the S excise tax would or would not apply. It cannot apply to those midterm or long-term licenses. We cannot charge taxes on those. Lodging also does not pay that two and a half percent. And so it would just be those four categories of the classic and then the owner-occupied. The last column, and I think this is where we may garner more discussion, is Council was interested in limiting the ownership interest for short-term rental licenses per person. And so they just need a little direction on if you would like to move forward with that. And if so, which categories do you want to see that in? Knowing that that classic non-residential zone, those are those condo hotels that are kind of set up to act as hotels for us. So does it make sense to limit the owners to those? And then I did include some data just from two thousand and twenty-one. This hasn't been updated, but just on, you know, there's been discussion on how many multi-owners or how many owners do we have that have multiple units? You can see at the time, the majority, six hundred and ninety-eight, had only one STR. There were sixty-two people with two short-term rental licenses. And then really, there's like thirteen that had more than three and eleven or more. And those are, there's a great point made by Greg Craig recently that a lot of those are in the mountainside inn. And so those units are restricted to short-term rentals. So then the only other feedback that I would like from Council for first reading is I included an example of a self-inspection checklist in the packet. When we reached out to peer communities to discuss the designated positions that they have, a lot of these communities, Breckenridge, Mount Crestview, Aspen, over the past few years, they have moved to dedicated positions for short-term rentals. Many of them said that they require an inspection on every single unit. We don't have the staff to do that. Our building department is currently short-staffed and has historically been short-staffed. And so we discussed with Aspen what they do because they also don't have the staff to do inspections on every single unit. And so the example that I gave was their self-inspection checklist. We do receive complaints from visitors on just sometimes on the condition of a unit. So having some type of checklist like that on hand, I think, might be comforting for the town to know that, well, we do have this. And when they got their license, they did say that at least they have these basic things. So that's something that I'd also like feedback on from Council. That's really it. I don't know where you want to start.
I don't know why we have owner-occupied not residential zone. Why not just have them get a classic STR license? If they're not going to be there for a hundred and twenty days, they're not local. I mean, it's not owner-occupied. I mean, I think owner-occupied, I mean, like maybe sixty days, but still, that's it. Why not just let them have a STR license and they can do whatever they want for their zoning area?
I don't disagree, but I think just to sit why, when I was looking at it, because I had the same thought, why somebody would is just the lower fees. And yeah.
That doesn't benefit us. And it's it's harder to administrate. Why not just make it a classic? That way, it's all bundled in the same thing. It's easier for tip on the clerk's part.
Do you feel like with the the new software that there will be a notable difference if we eliminated that and made those classic licenses?
I agree with Lars that administratively, anytime we have to try to track nights for a certain license, it's it's very difficult. Our new software will track occupancy, but there's always going to be some mistakes or errors in that calculation. Like, what if our there were nights that were canceled that are still showing up on that as booked? Then, you know, a staff member would still have to reach out and get an explanation of, okay, well, we're showing that you rented for a hundred and thirty nights, but you're saying this, so prove it. So yeah, administratively, anytime you check nights like that, it's not always super accurate, and it's it's very time-consuming.
I mean, I feel like the counter to that is that there's a lot, like, the highest density of our community is in the accommodations district. So a lot of locals live in.
We can have a regular STR license. We're not restricting them from renting. But four months out of the year? Okay, hey, I'll just go away for the winter and I just like, just make them have a regular license.
Well, or less.
So then if it was less nights per year that they were able to rent, would that?
No, I just, why not just make it a regular license? What are we talking about?
Then why have, so I feel like then there's not parity between all locals. So either we have an owner-occupied or we don't.
No, but owner-occupied in the residential zone is specifically defined as three rentals within lower than twenty-nine nights. That's specific, and that sounds like something that an owner-occupied person could do, right?
But that's the same as the classic in the residential zone.
Yeah, so I would be in favor of instead of eliminating the owner-occupied, not residential, is making it a multiple, like, three short-term rental total, not a night situation, or or having it near the residential district.
That's what I said. Get rid of the not-in-residential-zone owner-occupied.
No, no.
Have them get a regular SD on it.
That's not what I'm saying.
What are you saying?
I'm saying all owner-occupied units adhere to the residential zone district regulation. So either three short-term rentals, no more of twenty-nine nights. Is that?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I mean, I'm fine with that.
Because they're getting way less on fees. So to your point, if they want to leave for four months out of the year, they should get a classic license.
Exactly. I think that's
Great.
We're we're agreed, really.
And I think from my perspective, just having sat through the open houses and stakeholder meetings, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, team, but it seemed like this was one of those elements trying to reflect comments from locals looking for, you know, not incentives exactly, but some some break in costs, some, you know, more extended flexibility again, so that there can be a little bit more revenue generated by locals. I think that's where it stemmed from. Doesn't mean these aren't good comments.
Regular license if they're in the
I think
zone, then why?
But I think that that's going to depend on what the the ultimate fee structure is. I mean, the owner-occupied license category is, it's for the people that leave for Bluegrass. They leave for Christmas. They leave at Film Festival. They just, it's a little bit of a cash.
A reduced rate.
But then we're forcing them to maybe rent it more than, or not be able to rent it because it's not going to make sense from a financial perspective because the fees are going to outweigh the revenue that they would ultimately get.
Well, this can also be, I mean, we'll be talking regulatory fees next year. We can make adjustments on that front, too.
What do you think it should be? Sorry, I'm not tracking.
I mean, I think it should be the way it's reflected on the chart. I think
I'm fine with that, just to be clear.
I think, and then the only thing, other thing that I, I'd like us to figure out how to address is just the lack of tax revenue that comes from, well, two, actually, I have two points. The lack of tax revenue on the like, the midterm, long-term, and lodging units. If we obviously can't pass a tax because we need it to be voted on, and that can't happen in the next you know, I don't know if that's something that we can reflect in fees as well. And then to the long-term point, also, I don't think that this is actually kind of getting to what the actual question was, and maybe it's just to complicate it a little bit further. Maybe we need two different types of long-term license classifications because we were looking really to be able to see who is living in long-term rentals and working within the community. And then there are plenty of people that come in and live here for a year, and they would be categorized as a long-term rental, but they're working without, like, outside of the community. And so I think that I just don't know that we're getting the information that we were looking to get if we just leave it this way, but.
I want us to be careful with the number of barriers we put up for renting long-term. I think that there's so so
I agree.
Okay, you were shaking your head. I couldn't tell. Yeah, so that I, yes, I want more data, but I also want us to acknowledge that the more complicated we make it for a free-market unit to rent long-term, the less likely they are to do it.
Well, this is, I mean, it's here anyway. So no matter what, they're recommending a long-term rental license.
Sure, but I want it to be one page. Your name, your address. I am renting for this period of time. And I would prefer, I would like to have both like a in-person paper that you could pick up from the clerk's office as well as an online form, some verification, so we know that it's not being flooded or these are authentic, actually happening. That I I don't have a suggestion for. We'd have to figure that out, but I I don't want to make that complex.
So you don't, and you don't want there to be any sort of like data collection or differential between like my sister coming in from New York renting for a year and somebody that's that's renting for a year and working at Brown Dog.
I mean, that feels really intrusive.
I like Well, I think it was just, I mean, I think
We don't even do that for our own rentals. We're asking now who their employer is more for a data point, not as a like a requirement of rental.
Well, I guess that's my plan, is that we are not going to be able to know if they're working in the community or if they're working outside of the community. I think my understanding from those meetings was that what everybody wanted to see was who, like, what the effect on long-term housing was for the people that were living there.
I mean, for me, the midterm, long-term feels like, start now, see if we can get some licenses. One of my questions was going to be, what happens if someone doesn't have a license? Are they automatically circled back to our municipal code? Like, will there be some fine associated with it and and making sure that we have that base covered? That feels like a next year after, let's see how many we got and assess at that point. But maybe I'm wrong. It's like, we're muddying the waters with something else that would be great to know while we're trying to regulate a thing that we've been getting a lot of information about.
That was just right.
But my question still stands about the municipal code, and if someone doesn't get a long-term license now that we say that we have them, and they rent long-term, what happens to them?
Yeah, I think that I'm going to meet with Attorney Geiger tomorrow to come kind of hash out some of the stuff. But these two categories are the two concerns as far as collecting data goes that I have, just because right now with short-term rentals, you have data mining programs, like the short-term rental system that we have, scans websites for short-term rental ads. We don't necessarily have that same level of advertising and public transparency for midterm and long-term licenses. So while we can add it to our municipal code and say, hey, you're required to do this, now we have a great communications department, doesn't mean that we're going to be capturing great data for it because I don't think that everyone is going to do it, whether we put it in our municipal code or not. Additionally, it is going to require quite a bit of administrative time, and we're not charging fees for those. So those are just considerations as well. I know we want the data, but to me, it almost seems like is it an optional thing, or do we put it in our municipal code and require it? Knowing that there's no way for us to really check compliance on it because we don't have the software and capability to like scan all the long-term ads because they're just not out there like short-term rentals are.
So that sounds like we should just
Well, I kind of disagree, actually, pretty strongly, because I think, I think most of our, I mean, midterm to me feels a little bit easier. Yes, to be totally honest, it's not, those are really, those are rentals that are coming through property management companies, right?
I agree with that.
Coming in, they're coming in from outside of the country. They're staying here for winter. Like, that's, to me, from my experience and what I do, that feels like an easy data point to capture. Because I think those licenses are there and we work with professionals that manage that. The long-term thing might be a little loose, you know, and but I think that that's the one thing that we've heard from a lot of people in our community is that they want to be able to see the effects on long-term housing. So.
There may even be ways to incentivize, I don't know what those are yet, but, you know, we could look at kind of the carrot versus stick route for those long-term rental licenses and really encourage people to to step up, make sure they register that, whether it's in municipal code or not, it might take a carrot to do that.
And maybe that's where it's the incentivization for long-term rentals for locals. So whether it's discounting on water bills, whatever, it could end up being whatever we feel like might be.
To track it with parking permits because parking permits, you have to show where you live, whether you rent or own, and have to have some proof that you pay. Didn't we kind of stop using those, though? All over town has parking permits. Oh, I don't have to go get G thing to park it, put it on my house anymore. I do.
Oh, you're registering your license, but it's not a hang tag.
One second.
Um, oh. Uh, I was just going to say, I think that I agree with what everybody's saying. I think we should provide an opportunity for people who are long-term renting to let us know about that. I think a lot of people who do that are proud to do that. And so I think that they will be willing to, you know, speak up and say, I'm doing this and here's some information. I don't think we should have penalties or anything like that associated, but I do think we should at least start making a mechanism to gathering that information. And as for the midterm rentals, I think that those are, you know, intimately tied to all of the economic discussions and occupancy discussions that we've been having. So even though they, the spend is at a different rate, I think that we should create licenses for that. And like me and said, we're working with professional management companies who are pros at this and working with our clerk's department already.
As you get new software, I mean, it's best just to put it all in there, build it out to, you know, how we want it, and then to start from there. So, yeah, absolutely.
I have a quick question. Let's say somebody owns a second or a third home here, but they rent out the big house year-round and to a different person rent out like an EDU or an ADU or something like that. So they have to get two licenses?
Yes.
Um, I, yeah, I'm in favor of having both of them as a license. For the midterm, I I feel like there's a strong
For the midterm, I, I feel like there's a strong justification to have some sort of fee associated with it, like those people that are renting that. They're doing it for their own reasons and they're also generating a lot of rent, revenue. Uh, anyway, I, I don't know why. We don't have a fee, to your point that it's. More like an S T R than a long-term.
So I tried to tie like the admin fee, for example, tie it to actual data, I don't have data really to tie a. A business license or admin fee to for midterm right now, so that's why I didn't suggest anything. Um, I don't know if Attorney Geiger has any input on like what we could, what we can and can't do, but.
Yeah, I think, I think you're hitting on it, the problem is you don't right now regulate or require compliance with any of the standards for thirty days or more. So we don't have data on how much staff time is devoted to it. So in terms of fees, I think that's, that's a more problematic discussion of how you calculate that fee.
So next.
I kind of love the idea of being able to put this to rest for the community a little bit. I think a lot of the short-term, I thought a lot of the midterm rentals. Are already getting business licenses and maybe somebody from that lodging community can speak to that during public comment, um, but. I mean, I think my concern with midterm rentals more than anything else is losing the two point nine percent excise tax, and if there's a mechanism this year to deal with that. And if not, then that's just something that we need to be able to do, man it, to address next year.
Yeah, I can, I can address that, the, the terms of the ballot question were quite clear, you're picking up. Short-term rentals that are defined both under Colorado law and local regulations as twenty-nine days or less, so that tax measure is. It's not set in stone, but it's voter approved, it's the limitation that, that's there right now. You can certainly propose different tax classifications in the future.
Um.
That, yeah.
It's a taper, it's a taper matter.
It's just, it's just housing funds that we're losing.
Business license fees, we could certainly. Add a, require a business license fee for a midterm rental.
Stop saying we can't do that though.
The calculation's problematic because we don't have data on how much staff time is required to enforce.
Adrian's.
Follow up on midterms.
I think with this is something we just need to set and see how it works and then address when we've got a little bit more data.
I'm just going to chime in, I do not think that the people who are renting long-term to locals, like I think a lot of them are old, tired locals and they like to fly under the radar and. Are fairly private people, like. Pretty much every single person I know that rents to a local never participated in that, you know, program that. Butcher Bro, Baker did, which was a great program, but people just felt uncomfortable trying to cut a line because they rent to a local like. I, and I think we're be, we're becoming more invasive into people's lives and some people just want to. Rent long-term or not rent at all, and I understand the concept of gathering da- data, but. I think that an unintended consequence is going to be. Creating a little bit of an uprising in a community that is generally very quiet here.
I don't think I'll sign up, I rent to locals.
Yeah, like I, I think we need to be realistic.
Right, you don't have to, but we, we have the mechanism in the future to collect a little bit and there's an opportunity for education to change that.
What do you mean collect a little bit, not collecting anything?
Information.
People sign up for.
If we create a long-term license, some people will say, I rent long-term and we're starting the process of understanding how many units we have.
We're just saying collecting data.
Yeah, not money, yeah, just. So we have a, a better context for the conversation, that's a, it's been a key. Data point that's been staying in the conversation, I think moving forward, it just allows us to make more informed decisions.
Yeah, I, I think it's, personally, I, I think it's going to be. Uh, an important lever to, to be able to pull here just to track that data. Um, as we know that incentivizing long-term rentals is a goal of, of this council in the community and, and we've got to find more tools to. Help benefit those long-term renters for sure, and I think the, the data side of it's a, a good one.
So keep the two classifications, no fee, no penalty if don't, if they don't comply. Okay, and it's required, but it's no fee, no penalty. Okay.
Can I just ask the question, we've asked it a couple of times here, but going. Not to, uh, to string the midterm. Conversation or the license out longer, but there's most certainly staff time that will be spent on midterm. Administration of midterm rentals. Um, and, and I guess I questioned a little bit of, just because we don't know the exact number. Does that not mean we might start with it in extremely low number that is? You know, at least pragmatic in its nature. Um, because I do worry about. The fact that we will be spending administrative money and time on midterms. But to say we're going to charge zero just because we don't have exact data, I just want to kind of. Bring that back around.
I mean, there will absolutely be staff time dedicated to that, I just don't know what that is, so I wasn't comfortable making that calculation without having the data to back it up.
You could always do it in a year.
But yes, there will absolutely be administrative staff time. Required for this.
I mean, I think a back of the napkin calculation could be if we're talking. Up to twenty-nine days for a short-term rental and up to six months, so you could do one-sixth of the, the fee for midterm to long-term as a starting point. That seems fairly logical in my mind.
I just don't even have a number of how many there are or anything, you know.
What's wrong with addressing it next year?
Right, why, wait a year when you have the.
We do fees for every budget period.
Because staff is going to be spending their limited time with stressed resources and they should.
That's also the, um, why we're suggesting a full-time position as well and, and budgeting for that because. We do need a dedicated person to be looking at this, clerks don't have the bandwidth to, to keep it in our department a hundred percent, just on top of all of our other duties, so that's something that. We can just calculate and analyze better going forward.
Okay.
So we feel good with that?
So keep it at the no fee, no penalty. And we'll collect the data, and I think when, when someone is working on this subcategory or the two subcategories, they should probably log their time.
Sure.
Yeah, then we'll, we'll have that data. Okay.
Okay. Do we want to start talking about regulatory fees now?
Um, I think we still need to pay back on the ownership interest piece, so we still do have the requirement in the municipal code for the data collection. That does not go away when two D sunsets, because that was a separate ordinance that. Was passed, so that would stay, and so we are still collecting the ownership interest data for every. New S T R license or when the one-time exception occurs. And then we're still collecting a form on an annual basis, um, from every. For every license, whether or not that, that ownership interest has changed, so that's, I think, a, a larger discussion is how do we want to move forward with. Limiting the number of S T R licenses. If at all.
Be first.
Just you first this time, I'll start with, I'll start with the corners, so.
I, um. Just for a quick recap, Tiff, how many people are on the waiting list for a short-term rental list after two years of putting a cap?
Sixty-six.
So we were at seven seventy-five before. Or se- se- yeah. Eight thirty-five, I wrote eight thirty-five down earlier for.
Seven, I think it's on page one sixteen of the packet. Seven sixty-nine.
I do it differently than you guys, I download the whole.
Seven sixty-nine.
Yeah. Sixty-six on the waitlist, giving you a total of eight thirty-five. Page one sixteen of the packet.
Um, you know, this is always such a loaded question, but. Knowing what we know after these past two years and then also with this short-term rental impact study. Um, I don't think that there should be a cap on the short-term rentals, we saw that only four of these units waiting for S T R licenses. But people in housing for long-term, and I think the longest was a six-month. Lease, is that correct?
Wait, we're asking about limiting the number of units that people have.
Oh, I think my cat. I was like, oh my god, you're like sweating, um, I'm, there's such a small number of, of those, I don't, I don't think that it's even worth discussing.
I think we should continue to limit the number of units, the number of licenses that. An entity can have, I don't think we need to do anything with the people that already own units, um, and own multiple units, because they. Because they've already, they've, that's already been done, but I think moving forward, I'd like, would like to see. A limit to the number of S T R licenses that any one person can have financial interest in.
And how do you feel about the number two versus any other number, I think two is what Tiffany's got. Out there, from what we heard in the last conversation, maximum of two.
I think we could try to, I feel like that might be a little bit low from my perspective, but I think. Two would be fine.
I can live with two.
We ain't going with it.
I don't, I agree with Jesse, I don't have a big deal with it because it's just so, so limited. Uh, people that have multiple. And like I said in the last conversation, or a couple of weeks ago, I just think in our current economic environment. I just don't think you're going to see people doing it. That's just me.
Geneva.
I think two's good, and I think that we received in the surveys and previous work sessions and stuff of, uh. Desire from the public to have a limit, and if it's, you know, if. I think, yeah, that's it, that's all I need to say, thanks.
Okay.
Max of two. But future only.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, uh, we're going to have to come up with some specialized language on that, because if you think about it, a license is only for one-year term anyway. So each renewal is really a new license, so it's not going to be a, when a person gets a new license, it's going to have to be for an owner who doesn't currently own. A unit that has an S T R or has not had. Or has had, excuse me, an S T R license. So we'll have to craft it, I will want to sit down with Tiffany and talk about how we're going to. Pick that up because it's a really. Certain, it's a, it's a, it's a specialized niche.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Kevin, I assume we're going to, we'll have to also include language to capture both individual and corporate ownership.
Yeah, and we can do that, and we know how to do that now, where you, you drill down into the corporate entity and you see who the benefited parties are in each corporate entity, so that's not a problem.
You know, just to make sure we have clarity, this is, we had it, um, both as a, in both classic groups and residential and non-residential. Non-residential does include the condo hotels as well.
And then to Geneva's point, um, I did include just a little data in there from our surveys and on that particular question on limit S T Rs owned by a single owner. Fifty-nine percent people responded, yes, they were in favor of that. Okay, so I think we have really clear direction on that, the last piece, um, that I was hoping to get some feedback on is whether or not you want that self-inspection checklist. As a requirement for every unit, Geneva says yes.
Was it just an affidavit or are you requiring like a notary or something, sorry?
No, um, not a notary on that one.
I mean, if we have the staff time, I would prefer that we did the inspection, but you don't, I can live with self-inspection.
Yeah, I don't think we do have the staff time for that.
I trust you and I believe you a hundred percent.
I, I think some communities have gone to, um. Or more along the lines of, um, random, random checks to kind of keep everyone. On notice a little bit, um, you're, you're not even attempting to hit a, a high percentage, but again, much like. Drug testing for C D Ls, it's, it's random in nature and, uh, and it keeps people on their toes a bit more, that's something we could, we could kick around internally. Uh, particularly with this new code enforcement officer, um, that we're proposing. So that's just another idea.
Those questions will also be some code-based, like. Fire extinguisher in the kitchen. Smoke detector and outside all that and all that stuff.
Yeah, they would be primarily safety, safety-based, yeah.
Don't you have to get that stuff for your certificate of occupancy anyways?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but some of these units.
Uh, some of them was like thirty years ago, they received that, you know, so what condition are they in now?
Right.
Colorado law does require the carbon dioxide and the smoke detectors now for any rental property.
Is there any chance with the new code enforcement officer positioned to loop in random enforcement checks on something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think just, uh, off the top of my head, I think that that could be a, a good. Um, parallel duty that probably meet the skill sets of who would be hiring for that kind of job, so yeah, I think that could be a, a new idea.
So if we're going to do that, you don't have a constitutional, or you'd be violating a constitutional right. If you don't have that somehow specified, I think what you need to do is call out that it's not just self-affirmation, but it could be a random. Check by the building department, and they consent to that. Okay.
Great.
So it's not mandatory, it's, it would be random and we'll just decide how many a year.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I have everything I need, thank you, I'd like to pass it off to Brian and Carson for the regulatory fee and make sure that they have plenty of time to cover that.
Thank you, can you hear us okay?
I just have to say before we move on that I feel like if we do the random check, like there's people visiting here or that's owner occupied and. Or that the cops are going to show up at somebody's door and knock on the door and.
Well, I think we would plan it and make sure they're all noted.
Some notice, I mean, because.
For sure.
To be really clear, I mean, like privacy and vacation and respecting people's time and like, that's important.
We don't want to be disruptive.
Right, I don't think you want to do it when the unit's occupied.
I'm not really for this random thing at all, but like, I, I'm outnumbered here, so.
I, I think, I think we specify that they would arrange a date.
Go through everything and then let public comment be at the end, please.
I think we would specify that there, if, we don't want it to be, we don't want to be in there when a tenant's in there, there's all sorts of liability that could happen.
We would have to.
Then someone accuses someone of stealing something, you want to have it as an inspection when the unit is not occupied, so you come. With the owner and you say, what's a mutually agreeable time in the next two to four weeks to take a look at your units? We'll figure that out.
Week, weeks, not hours, yeah.
Can move on to regulatory fees and then we'll take public comment at the end.
Okay, thank you. Um, Brian Duffin, a principal with EPS, Carson Bryant, associate with EPS, we've, thanks for having us back. So we have, we have the draft results of the regulatory fee study to present to you. Um, we're going to roll through this, um, fairly quickly, um, and take questions at the end, um. Good, couple of remarks to preface this, so we were hired, we were hired by the town to work with staff on developing policy options for S T Rs. Um, our role in this is to provide you with information to make informed decisions to set policy. Our role is not to advocate for a particular tool or a particular policy, that's, that's your job as, as town council. Um, we try to be objective in our work and we, we stand be, and we stand behind it. All right, first slide, um, so this is the current, the current, um, conditions, uh, the town, you, you know all this, kind of been discussing this for the last half hour or so. Um, annual fee of three hundred and thirty dollars plus forty-four per bedroom, uh, for licensing. Um, and, um, under, uh, under a men, uh, referendum to D, uh, half of that revenue. Um, goes into the for, the affordable housing fund, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. Um, current fees are, are largely for licensing and, and administration. So what are the regulatory fee, um, I want to, I want to caveat, uh, Carson and I are not lawyers, cannot practice law or give legal advice, we're just going to tell you a little bit about the. Some of the definitions of, of taxes and fees on how it relates to this work. Um, we have, that's what we have attorney guide her for if we, if we, if we need him. Um, so we're talking about a regulatory fee, um, which is, which is very different than a tax. Um, taxes in Colorado have to be voter-approved, um, they are, they can be used for raising general revenues, they can be spent on a wide range. Of activities or capital projects, um, unless they're restricted by the ballot language that approves the tax. Um, a regulatory fee is different, uh, regulatory fees can be passed by ordinance, they don't require a vote. Um, they can, they are used to defray the direct and indirect costs of regulating an activity under a comprehensive regulatory scheme. The revenue must be restricted for that purpose, it can't be used for, for general revenue raising purposes. Um, needs to be earmarked within the, within the budget. Um, the legal standard for a regulatory fee is that it needs to be reasonably related to the cost of regulating the direct and indirect activities of the activity you're relating. You're regulating, and the fee payers should be likely to benefit from paying the fee and from the regulatory scheme. And so under, with S T R fees, um, the way these are being implemented in Colorado right now is they're. the way these are being implemented in Colorado right now is they're they're typically annual fees levied on a per bedroom or per unit basis. They are in addition to and separate from the administrative fees. Again, revenues need to be restricted just for, in this case, housing. This is the current landscape. You've seen this in the previous presentation. There are only a handful of communities in Colorado currently charging them. These are pretty new policies that have emerged over the last couple of years. Breckenridge was the first in about twenty twenty-one. Pagosa Springs has a little bit of a story behind that. That fee is is incorrect there. That's what the voters approved. And it's it's now lower. We're trying to get confirmation from the town on what what it was actually adopted. The there, so in Pagosa Springs, they had a voter referendum that mandated that the town adopt a right, adopt a fee on S T Rs. They did not use a regulatory fee study like we're using here. They used a different method of determining that ratio and they had there were some legal issues with that. They've since done a regulatory fee study. And it's come out at two thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars per unit as the maximum that they could charge. Other communities in Colorado are considering regulatory fees right now. That includes the ones that we know about or include the town of Grandy in Grand County, Eagle County, Summit County. The town of Winter Park might be discussing it this year. And 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 there are a lot of, there are different approaches to this, as you've seen. Some communities have chosen to go the fee route. Some some communities have chosen to use specific S T R taxes. Aspen and Steamboat Springs are examples of communities that have opted to use an S T R tax instead of a fee. Um, the methodology for doing this is based on economic impact techniques that have been around for a long time. Combined with the some of the techniques that are used to calculate affordable housing impact fees. So there there's there's some precedent in a lot of communities on how how to how to do these types of fees. Big picture, this is based on the difference, the differential impact between a full-time occupied household and a unit occupied by S T R guests. And the general workflow is we first estimate how much spending is generated by S T Rs compared to local rep to compared to a full-time occupied unit. We use an economic impact model that was developed by the Forest Service B L M University of Minnesota, I think in the late seventies, it's peer reviewed, been around for a long time. How does that, how does that spending flow through the economy in different industry sectors? How many jobs are supported by that spending? And then from there, we can convert that to wages and household incomes and determine through a traditional gap analysis, what is the difference between what it costs to acquire or provide housing and what the workers can pay? And the fee is based and the fee is based on the number that addresses that gap. So the rationale for an S T R fee is that short-term rentals are going to continue to be a large component of the of the tourism and visitor economy in Telluride. We just, we we know from all the research we've done, about eighty percent of the lodging unit unit base. And eighty-six percent of the bed base on a per bed basis is in is in short-term rentals, about seven hundred and sixty-five licensed S T Rs. And and there's it's this 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 balance that many mountain communities struggle with with supporting the supporting the 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 tourism economy and and mitigating the impacts on on housing. And so, you know, there are still a lot of unmet needs despite the resources the town has put towards housing. And that's the problem that is not unique to Telluride. I'm sure you know. So the feet, the the other part of the rationale that's important here is that fee payers are likely to benefit from the housing programs funded by the fee. Businesses that serve guests will have more reliability and stability from employee retention and and better employee recruitment if they can be, if their employees can be housed, especially closer to work. Fewer and shorter commutes, that creates a lot of environmental and safety benefits by getting people off of narrow winding winter mountain roads. And the guest and resident experience also also improves when those jobs are filled.
Great. So that was a good frame up for what this is. Now we're going to go through the details of the model, starting with the key assumptions here. And as we go through each piece of this analysis, it will become clear how these different assumptions fit in. That said, I think it's important to go through them and how we got to them before we dive in to the meat of the analysis. So uh, one of the big things that we've done here is we differentiated our analysis between S T Rs and residential zones and S T Rs and non-residential zones. The reason being that S T Rs and residential zones have a strict limit on the number of nights it could be rented out for per year. So the occupancy that is is a key input in this model is going to be a lot different for S T Rs in those different zones. So here we're starting with S T Rs in non-residential zones. We will get to the S T Rs in residential zones a little bit later. Uh, so going through the different assumptions here, so an occupancy rate. We got thirty-five percent. That's based on an analysis of fifty-seven different trailing twelve-month periods from December twenty eighteen to July twenty twenty-third. This, you can think about this as like a five-year average essentially for short-term rental occupancy. So we think that's a pretty strong number. Going to the next piece here, the number of jobs for employee.
Carson, to interrupt. Because I I want to pause and talk about the occupancy rate because we, this has been glossed over in all of our conversations thus far, and I do want to talk about this with council. Why is that our assumption? Businesses don't hire based off of an average occupancy rate. They're hiring based off of the peaks, the busy times. We are clearly a cyclical tourism economy that has big peaks and valleys. And many of our businesses are closed for four months of a year and don't have any staffing for those four months. Why is this the basis for this part of the calculation?
Because, um, as you'll see at the end, this is, we're trying to convert this to an annual fee. And so we 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 need, I completely acknowledge your your point, right? I mean, that's that that's that's how 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 businesses operate the seasonal economy. But we have, we have to look at this on an annual basis and and simply that's why. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, and I would add that and and you'll see how the pieces of the model fit together. But we're looking at the the impact of short, the spending of short-term rental guests on how many jobs that supports and how many households that supports. And that spending is directly tied to the occupancy rate, right? So, you know, if we if we look at which in the next slide, but we won't get to that just yet while we go through all of these. We look at the average number or the average level of guest spending per unit, right? But to determine how much spending there is from S T Rs in a given year, you have to apply the occupancy rate to that. Right? So that's that's really what the occupancy rate is driving in this model.
I I don't view it that way. I don't think it's how it it operates in the seasonal economy. I I disagree, but I don't need to be laborious.
Fair enough. So we'll keep going through these. So there's a jobs per employee assumption. A lot of employees hold multiple jobs. That averages one point five according to the survey of the most recent housing needs assessment. There's an earners per household assumption of one point six. So a lot of households have multiple earners. And that's also based on the housing needs assessment from a few years ago.
The purpose of those two, those two estimates is to ensure that we're not double overcounting. That we're they were acknowledging that people have more than one job, they're more than more than one earner in a household. That affects the gap analysis and the number of of jobs that are supported.
Right. Uh, moving on, so the cost per unit. So, you know, this this drives that gap calculation. We looked at the median sale price of of one-bedroom condos through the first six months of twenty twenty-three. And we also looked at the area median income to look to short jobs by A M I. That's based on the current A M I for twenty twenty-three of a two-person household, according to CHAFA. And then those assumptions are the total number of S T Rs in non-residential zones and the average number of bedrooms per S T R. And again, keep in mind, this is a draft fee. You know, we can revisit these assumptions as needed as we go through this discussion. But these are the assumptions that are are driving the model and the fee estimate that we've come to in this.
I like the word, I like the word estimates because we, you know, we we did a lot of research to come up with these numbers.
Right, yeah, good. Great. So a primary input for for this model and determining the regulatory fee is looking at guest spending. So how much money are S T R guests spending? And as you can see, there's spending per person per day in in key sectors. And that data is based on a pretty extensive survey work, visitor survey work that's been conducted over the past seven or eight years.
By R C associates and David Becker is on the on the line as well. If we have specific questions on that, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah. And and these surveys track detailed spending information, party size, type and location of accommodations. And this allowed us to basically target Telluride short-term rental visitors and how much they're spending per day. And so, as you can see, in in those three key sectors right there, food and beverage, retail and entertainment and recreation, it totals about a hundred and eighty dollars per person per day. That leads to an overall spending per at short-term rental unit per day, based on an average number of number of people per short-term rental unit. And then, and this is where the occupancy comes in. So if we took spending at one hundred percent occupancy, it would be basically daily spending times three hundred and sixty-five times the number of S T Rs. But because S T Rs are not occupied one hundred percent of the time, they're only occupied thirty-five percent of the time. That total level of spending is adjusted according to the occupancy rate. And that's really where it fits into the model. So this is based on actual market conditions rather than one hundred percent occupancy. Yeah. So now we're going to talk about employment impact. So how many, how many jobs does this guest spending from short-term rentals support, right? And how does that spending from S T R guests compare to the spending that if a a full-time household were to occupy the unit rather than guests? And how many jobs does that support relative to the jobs supported by S T R guest spending? And I won't, I won't call out every single number here, but this basically just gives you a sense of how many jobs are supported by spending in each key make sector. So the highest ones are things like accommodation, food services, retail trade, arts and entertainment and recreation. And then that total number of jobs supported is adjusted with that multiple jobs per employee factor. Because, you know, there are fewer number of employees than there are jobs as many employees tend to hold multiple jobs. So, you know, in order to avoid double counting, we apply that multiple jobs factor. And as you can see, that leads to an adjusted impact for guest spending and an adjusted impact for local spending.
And intuitively, you see that most of the jobs that are supported by guest spending are concentrated in the sectors that tend to have lower wages, combination of food services, retail, and then arts, entertainment, and recreation.
Yep. Next.
Yep. I have some other important comments on this side in particular. I can hold it to the end if we'd prefer.
I think this is a complicated slide. Let's, you can ask them now.
And and it's it's not a question. It's a it's a comment. And it really is the biggest philosophical point of this right here. I of course recognize that currently in Telluride, yes, the average jobs per person is one point five. Average people have a job and a half here. If we ingrain this into our policy, then the town of Telluride will be saying, we will only provide enough affordable housing as long as everyone continues to have a job and a half in Telluride. When we are one of the wealthiest counties, wealthiest towns per capita in the world, the fact that we can't strive for better for the working class that have just one job to me would be the biggest slap in the face imaginable. As the only person at this dais who continues to rent their housing, I really feel that we, I asked my fellow council persons to please examine your your privilege on this matter to own a house. Something I would give literally anything I own in order to accomplish. And if we make this our policy, that we are only going to build that much housing as long as people continue to have that much jobs, I really I, it to me, it shows the lack of understanding from people in my perspective. And according to the twenty twenty-one census, that's fifty percent of our town. And I am the one council person up here who rents.
Okay, a couple of things. So I'm with you one hundred percent on that philosophy until you start acting like you're the only one that has to have multiple jobs. I have had three jobs plus grad school in the last couple of years, but that's a personal thing between you and I that we should probably work out offline. In terms of your point about codifying one point five jobs per person, I am one hundred percent agreement with you. That is not a policy that I think we should stand for. I think people should have one job equivalent. Some people like having multiple jobs that equal one job, and that's not for us to determine. But I can get on board with one to one point five as a multiple multiple on this as a policy that we choose. I think you're doing yourself a disservice just generally from my perspective to continually act like you're the only one on this board in this town that is trying to represent working people in our community. And that's problematic for me.
Can I ask a clarifying question in regards to the one point five multiple job factor? When you say one point five, do you, are you intending to say that there is one person working sixty hours a week? Or is it that they have multiple jobs? Like, how are we, how are we qualifying what that job is? Is it two? Is it one point five? Is it, if it was two, if the number was two, would it be eighty hours? Would be two full-time jobs? Or are these like part-time jobs equaling out to a full-time job?
Probably all of them.
Data on that?
It's a complicated question because employment data, you know, if we were to pull out from the Bureau of Labor to Texas or the Colorado Department of Labor, how many jobs are in Telluride or San Miguel County? That that data counts full-time jobs and part-time jobs as jobs. And you can't, you can't separate those. On what, what, what the purpose of this here is to ensure that this, that the fee calculation is defensible, is defensible for the town. And that it's not su- subject to, you know, kind of double counting or double dipping. And so that's why we've made a number of conservative assumptions and adjustments here to account for that. Does that, did that help? Ask again if not.
I I just, I want to justify or just reiterate that point. I think this discussion, good points all around here is from E P S's standpoint, much less around codifying one point five jobs per person as it is legally justifying based on current conditions.
We're trying to, thanks Scott. Yeah. We're trying to establish a reasonable relationship between the fee and the impacts.
Hey, I just don't see it that same way. I feel like we are setting policy for the future. And if our policy is one point five jobs per person, that to me is a objection.
Well, I think that that policy could, I completely understood. I think that policy can be addressed in other in other components of the town's housing programs and regulations.
Yeah. So moving to the model here, and so a really big part of this is converting the number of employees supported by spending to housing demand or households generated, right? So a lot of households will have multiple earners, right? So the number of of households associated with a particular number of employees is going to be lower, right? And we convert employees supported to households with that one point six earners per household factor from most recent housing needs assessment. And as you can see here, we've also organized the employee supported and the households generated by area median income category. And that's that's based on the wages of the jobs supported. And organizing it by area median income like this. And organizing it by area median income like this enables us to determine. Determine the exact impact and gap in a more precise way. And as you can see, relatively few of those households generated are at that sixty percent in the low level. And a higher number of those jobs is, you know, at the, in the sixty to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI.
Basically, what that says is as soon as you're working and 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 having and have a wage, you're going to be above sixty percent AMI.
And so. Moving to this gap analysis that we described when originally thinking about. The the big picture methodology here. So, you know, we look at. The household income of households at these different AMI levels, right? And we determine what the maximum affordable purchase price is for a household at sixty percent of AMI. Eighty percent of AMI, hundred percent of AMI. This is, this is a very standard variety of. Affordable housing gaps analysis. And so. We take that maximum supportable purchase price. And we take the difference between that and the cost per unit assumption. That we described here of eight hundred and forty-five thousand. And the difference between those two things is the gap per unit. And so that gap is going to be a lot, a lot higher at lower AMI levels. That gap's going to be lower at higher AMI levels. So this gives you a sense of what that gap per unit is for these different AMI categories.
Can we ask, it has a question?
I'm sort of following you, but I'm, the link between the housing impact slide that's before this one. And to then this slide, can you just, sorry, explain how those numbers tie into this? With, in the context of AMI?
Yeah, yeah. So the next slide will tie those two things together. Yeah.
Yeah, great question.
Great, great question. So as you can see, so on that first line, households generated. That's households generated from, from that slide a few slides ago. Where we have households generated by AMI level for guest spending and for local spending, right? And then we have the gap per household by AMI range, which is the gap you saw in the previous slide, right? So that gap is a lot higher for the lower AMI levels, lower for the higher AMI levels. And so that's, that's how the previous slide fits into this analysis. And then we basically multiply the number of households generated by the gap. Per household at these different AMI levels to get a total gap, so to speak. And then from that total gap, we get a gap per unit. So that's basically the total gap divided by the total number of short-term rentals that there are. And then. As Brian mentioned earlier, really, this, this estimate is based on the delta or the difference. Between guest spending and local spending, right? So the difference between the impact if a short-term rental guest is occupying a unit versus the impact. If a local resident were occupying the unit. So we take the difference between that. Total gap per unit for guest spending and the total gap per unit for local spending. And then based on that difference, you know, we're calculating this on a, on a per bedroom basis. You know, we can also show it on a per unit basis as as needed, but for the purposes of this, it's per bedroom. And so we take the average number of bedrooms, which is two point one per short terminal. And we get kind of a net STR gap per bedroom. And then to get an annualized fee per bedroom, we basically divide it by thirty. It's an annual fee over thirty years. And thirty years in this context is a pretty typical planning horizon. And there's also a pretty typical horizon for for deed restrictions in affordable housing. If you want to add anything about Brian?
Yeah, like some, some affordable housing developments, Y-Tech in particular, they have affordability period of twenty-five to thirty years. And so we're, we're, we're basically just straight line amortizing this over a thirty-year, thirty-year time, long-range time horizon.
And so when all is said and done, that leads to an annual fee per bedroom. Of two thousand and six hundred dollars. Now, this is the maximum justifiable fee. And it's important to caveat that as being the maximum fee that could, could reasonably and defensively be charged. Now, that said, there's a lot more to add to this conversation about what an appropriate fee level could be, if you want to go to the next slide. So from that maximum justifiable fee, two thousand six hundred and eight dollars per bedroom. The town can consider a mitigation rate, so to speak, to apply to the maximum D level. And this is ultimately a policy goal that is set by the town. And so the annual revenue that this fee can generate is ultimately dependent on the mitigation rate that's applied, right? So if it's a higher mitigation rate, it's going to generate more revenue, it's going to be closer to that maximum. Lower mitigation rate is going to be a lot lower than that maximum, depending on what you choose. And for reference here, so, so, so development of different land use types currently has housing mitigation rates. So for residential, that's ninety percent, for commercial and hotel, that's forty percent. And and a mitigation rate is is really important here. And it's, it's an approach that a lot of places take when looking at something like this. To, you know, to be as defensible as possible, if you want to add anything to that, Brian?
Yeah, I, I think one of, another, other thing to think about is. I, I think we would suggest that you, you select a mitigation rate no greater than sixty percent. Because the commercial space is already mitigated at, at forty percent and some of those impacts are. So some, one could argue that some of the, the impacts of guest spending in tourism economy are being mitigated by. Commercial and public facilities with their linkage fees. So, you know, if we select a mitigation rate that doesn't overlap. The, then the, the tap, the, the study is even more, or the action by council would be even more, more defensible.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this might like be a slight derail, but did you run these models on? The construction cost of a unit versus the free market sale price of a unit?
We ran. You take it.
Sure. Yes. So we ran this model on the sale prices of units. Specifically, one-bedroom condos. And that's, you know, that's, that's an assumption that we made. I think the, the construction cost of units is something we thought about and we considered. But I think for, for, for different reasons, and and we could have staff jump in here as they were part of this conversation. You know, those, those costs can change quite a bit, right? They, they vary a lot from project to project. And I think the, the sale price number that we ended up using was, was more solid.
But there's, there, you know, that, that's something we could consider.
Yeah.
That's another question if you're. Uh, mine's more for town staff. So as current council knows, we changed the residential mitigation rate. About a year and a half ago to ninety percent. Previously before that, it was sixty. Think, I think it was sixty percent. What percentage of the residential homes in Telluride were built prior to that change in mitigation rate? Because that's what they were mitigated at, not what they're, just because we changed the mitigation rate doesn't mean. That development that's already been built had to be remitigated.
I think we, yeah, I think we get the point of that. I don't know that we need the accurate.
I don't know that we have, I don't, I'm surprised that we have the number, but you get my point.
Go ahead, Scott.
No, go ahead, Brian. Yeah, it's a number we don't have a finger on certainly, but it's, it's obviously a low number of units that hit that mitigation rate.
So that reminds me of an important point on the, the consideration of using of, of all, of all of the town's different programs. So the, the inclusionary housing and linkage fees that the town has, those are, those are really a one-time revenue. You, you only get those mitigation fees from new construction when you have development, when you're in a development cycle. And the town's pretty darn built out, right? There's not a lot of, not a lot of development capacity left in Telluride, except it's, you know, infill and redevelopment here and there. The, you know, but, but with the, with the tax revenues and with an annual fee like this. You have a more predictable annual funding stream that makes it easier to budget and plan against. Let's see, with another question from Jenny. Or is that, is that public?
Oh, no, 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 don't worry. You can keep going. I'll call on everybody when you're done.
You want to go to the next, okay. I think this.
Okay, and so I promised that I would get to this. We also looked at a, a potential fee for STRs in residential zones. And this is actually going to be pretty simple. So that annual limit of twenty-nine rental nights a year. Leads to a very low annual occupancy rate. Twenty-nine, twenty-nine nights a year is about an eight percent occupancy rate. And when we consider that in, in, in the context of this model. That basically leads to a maximum justifiable fee of zero for STRs in residential zones. And so for the, the fee level that we just described of the maximum level of two thousand six hundred dollars. Per bedroom would only apply to STRs in non-residential zones.
So that's, you, you guys lost me on that one, eight percent occupancy. I mean, we just basically had that discussion with our tourism board and making sure that we're actually comparing the same thing. So you're saying they're eight percent occupied over a broad course, not over their possible amount of occupancy?
So, so, so on an annual basis, twenty, the maximum of twenty-nine nights a year. If our math is right, twenty-nine divided by three sixty-five should be about.
Eight percent.
About eight percent.
It's the limitation of the zone.
I get that, but I guess it's, I, I'm, I'm also in agreements with Dan's past comment about the thirty-five percent occupancy on the other side of it. I just, I'm struggling to see. The justification of one residential zone, basic, or the residential zone not being able to justify any type of mitigation. When they philosophically do need to be mitigated. And maybe that's just me wrapping my brain around it, but I just, I can't see the drastic difference between zero dollars and some. I understand the occupancy perspective. But it's just the true impact of the individual, whether they're in the residential zone or they're in the accommodations zone. The individual as the tourist itself is, there is no distinction between that person. So why does occupancy and where it is matter when the person is behaving in the same way, whether they're in one part of town or the other?
So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a fair question, and I think it, I, I can clarify that. An answer to that. So the core of this methodology, right, is basically looking at. The delta, the difference between jobs supported by guest spending. And jobs supported by spending if the unit were to be occupied by a full-time resident, right? It's that, it's that delta that this model is based on. And when the occupancy rate is this low at eight percent. It very much limits the amount of spending that these STRs are going to generate in a given year. And therefore will inherently limit the amount of jobs that these STRs will support in a given year. And so in, in, in this case, right? The spending impact from a full-time resident would essentially be greater than the spending impact from an STR guest. Because that occup- annual occupancy rate is so low.
Spending is different annually, not over the one day or period of time.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I stand by my original suggestion that we get rid of the limitation of nights in the residential zones. But that's a whole other thing that we have already decided on, and so I won't go down that path, but. Okay.
There's one more, one more, I think. And so to, to reiterate here, what's something we mentioned earlier. So how would this fee revenue be used? So revenue from a regulatory fee such as this would have to be restricted to housing programs. And, and, and there I provide a list of things. And, you know, I think the Affordable Housing Fund has, you know, a, a, a pretty good set of projects. That I could allocate this kind of revenue to. And, you know, we can open up that conversation to, to staff to be more specific about how the revenue would be spent. But the revenue would go into the Affordable Housing Fund essentially.
Actually, the last one now.
And then this is just contextualizing. What, what constitutes the current Affordable Housing Fund? And, and there have been a lot of comments throughout this process about, you know, the, the extent to which, you know, short-term rentals. Should be, you know, paying the cost of the town's Affordable Housing Fund and generating revenue for housing. And this just gives you a breakdown of what that looks like in the most recent year. So, you know, with the two and a half percent STR excise tax and STR licenses. You know, short-term rentals in effect contribute a little over a third to the town's Affordable Housing Fund at present. There are several other sources like the Hassan sales tax, the mitigation fees. And the property tax levy that then also contributes to it. So this is just additional context.
And, and back to my earlier comment, you know, you look at the housing mitigation fee piece. At nine or nine, almost a million dollars in twenty twenty-two. I would, I would wager that that is highly volatile and really depends on how much development is coming, is happening in the town. And then if you take, you know, four, four and a half million and compare that to the cost to construct. And acquire land and all that, it goes pretty quickly.
Yeah. So those are the slides we have. We can have enough questions.
Thank you.
I just wanted to offer one clarification. I think it was mentioned on the one dataset, but maybe not the other. And I just want to get a confirmation from our consultants. And there's been some discussion about what the right number is for, for instance, jobs per employee, earners per household. That data comes specifically from the seventeen needs assessment, and I just want to make sure that we get confirmation of that from our consultants.
That's correct. Yes, it comes from the survey data conducted on that needs assessment.
So regardless of what we might want our local economy to look like, or what we think. Our personal view is of our local economy, this is hard data that was acquired. In the seventeen study that specifically had that data per jobs, per employee, and earners per household.
So is your point, Kevin, that? We as the town can't make a policy philosophical decision unless. On the number of affordable housing units we generate. To me, there's still a nexus between employee generation through, through short-term rental. Creation, through short-term rentals in Telluride. The, to me, I, I feel that we should still be able to create policy. Based off of that, that calculation, that there, we are clearly generating employee need, employee demand through this. And how much, how much housing we create. That, that is the town's philosophical prerogative. Of what numbers of jobs each employee should have.
Yeah, and that's, that's not something I can give you a legal opinion on. What I can tell you is that the data and the fee, if it's going to be imposed, has to be supported by the data that we've been able to collect. And that data uses this formula, and the formula involves an occupancy rate. It involves earners per household, it involves jobs per employee as well. And when you put all that data in and you start to crunch it, that's when you come up with that delta, that difference between what a guest would spend in an STR unit. And what a local would spend if they were occupying that unit full-time as their principal place of residence. That's the, that's the calculation we're coming at, not a housing mitigation number, which is a completely different number. And we already have a mitigation fee for that. That, this is a different calculation. This is a regulatory fee. Based on regulation of the activity of allowing individuals to occupy on a short-term level, twenty-nine days or less. These units that also could be occupied on a full-time level if they, if you chose to allow that. I, I hope that makes sense, but I, I know that there's. You're looking at this from a philosophical point of view, saying some of these assumptions either shouldn't be in our economy, or I dispute that they are. But what I can tell you is the formula we have to use. But what I can tell you is the formula we have to use has to be based on the data that we've collected. And that data, at least two of those areas, is from that seventeen regional needs assessment.
And you really start, correct me if I'm wrong here, but you really start to be able to pull that philosophical lever more in. For example, whether you feel like fifty percent mitigation rate or zero percent or a hundred is most appropriate. Is is my sense, rather than mess trying to mess with. The the actual data looking backwards.
So. Clarify, if this new housing needs assessment that we're. Starting that we are collaborating with the county on in Mountain Village. If that comes back and says, in this modern day. The the average worker in Telly Ride has two jobs now. The amount of affordable housing under the the most recent data set that we can provide goes down. That is incredibly backwards. It is.
Well, you can, well, you can look at this fee on an annual basis, for example, and and adjust based on new housing needs assessments.
I'd add that. Again, we completely hear and understand your your comments on this. The fee the fee study itself is not policy. It's it it has a separate, it has a function under the law that needs to it it needs to establish a reasonable basis between the fee. And the activity. On policy, policy can be set on with other other tools and programs the town has.
So explain to me why on your slide that says revenue potential, it says this is a policy goal. Set by the town.
Yes, sorry, we're yeah, we'll go to that. There it is. Um, so that's the mitigation rate, right? It's basically the extent to which um the fee level. Is, you know, the the ratio of the fee level to the maximum justifiable fee level, right? So there's a maximum justifiable level based on this analysis. And then according to. The town's appetite and policy goals, it can set a mitigation rate to determine what that fee should be at or below that level.
But Dan, I think the point is. If we as a council said we want to actually go to a hundred percent of this mitigation fee. And we gave our justified reasons, and then the town were sued. Kevin would say, cool, we did this fee up to a hundred percent, and then based on the reasons that you're outlining. We believe we had justification to go over it, and that's something that we would have to defend in court and be able to choose, but it's all based on the calculation. It's not changing the calculation. It's us deciding how far out on a limb do we want to go from a policy perspective.
I I hear I hear what you're saying. My. My point, the the sticking point with me is that. We are clearly taking a policy element in the number of jobs as a denominator. For the amount of homes we create. As as part of this calculation. That that's my point is that we are, there is a clear policy implication in saying that we are only creating enough. Units, affordable housing units, as long as everyone continues to have one point five jobs.
We, I think the word justifiable is probably the one that we're going to kind of keep coming back to because we have data sets that we. These decisions on, but you are, it also to me feels like we're making a leap as far as what. Constitutes a job too, and when you're saying that, because. Somebody could have two ten-hour jobs and that's two jobs. And so.
Your question was good, but I don't feel like they answered it. I don't feel like I had an answer to your question.
I mean, I think that. The answer to the question is that all of those jobs that they're utilizing. Are full-time, some are part-time, and if that's something we want to look at in our next study. We can certainly do that, but we're not going to be able to. Assess how many hours or how many jobs everybody has to create this policy. Geneva?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I think that the way that we structure our affordable housing guidelines and the hours required to qualify. And get into our deed restricted housing, that's where the policies. Are related to, you know, how much are you working or what's considered a full-time versus part-time job? This is strictly to defend our uh fees that we're charging on this aspect, but we still have. Three or four other revenue mechanisms for getting jobs or getting money in for the Affordable Housing Fund, so. I don't see this as tying our hands with some sort of like. Every employee must have one and a half jobs. Issue.
This this goes back to the point I made at previous meeting that. The employee need is generated instantly. The mitigation. Through affordable housing will take years to provide. And that, again, is my significant holdup with this process. Is that we are immediately. Placing more demand on our workforce. And it will take. A decade or longer. To mitigate that to a reasonable degree.
But we have to have an economy to mitigate too. And I think this, you're right. I mean, this is gonna. The housing crisis is something that was born. Of years and years of decision-making from people that sat here prior to us. We have to just choose this point in time to move forward. The very best way we possibly can, and that is a decision that we are all gonna make. Hold on, we are all gonna make with our vote. Individually in what we feel the best interest of this community is. I you're correct. We are not going to stamp our fingers and have. Houses for all the people that need them right now, but we have to be able to generate the revenue in order to be able to do so.
And I see this as a continuation of the policy that has, quote, always had us in a housing crisis. That's where I see this heading. The money is great. Of course, I see that the money helps, but it doesn't. It doesn't solve that issue. And this is where I speak in strong language. Where I I can feel. Divided from my community because it doesn't feel like it provides for me or the fifty percent of our town in my situation. Where I want to not have roommates as a thirty-five-year-old. On town council. And we continue to perpet perpetrate policy that leaves us in a shortfall. That makes it. No easier for me to make the community I love more than anything in the world. To stay here. You all know, I've said to you all, I'm this close to just not being able to make it here anymore. And so this is where I get worked up and get. Passionate and yeah, sometimes angry, and I'm sorry that it comes off that way. But if you continue to perpetrate these same policies that leave us in that shortfall, that leave us in. Constant crisis of always having a housing crisis. Yeah, I'm gonna get angry about. Of course I am.
But today we're deciding on. The fee. So my question to you is, regardless of the. The calculation, which fee are you comfortable with? What percentage?
I I stand by my original policy of keeping the status quo. No new fee. No change in the cap. Remain where we are.
Okay, so I, since we're a board of six currently. I was surprised to hear EPS say that they would advocate for a sixty-five percent. Fee percentage. I am inclined to go a little bit higher on the mitigation percentage. I don't think a hundred is appropriate. But I'd feel good about seventy or eighty. Kind of to Dan's points, like there are some things in those calculations that feel like. Where we are as a community doesn't, it doesn't totally sit right with me, especially with the idea that the residential. STRs won't have a bedroom mitigation fee at all. Which to my, in my mind, I'm like, is that right? Is it right to make other people in the accommodations pay more just because the other people are limited by nights? I'm struggling with that. But from a percentage-wise, I would advocate for seventy or eighty percent. Per bedroom.
Answer your question, a hundred percent is the only one I could live with, and it's still too long.
Jesse?
I'm briefing a lot right now, so I need a couple minutes.
Lars?
I feel like one of the things that we've missed in this discussion is that we're concentrating everything on the short-term rental. And I think it really should be spread out. Across a greater number of. Restaurants, retail. All those vendors that are that are also. You know, using, keeping people or having employees. I think it shouldn't be just. A tax, which I think is what we're looking at on the STRs.
But I asked that during the budget meeting this morning. It was crickets. I asked, should we raise fees on businesses? And literally no one said, yeah, we should talk about that.
Why don't we talk about it right now?
Business license, you're talking business license fees.
So I'll let you direct that if you want.
Really needs to be spread equitably across all businesses within this.
But we have to pick a percentage. So which would you pick? Okay, Geneva?
Um, so I think that. We are collecting some of this mitigation through construction, but obviously those were raised more recently. And many of these households that are zoned residentially did not pay a meaningful amount into the employee mitigation. Or Affordable Housing Mitigation Fund through construction. They are zoned residential but being used as a business. I know that we as a municipality cannot rezone those properties as commercial. So that they pay the higher rates annually with property taxes, and I'm not suggesting that we should be able to. But those properties slipped through the cracks of paying their way through this employee generation concept. You know, a lot of folks who we've been hearing from and getting tons of public comment from about why we should remove the cap. Have stated that we will lose our economy and we will lose jobs. If we get, if we limit the amount of STRs we have. And so with that in mind and recognizing that all of these properties are creating and maintaining. Jobs, I think that they should be mitigating some of those jobs. If one of these residents, if a condo was valued at eight hundred thousand dollars. Property value and it was taxed as a business, it would be paying ten thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars in property taxes annually. But instead it's paying twenty-five hundred. So I think that there's a justification for more taxes. Or more fees, more revenue extracted from the short-term rental economy than other. Markets within our economy. Because of that reason. So I I'm with Adrian. I think that seventy or eighty percent is. Justifiable and reasonable and will be an ongoing. Revenue stream for the Affordable Housing Fund, and I think that it is. You know, if that's too expensive for. For that business of that unit to continue, then that's their choice to make whether they want to pursue. Continuing to be a short-term rental or not. I don't think that they're exorbitant, and I don't think. Based on our average daily room rate, they're out of the norm. We're still talking, you know, less. Or around what, you know, a night or two of rentals would be in a unit. So. That's where I'm at. Thanks.
Jesse?
I there's a couple of different things I want to say. The first one is, is I would have liked to see the presentation include. Maybe a different mitigation fee for smaller units or one or two bedroom versus units to have like six to ten bedrooms. Cause I think that those, that's not comparing apples to apples, and there's places that can run through units for nine thousand dollars a night, and there's some that just barely break even with their mortgage. You know, that are one or two bedrooms. With the short-term rental. And housing conversation, I think we've gotten to a point where I feel it would be beneficial to separate the two topics and treat short-term rentals. As an industry versus how do we create more housing? They're they're not the same, and Dan, I am beyond empathetic sympathetic for everything that you said today, and. Thank you so much for being as passionate as you are and advocating for the people that we all advocate for, but you seem to. Little more heart today today, so thank you. With that said, like, let's. Let's do some different types of incentives where like I I think that we could help in this, we're talking STRs, not housing, so that's why. I'm really having a hard time. To see, you know, saying what I want to say without muddying the water and going down like a totally different path, but. I think we we deal with the short-term rentals, what we would like to see, and then let's let's. Do more for housing, but utilize existing inventory, you know, like with a per square foot tax incentive credit, you know, that we take out of our affordable housing. But I think that. Yeah, I could keep going on and on and on. So I am actually not, I do not feel comfortable picking a. Percentage of the mitigation rate here because I would like to see more information presented.
But wait, just to be clear, when you said smaller versus not, this is per bedroom. So it's accommodating small units.
Right, so I think what I was saying is more like maybe we. A one or two bedroom just pays a business license fee and not the additional bedroom fees. I'd like to also see like. That what we get from implementing these fees, like the total amount of revenue based off of. Our eight hundred and thirty-five units with, we don't know how many bedrooms in each each of them, you know, like where, how. Beneficial or will this be if we lay out a hundred percent mitigation rate or a fifty percent or a zero percent, you know, like what we know a zero percent will be, but. You know what I mean? So I'm I'll live with whatever everybody decides on, but I myself, I I think we're. Trying to to. Almost punish short-term rentals in a hopes to generate more long-term housing. And I don't think that we're approaching this from the the right angle. I think we need to. Address what we want to see in the community for just short-term rentals, and our other conversation is. How do we create the most amount of housing, whether it's utilizing existing existing inventory or new construction?
We've always done a per bedroom. Amount. It just wasn't rooted and as extensive of a calculation as what they are proposing. Can you speak a little bit, Tiffany, to the per-bedroom ideology in the past?
I tried to find that as part of the background and the history, and I couldn't find any. Reasoning behind the initial twenty-two dollar fee that was charged per bedroom back beginning in eighty-seven, I believe.
And and I, this is, I hear Jesse's point around. Wanting to, you know, separate the housing STR, at least regulatory fee discussion. And I I think we've asked EPS to be as they always are, just. Agnostic on, you know, a lot of the the policy issues, but this particular effort is to try to calculate. Not hypothetical, but actual. Job, or I'm sorry, actual housing needs creation that's driven by visitation through STRs. I think there's a an important, it sounds like we're gonna have continuing conversation around. Business license fees as well. But this regulatory fee discussion is purely about housing. Generation through STRs.
Which is where I think, Jesse, like your point of separating the two. I get that we've, we're trying to separate the two in terms of like STRs are the reason we don't have long-term housing. But that's not the connection that this is making. The connection is employee generation, therefore housing needed for the employees associated. Which is a similar calculation that's done for hotels that we are talking about with the tourism board earlier today, so like. Even though the word housing is being used, like it's it's about housing employees. Not about the STRs are the reason we don't have housing, which is how the language was used before. So I feel like. You're trying to separate two things that I get where you're going, but like. We're talking about housing employees to be able to support both the business of the STR and the people who are visiting.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to, I I want to be clear from staff standpoint, and I think EPS as well, that when we talk about. STR regulatory fees, this it is, it is not meant to be a fee that is. Punitive or a fee that is even meant to discourage STR licensing. It's it's purely meant to focus on trying to offset. Housing. Generation via STRs. So I I think.
I'm sorry, I just want to kind of restate. Ask one more question. Lars, I'm really surprised that you say zero percent because when we were talking about raising the cap, you said. Let's open it up and make more money.
I don't think it should be a regulatory fee. I think what we're doing is we're getting only one. One segment of the market.
I, well, I get that point. Yeah, but but like.
How much are restaurants kicking in? How much are retail kicking in? No one's kicking in equitably. He was putting it all on STRs.
Were to to be had.
Restaurants are kicking in more out of their commercial property tax rate.
But I guess I.
The R's are kicking in two point five. STRs are kicking in two-point-five excise tax.
Which two-point-five percent versus the twenty-nine percent commercial property real estate tax? That's equitable?
They're still paying a six percent tax.
Times your assessed rate, which ends up at an effective rate of about point seven.
Okay, I'm gonna, Geneva?
That's, I, that's what, you want to pull up the?
I was, I was just gonna throw out there, I feel like when the restaurants are built, they're required also to, to build mitigation units. And uh, that is, has not happened with these residentially zoned properties because the construction mitigation, employee mitigation that has already occurred on new construction did not address the impact of having a constant rotating group of tourists that are coming through a unit. So this is our chance at recapturing some of that um, some of that revenue that a business like a hotel or a restaurant has already contributed if they, or, or they've built a unit because that was required by their employee mitigation with the new construction.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, and if it helps, I, you know, we, we always talk about, let's be driven by data. Just take a look at the last page of the presentation, one thirty-seven, which does break down the revenue coming into the Affordable Housing Fund and of the four, approximately four-point-four million coming in last year, about one-point-three came in through the two-point-five percent excise tax. You also had a sales tax component, which was basically equal to that. Housing mitigation fees approaching a million dollars. The property mill, about seven-hundred thousand, and then STR licenses that were increased pursuant to, about measure two D, uh just under two-hundred thousand dollars. So just, I, I, you, you can make an argument, someone can make an argument about is something too high or something too low, but just take a look at the data because yes, a component of the economy is being taxed, but it's not bearing the full cost of what is supporting the Affordable Housing Fund. It's, it's, it's less than a, it's about a third.
Also, I would compare the two-point-five percent excise tax to the lodgers' tax that we have, which that is also contributing to it. So I don't think that that is unfairly targeting short-term rentals.
Okay, I'm just gonna weigh in really quickly and then we're gonna go to public comments. Cause we've got some people that have had their hands up for a while. You know, one of the things when looking at these excise taxes that I've, that I think needs to be considered, that at least I consider is from a pretty high level and that eighty-six percent of the bed base here in the community are, are short-term rentals. And so they're also driving that proportionate share of our tax revenue. And like it or not, our entire economy is based on tourism. And so when looking at these fees, I really consider what it will do if we reduce the amount of tourism that we have in this community. There may be, who knows, there may be some homes available for people to rent long-term, but the reality is like, we will lose jobs as well. We will, will lose the ability for people to make this community their home. And so I feel as though that very much has got to be balanced in this conversation. And when we received this packet and I saw these rates, I frankly almost fell off of my chair. Um, it was significantly higher than I anticipated the numbers being. I very much respect that they're justifiable numbers, though. I have some differences of opinion in regards to the cost per unit that is being utilized. But again, I appreciate that we're using data that can be justified, that can be argued against, that we can stand behind. I very much believe that all businesses share in the responsibility for housing their employees. Um, and I think that that's something that we do very much need to discuss to Adrian's point, and we do, I do want us to circle back to that. I appreciate where the consultants came in at a sixty-five percent um mitigation rate. But when I look at that number to me, just knowing the context of the conversations that I have in the tourism industry, that still feels like a pretty scary high number. And I think that that, while that, those funds will go somewhere. They may not be going to help the people in this community live and work here. I would be comfortable-ish, and I actually don't know that I actually feel very comfortable right now with like a, with this, this sixty to fifty percent mitigation rate. Um, but honestly, I don't know that necessarily after this presentation, I feel particularly comfortable making that determination. I think, I, I think either I need to look at this information more and digest it and have a lot more conversations and ask a lot more questions um, or, or reevaluate different options. But I do think a part of that conversation does need to at least be a tangential. How are the other businesses going to be supporting their employees? Because as a business owner, I very much recognized that I was causing part of the problem as I grew my business and made that conscious decision to scale back because I couldn't, I couldn't generate the, the amount of business to be able to house my employees. Um, and I think every business owner is acutely aware of the needs of their businesses. And I, I do think that we all share in the responsibility of solving this together. It is not just something that we can put on the backs of this one particular industry in this town. And that's it. Um, so I'm gonna go to public comment. Well, Geneva, do you want to say one thing more?
I mean, I, I'm hearing what you're saying about the sticker shock. Um, I just don't see how we can just put on the shelf the concept that this industry is responsible for the jobs, which, you know, leading up to this point, the argument has been short-term rentals are the reason we have jobs. Don't get rid of them. And now the argument is it's not fair to have them cover the majority of the required housing. Like I just don't get where that argument disconnect happens.
I mean, I'll, I'll use this example right now. Um, you know, during the short-term rental ban, while everybody was in flux, restaurants opened and complained to me about the fact that they couldn't find employees. Now, there was already a housing crisis going on and then they needed an additional twelve employees. So in that.
Because there were more people coming, right? Cause there were STRs for them to stay in.
But you don't need to open that restaurant either, you know? I think like, so that's where, I mean, it, we would have been fine. It wasn't, people wouldn't have starved if, if that restaurant hadn't opened. So I do think that the responsibility does need to be borne by all of the businesses, not just one particular industry. And that's all. Um, and that's all I'm gonna say kind of in that regard. Um, but I'd like, I mean, I am gonna open it up to public comment at this point. Um, if you could unmute Greg Craig. And Greg, you have three minutes.
Uh, Mayor Protem, you haven't allowed any public comment for about five hours. So I'd ask if I go over just a minute, but you allow that. There's a lot to cover here. I'll start with this issue. I think um Councilperson Shonat was exactly right. This is a tax. It is not a fee. There's only one town that's adopted this and that's Breckenridge. They're gonna be taken to court. Fee payers are likely to benefit from housing programs. It's not a nexus. It's not a reasonable nexus. This methodology places all costs onto short-term rental license holders and subsidizes all other businesses with that. There's no tie between the actual unit economic activity of a short-term rental license and this fee. Someone who has just two weeks a year will pay the same onerous tax that someone who rents for a hundred and twenty days would. It's ridiculous that the U P, EPS methodology uses free-market housing. The town knows exactly what it built housing units for and sold them for. The goal should be the difference between those two numbers, not buying everybody a free-market use, or free-market housing unit. I'm sorry, there's just so much to cover here. Um, we already have a regulatory fee and fifty percent of the business license fee. Um, they also fail to use the time value of money in calculating things. They just straight-line things across thirty years. The unstated premise of this study is that we're starting from zero housing. Uh, EPS calculation leads to three-hundred-and-seven households that we need. We already have built four-hundred. What's the difference? Again, only one town has adopted this and they are likely to be sued. Tell your idea has been a demonstration down at the Colorado Supreme Court before, and perhaps you want to make it again. I'd like to return to the basic, the original thing before this. I have a question just for Kevin Geiger about the long-term license and just something to look into. Will you run into any lawful presence problems for the landlord or the tenant if you have a long-term license? I'd also like clarification. Uh, Clerk Kavanaugh talked about a two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-dollar additional admin fee, but half of the license, permit license fee is already for admin. So why are we adding two-eighty-eight on top of that? I would also like you to consider when you talk about limits on the number of licenses that you um incorporate death and divorce into that. Um, it was not incorporated into previous things and it was extremely mean of the town to force people because of death or divorce uh to have to adhere to specific rules. That's all I can fit in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. And um, we did all receive your public comment and the letters. Um, and those are also available for the public to read as well if they want to get a little bit more in-depth with your comments. Um, if you could unmute Jenny Carlson.
Uh, thank you, council members. Um, I do align with Greg Craig. Everything that he covered in, in those jam-packed three minutes um is, is what I'm gonna cover as well. Uh, first of all, a group of lodgers, including myself, and by the way, I am um, candidate for town council in the November election as well. Um, per the letter that was sent to the mayor Protem and the town manager, I do hope that we can still have a meeting between lodgers and interested parties and, and members of the town council before these fees are, are decided on. As has been pointed out by um the mayor Protem and also council member Carlson um and Greg Craig is that short-term rentals are once again asked to bear the cost of subsidized housing, something that was established in the study of that short-term rentals are not the cost of the decrease in housing. If you look at the rate and tax increases over the last five years, we've seen a very heavy focus. Uh, seventy-three percent, if you look at the last slide that was provided by EPS of affordable housing, comes from funds from short-term rentals and of, uh, property owners. So there's a very heavy focus on taxing short-term rentals and property owners um versus, for instance, a sales tax that was suggested a few years ago. Recent studies and recent discussion in town council, including the marketing discussion this meeting, established the importance of not suppressing STRs. These observed regulatory fees that are suggested, which even at the lower suggested fee, uh, rate of twenty percent is at least a forty percent increase in fees, not considering the proposed admin fee that Greg Craig brought up, would do exactly that. It would suppress STRs. It would be an unintended consequence of what we are trying to accomplish. I hope everyone realizes that it will affect local employers, so are the ones providing jobs. And in my opinion, this is another backwards policy that goes against what we are looking to, to accomplish. I think there are other ways that you can look at doing a regulatory fee at a much, much lower fee because as, as Mayor Protem, uh, me and Fee said, this is a sticker shock. Um, I think you can look at nights rented by an amount of employees in the short-term rental company. For instance, there are many ways that you can look at not having one industry uh pay for subsidized housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public comment in the room? Come on up first, or anyone? Please state your name when you come to the podium. You have three minutes.
Uh, Doug Sanders. Um, I'd like to go back, it seems like a year ago, uh, the different licenses, start there. Uh, some explanation from Lars on the um, the owner occupied. I have two STR licenses. Um, so I paid, that would be if under, I, I would not like to have one, both of them be a classic because one of them, I live in, I live in three-hundred-and-fifty square feet and I move out for, for the gas and film fest and lose a bruise, which would be the three-thirty, and that would, these incredible regulatory fees, that would help a local like me avoid, actually, if with regulatory fees and everything else, I really wouldn't be able to rent out the second unit. I would not do it anymore. Um, so that's some of the explanation as to why I think that I really like the idea of the, the different uh classifications. Um, yeah, these regulatory fees are, this is, this is coming out, you know, basically my pocket. So back to the working man, I worked for twenty-five years. I was the guy with a hard hat building a hotel house. I built Logan Court, Mendota, Entrada, Lasser, laid out all those foundations. I did the condom mapping. I worked. I drove for fifteen years back and forth from Norwood, two jobs and owning a business. Okay, this is my retirement. I didn't get a 401K. I don't have any of that stuff. If this is not economical for me, I'm just gonna sell up. And then another local, although you think I'm a rich local, I'm not. I just own a place. That's it. It's all I got. So at some point, at some point it's gonna drive me up to it. So don't just look at me at a pedestal like I'm the rich guy. There's a lot of us that aren't rich guy. We just, we made an investment decision in our career that I didn't want to work for a corporation. I didn't want to work with suit and tie. Didn't want to work for the government. So I went this route. This is it. This is all I got. So this is out of my pocket. Thanks.
Everything that everybody said before, um, I agree with. Uh, I have two things to say. As far as, this is way back in the conversation, as far as the midterms, I think that you guys don't even need to regulate that. And the reason why I'm saying that is that most people, especially like property managers, we do both. We do short-term, we do thirty days, you know, we do sixty days, someone staying longer. I think that you're chasing maybe five or ten people with the midterm thing. I don't think that's worth your staff time, in my opinion. Um, the other thing is, all business licenses, if I'm not right, if I'm, don't we all pay per employee? Doesn't everybody like a retail?
Besides short-term rentals, pay per employee, correct?
So there, there is one spot where you could hit all industries for this, you know, housing fund, is to increase our per employee tax, not just, you know, we're loading it all on short-term rentals once again. Cause we are the highest tax. So does anyone know how much we pay in taxes total?
Fifteen points.
Fifteen point one-five percent. That's the highest. I mean, maybe Sean, um, Geneva might tell us that uh food stores probably pay more, maybe. But anyway, we are, we are definitely burdened with most of the cost for employee housing. That's all.
Ryan?
Uh, Ryan, now, I'll find lodging. I'll just second what we said regarding the, the return. I don't think you're gonna find a lot of those folks. Um, there's also will be problems with the enforcement of that. I, I can think of an example off the top of my head. We have a current property we're managing that is a long-term lease. Uh, tenant's staying there for three months, just reached out to me today, said, can you extend the lease for two months more? So in that instance, are we going for a new license? Is it different uh setup? In that regard, I think that is such a minute percentage of the type of rentals. It's probably not worth differentiating between long-term and midterm. Um, second thing I would say is that you're developing the policy with the licenses. People real close, I have those condo hotel setups. Um, we, we manage the mountainside inn. I think another one I can think of off the top of my head, probably the Campbell Garden. If you don't manage, but those uh would fall under in this setup, under the classic uh non-residential license. But would be uh those properties that are at least mountainside inn, has a limit on owner occupancy. Owners can only stay in a unit for up to thirty days. Um, it is basically required to be a short-term rental. There is a requirement that there's a front desk, a new house, housekeeping team. It runs and functions as a hotel. So if it were a long-term into a, a classic non-residential segment, uh, and then let's say down the road, you guys decided to put a cap on licenses, it would expose it to um potentially those owners not being able to get licenses in a situation where uh they really are in that to be run as a hotel. And so that's all I, all I have. Thank you.
I, George Harvey, Tire Ride. I'd like to talk about a little bit bigger picture that I think is gonna affect this whole conversation. There's a recession coming. It's already factored in in the financial markets. There's no way in the world to know if that's gonna be low, high, medium, or how long. Some of you that haven't experienced that, go back and read the newspaper here on December last quarter, two thousand and seven. Everybody was guessing it's only gonna last about six months. It lasted four years. I can tell you that my wife and I went through all of our savings during that period of time. We became very close to losing the condominium that we live in now. I had to borrow two months' rent from my father-in-law on social security to make it through that window. All of these decisions you're making, I haven't heard the recession coming taken into that. My goodness, it's real. And I think you need to think about exactly what your moves are gonna be. This morning, a short-term property rental company, all the rooms showed the revenue data for Airbnb between May two thousand and twenty-two and May two thousand and twenty-three are down fifty percent nationwide. It's not as bad in the resorts in Colorado. It's running down about ten to twenty percent. I'm just gonna say, whatever you think they're gonna do to quick things or rate revenue, you gotta take into consideration that picture. The government in two thousand and seven and eight did not do that. I remember the meetings where you were talking about how many people were gonna lay off. You really need to factor that in. The other thing I want to say from the big picture that I always see missing, Dan actually pointed this out. How many housing units do you need right now, today? How much would that cost? And look at how much you're raising. Whatever you do, it doesn't come close. I mean, even remote would close. I'd let you think this other thing, there's other resorts trying to do exactly the same thing. You Scottish from Dale, you've got Aspen, Steamboat, Breckenridge. None of them have succeeded by the methods you're using. No one. If you look at the decades going backwards, every decade they needed more housing, not less housing. You need new solutions, but now without that, it just won't work.
Can we unmute Sally Puff?
Hi, could you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Is it Sally Puff Courtney, is it appropriate if I ask for Craig Greg to, for Greg Craig, sorry, to restate his three questions? It has been a very long meeting. There's been a lot of stuff going through and I'd love to have counsel just answer those three questions so I can kind of keep things in order. Is that a possibility?
I don't know that we can, we are also running up against a clock.
Well, I, it's just for my three minutes. How about one of them?
Does, do you, do you remember his questions off the top of your head?
No.
No, they were, no, they were too long.
He will submit those questions, I'm sure. And we can, we can address those. Obviously, this is a work session. We're kind of getting councils inputs, public input, and we'll be coming back to you on this issue. Whatever Mr. Craig submits for for questions more formally, we'd be happy at the staff level to to have those as part of your next packet or or have those answered. Again, we're trying to get some general, you know, some general direction on conversations here this afternoon so we can come back to you after this work session.
Yeah, I think in general, there's not much clear direction coming out of this conversation at this point.
Okay, all right, that's, never mind, that's fine. I'll pay us. Thank you.
Yeah, we will. I think.
Next steps?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so for next steps.
Oh wait, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry, I didn't see your hand go up before.
Real quick, I just wanted to mention something that I think is important is that people are short-term renting over long-term renting because of potential revenue. That is, and we aren't making any money off that potential revenue that they're doing. We're talking about sticker shock for what we would charge them, but it's a sticker shock to see people are making each night renting out my friends' old homes to short-term rentals. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping that in perspective. What G said on the thing was that the current cost of this fee can be paid off in a two-night rental. That is not that much money. And so I think it's important that we, the, yeah, I guess I just wanted to bring up those things. And I will say that if rentals are down, if these short-term rentals are not being filled, why do we need more?
Thank you. Closing public comment? I'm gonna close public comment at this point in time. I think he's for the next meeting. Zoe, so next step.
Yeah, so we have a good range. I mean, we have zero to a hundred. I don't know. I don't know if we, I mean, if you want to take a quick vote to maybe narrow that down a little bit for staff, if you want to look at fifty to a hundred, I mean, we'll do ever what council directs. But obviously, this was our draft in our first work session. We can work, a lot of the questions were wanting to see more of a modeling of what this would look like. We can, we can take, you know, a bedroom percentage, bedroom amount and model that out for the full comprehensive admin fee, business license fee, you know, what this would look like for S T R with the regulatory fee as well. I think, I think zero is, would just be an easy to determine. You'll just say, oh, this would look like without a regulatory fee, but from that point where you want us to look. I've also heard quickly about the appetite of increasing of business license fees. So I just would like to get a quick thumbs up if you would like to see modeling of what increases to business license fees would look like across the board. And we can bring that to council in the next work session. Honestly, the packet will be done the twenty-seventh, so get to work on those things.
And I just want to clarify that for business license fees, that's not in your annual fee schedule that you adopt. It's actually in the municipal code, so that takes two readings of an ordinance. So if you want that done, it would be before budget is adopted. It would be the October meetings are your last opportunity for that.
I think there's a provision that says they can adjust their business license fee by resolution.
Oh, great.
But I do think you, you might think about what you need to address before the November two D deadline and what you don't need to address by that deadline. And if you're not certain on a percentage, there's nothing that says that the percentage has to be implemented when two D is expiring. Current council might want to address it because you've been working on this issue for, for months and you, you, you've started to formulate some some form of consensus. I'm not exactly sure what that is in terms of a percentage, but you, you're starting to form some, some analysis of the other elements that can go into this. But if you're not ready to do a percentage, and we need a percentage for an ordinance.
Then we need another work. I mean, we just have to keep trucking along.
Yeah.
There's not a deadline for an ordinance.
Right. Now, the only thing I want to think about is I think we'd be collecting the fee through the business licensing component.
Correct.
And that is a calendar year timeline.
Yeah.
So January first.
Obviously, it would be helpful from a, from a budgetary processing and being able to know what we're looking at in twenty-four to, to try to wrap this element of the discussion up this budget season. But to Kevin's good point, it doesn't have to be part and parcel with two D.
Now, one more thing to mention, though, the regulatory fee would have to be by an ordinance. Business license fees, which I think you can amend separately, I think you can do that by resolution, although I probably, if there are new fees, I think we probably want to have that by ordinance. The, my recollection is the, it's in Title Six of the municipal code. And it says that the fees for the business license section can be amended by resolution, but I don't think you could do a new fee. I think it's specific to amending an existing fee. So for instance, if there's a new administrative fee, a two hundred and eighty-eight, which is, I think, the number we heard, I think that does require ordinance reading. And the regulatory fee certainly requires ordinance reading.
So I think we have enough direction when it comes to what we need to know for the, the two D expiration. We'll bring that back to council in the form of a first reading. We will also include, like I said, the modeling for the regulatory fees and an increase in business license fee. So I had, I don't think that changed that direction that much, but just for you guys to understand your timelines and maybe what you need to digest to be prepared for the next meeting, if we want to be timely.
We already are talking about wrinkles. I just, Geneva, maybe she was about to say this, but Geneva mentioned when, in her support of theoretically not having a cap is having meaningful fees, and I feel the same.
Yeah.
And I don't want that to be a hold hostage situation, but I think that there's two people that are giving a big thing up that was very important to them. And if we're all gonna be working on compromise, the flip side of that is looking at the fees that make it feel reasonable for us to justify that to the communities that we feel like we're representing. This is a friendly reminder.
Well, well said, Adrian.
Yeah.
I would, I just want to make sure too, Zoe, that we need to dive a little bit deeper. Can we also have an analysis of how many single-bedroom studios, et cetera, et cetera, are in the short-term rental pool, pool, like? Yeah.
Unit type breakdown?
The unit type breakdown, yeah.
I think we can work on a report for that.
Yeah, I just, piggybacking on what Adrian said, at all of our open house meetings with stakeholders from both real estate and lodging communities, the message that I got loud and clear was, please remove the cap and charge us more money because we are happy to pay it to support affordable housing, which is the real issue here. Just stop having this cap and we will pay whatever. That is, that is the feedback that I received.
That's not true.
Heard you loud and clear, Sally. She said that to me.
Many people said we are happy to pay extra fees, but limiting the amount of short-term rental licenses isn't helping housing, but charging money to this industry would help housing. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thank you.
And just final quick clarification. So staff, you want them to look at fifty to a hundred percent mitigation or do you want fifty to eighty percent? How much modeling do you want me to do?
I
For us to do?
I would actually, Adrian, I think if we looked at fifty to eighty percent, that feels, those options feel in the range of compromise for everyone.
And Adrian, I was working on constituents. What they feel is too much or not enough, right? Not gonna just say zero, I just didn't have a number.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a data point that's lower to like thirty percent.
Thirty to eighty?
And I think I would also maybe like to see like an actual real-life modeling from a property, like maybe a property, a two-bedroom, like an actual two-bedroom, what that's gonna look like as those fees are assessed across the board for that particular.
All these fees are gonna be passed down, and so in some respects, somebody who rents a unit twenty-one days versus somebody who rents a unit hundred and twenty days is gonna dramatically affect people that rent less because they're gonna have to, if they're passing it through, they take them out and divide it by the number of days they expect to rent. And it's gonna add quite a bit to their average daily rate versus somebody that rents it for three hundred and sixty-five days. It's gonna be, and not, you know, three dollars a night, that's not gonna really matter for their average daily rate. But it's something to consider.
Is it? I think, sorry, and I know we're, we're going, and we're running into somebody else's meeting right now. Is it possible, is it possible to look at this as a per-night fee versus a regulatory fee that's applied across the unit?
Five, yeah, and then the amount of bedrooms in the unit.
Well, I mean, I think the more fair calculation would be that thirty-five percent average occupancy divided by three sixty-five. So that's a hundred some nights a year. Then divide our fee by the hundred, whatever nights.
Something like.
What else? Somebody only rents thirty days.
But we're talking about the average.
It'd be easier to divide it by three sixty-five and then just have it as a fee per bedroom per night.
Yeah.
That would be the most equitable way to do it. Brian raised his hands.
Brian, or, yes, or yes.
Hi. This, the question about a night, a nightly fee, I think is something we would want to talk with the town attorney about.
I don't think we're actually suggesting a nightly fee of more of a breakdown of the regulatory fee on a night.
Cost per night, got it. Got it. And just another quick point, if, you know, slide twelve of our presentation has back-of-the-napkin revenue projections for the S T R fee revenue at different rates. That's it. Feel free to, feel free to call us unless if anything else.
Can you guys up, update the slides too? Because you said that Pagosa, Pagosa fee per room wasn't correct. Can you guys actually update it so we know what is correct?
Yeah, it's, I just got an email.
For our next meeting with you?
Yes, we will. I just got an email from the town planner. Five hundred bucks is, I will tell you right now.
That from Kate?
It's from James. I think it's five hundred per room, but we'll, yeah, we'll update it per, five hundred per unit, per year, is what they decided on. Their study justified, I think, twenty-seven hundred. They adopted five hundred.
Tiffany? I'm sorry, I need one more point of clarification, please. To Doug's point, is the regulatory fee something that you would also want to see in all categories or not owner-occupied licenses? Because those would also be limited to a hundred and twenty days per year.
Not owner occupied.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions too. Let me just make a note of that. I think Tiffany's got it too. Maybe we heard it. I, I don't know if I heard the consensus, but we had the discussion about the two hundred and eighty-eight dollar administrative fee. Is there comfort from town council in moving forward with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then I think one element we haven't discussed is the two-D implications of the doubling of the S T R fees. They're all been S T R fees with the one-half dedication into the Affordable Housing Fund. And there was some discussion about that at the last meeting. And just remember, it was my interpretation that that continues to exist independent of the two-D expiration on the cap numbers. So, and I do think there could be some interplay between that amount dedicated to affordable housing and a regulatory fee, even though the, the basis is different and one was voter-approved and one's based on a different model. I do think you want to be aware of that. And you, and right now, that will be a continuing provision in the code. So that would be up to that three thirty plus forty-four per bedroom. And one half of that, one sixty-five, twenty-two, is dedicated to the Affordable Housing Fund. And I don't know that we've received direction on that. And that's, those are the things that we do need some.
Do we want to wait though until we get more?
I think, I mean, I think, yeah, I think that that has to play into everything else. Like, we have to be able to look at these numbers wholeways.
Okay.
Yes.
Not one by one.
Maybe we draft a couple of options.
Yeah, it, it just, obviously.
And, and one option, one, one thing you could look at is if the regulatory fee is going in, maybe you look at the repeal or the discontinuance of the fifty percent dedicated to affordable housing under two D.
Or subtract that out.
Or subtract it out, right. Okay, all right, we'll give you some options then.
Lots of options. Thanks, Doug. Thank you guys so much. Thanks to everybody that's participated in the conversation. The, this meeting at three oh six P M is adjourned. Thanks, E P S.